So I'll share it with you.
Basically, we need to know to here that we are having issues. We have. This one is on our. Yeah, of course.
Would they help for? You want me to hop off of the? I'm on the real fast fan. We said if I can jump on.
Really, really well.
It was.
You think there's something wrong on his way?
And this is actually a major. That's a. So just like.
Absolutely. Yeah, everything's all being. And last year, we used there and we're fine for everything. This year, it's just having a bad day.
Okay, all right. We'll keep on. They didn't. Well, they'll be here. They'll be here. In. You'll be here. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? He was. For this dog. Why do I? By them. You know what I'm saying? That is a beautiful metal out there. They could. They don't want to come back with. So he's. Full board. Did I need to bring the service? She's still alive. She's like, she'll be two years. Oh, hey, she's fine. She's like. So she was like, she's all. And so I was like. I mean, no, not any. Lot labs were awesome. It's good. That's good for you. But, I mean, you know, they love to be. Yeah. Running. Yes. So we texted. Uh. Front of the block. Yeah. Or, uh, we had an Australian shepherd. And normally there and that would. Yeah, too. Ours was like the laziest also. When they trip their planet. Like you throw a ball and he'd look at you go. Right, you want? He'd lay down and go, okay, did I? Yeah. To make me. He's very down. They're like a bait. Being mental. You know, they don't have. I don't know. But now she's getting away. Actually, yeah. But she'll fly. Like you're such. Yeah. It's scary. She'll fly like a straight. Not how big, you know? She would like to. Yeah. She's like, oh, she. Yeah. Strong, very strong. I mean, that was. Is everybody? Yeah. Yeah, they were. They. And they go, her, you know, Sebastian people. No, I know. I think. Some friendly dog. Yeah. Yeah. That's right. You're very. And they got. Yeah, she is. She, uh. So, yeah. I'm worried about us all. Yeah. That's right. And that's just how. Yeah, we just got to be sticking with the program.
It works. Yeah. No.
Then you've got that. Well. Last example. We got. And then we have a way to play.
What's happening?
And the rest. Issues. But I think. Something changed. So I. Kind of miss a lot, kind of keep training. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, that is fun. I hear a lot. You like. Your lawyer.
All right.
Okay, it is nine thirty. So. Multiple. All right, pass. We can get your right. Right, take your seat. I'm gonna get started with the retreat. I want to, uh, once again, I want to thank the staff, thank the council officially for being here.
I think Tom has to call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think.
Who's gonna call? What?
Um.
Oh, Tom.
Okay, it is nine thirty and we will call our strategic planning retreat to order.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what we'll do is, um, I'm gonna introduce Richard, uh. A facilitator just a moment, but anyway, I did want to thank the staff for taking their time to be here. As I was saying, but I would like the council the opportunity for us to go out of town and have these kind of retreats. As I've told you all for years, I think it's very valuable to both to me, to y'all, to the staff to understand where we're going as a city. So with that, Richard, you want to kick it off and let us know a little bit about your background?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, my name is Richard Breckwood. Um, welcome, everybody, and thank you to Eric for inviting me to be a part of this. Looks like we're gonna have some nice weather here when I was checking my weather last night. I thought we were gonna get rained out, so good to see you. And I hate to vibe on that road when it's rained out, so I'm glad to see you sign out this morning. So, um, just a couple of housekeeping items. I guess you guys have all been here before. I haven't. Um, and you've used a facilitator before, so I don't mean it's got too much time going over all this. Um, but just in terms of safety, I've got the door right here, so it's not like we're in a giant, you know, resort or something like that. Um, restrooms, I think everybody's figured out where they are. If anybody's a smoker, you got all kinds of space outside, so go for it if you're a smoker. Um, and wifi, I think if any of you haven't already, look at your computers. There's local wifi here if you're not using the city's wifi. Um, and if you could just put your phones on vibrate or something. I find if you've got a text while we're in here, you all got to work and someone said work that you can at least put on vibrate. That would be very helpful. So, um, let me just explain real quick. My role as a facilitator is I'm not really here to solve the problems. I'm just here to kind of keep you on pace, go through pretty extensive agenda for the next two days that Eric had mapped out for us, keep us on track, keep us focused. And what I like to do is kind of channel the discussion a little bit so that we can distill some of the discussion into actionable items. So when we leave here in the two days, we actually have some action items that can lead us forward. So I want to encourage some open dialogue by everybody. Um, and, um, uh, just to maybe if we can prioritize these as well. And I'll be keeping, um, a parking lot for any items that we kind of get sidetracked with and we don't want to lose track of. But I'll be part of the agenda. I'll keep some action items here. Um, and in terms of my background, and so you know who I am, so, um, I'm a resident of Brookhaven. Sorry. I've been in Brookhaven for over twenty years. I came down here from the Northeast. Um, I am a civil engineer by background. I graduated from Cornell. I also have a MBA from Georgia Tech. Spent most of my career building petroleum facilities, refineries, pipelines. Used to work for B and B, worked up in Alaska on the North Slope, worked on the Trans Alaska Pipeline, all that kind of good stuff. Um, I had a small civil engineering design firm up in Connecticut for many years before I came down here. I have a P E stamp. I used to do all the civil site drawings for my clients. Came down here in late two thousand and two as a vice president for Jones Land LaSalle, which is a global international real estate company managing projects for them. And I've kind of stayed in project management ever since. I was with them for four years and in two thousand and nine went back into business for myself with some partners and we did construction project management. So I do mostly commercial and industrial type work. Uh, just finished up a new car dealership on the Alpharetta Roswell line, carriage here of Alpharetta. Beautiful Alpharetta facility is one of my projects. Just finished that. They just opened up. Okay. Um, I've done a lot of work for Pratt Wicket on Columbus, putting additions on their manufacturing plant, things of that nature. So that's, that's my background. Unfortunately, I don't know any of you, you all know each other. So what I'd kind of want to do, just take a few minutes, is to particularly go around with the council members, have each of you just introduce yourself. And if you could give me just very briefly, one thing that you would like to accomplish in those two days, I'm gonna take it down here and at the end tomorrow, we're gonna check back and see if we did any of that stuff. So whatever's important to you, whatever the success looks like in those two days, something that you would like to see accomplished, just let me know. I'm gonna write it down there. So maybe we can start with, uh, Tom?
Okay, so, uh, my name is Tom Lambert. I've been on the, in the third year of my second term on the council. And, um, as far as what I'd like to see achieved, I think, um, we've been talking a lot about finances. I'll take a different spin on that. What I'd like to see is, is prioritizing where we might be spending some of our capital investments.
Okay, okay.
Specifically for projects when I say capital investments, just.
Right. Well, something's near and dear to my heart, spending money on capital projects. So that's a good one. Good start.
Hey, uh, Joe Secunder. I am in my, uh, sixth year on my council second term. And I would say, you know, we have individual tactical strategic, uh, objectives. I would like to task of how are, how can we best be effective? What does the governance model look like between the elected officials? How do we relate amongst each other? Right, we, so we're focusing on, you know, these tasks and we go hand it over to our city manager. But during the month, during the year, how are the seven elected officials, how do we work, uh, effectively?
Okay.
To get things done.
Okay. Good for the cooperation. Thank you. Okay. Go on.
Good morning. My name is John Henigan, uh, been on the council for a few years. Um, you and I actually have something in common. I am the regional director of the Pipeline and Hazardous Material Safety Administration, Department of Transportation. So I know a little bit about pipeline safety. Um, as far as, uh, what I'd like to get out of this, basically financial conversation. I want to know how we are using that capital, it's more operational for me.
Okay, finances, operational.
Captain Lautenbacher, I'm finishing my first term and I am interested in taxes, if we were to say that, if we were to increase our revenue.
Revenue, taxes?
Lynn, do you want to go? Cause your chair is next or you want to go at the end?
I think I'll go at the end, thank you.
Okay.
And also Ginger, the picture, I'm gonna send you a picture of what I'm seeing on the screen. Sorry. It may be a me problem.
Uh, my name's Stacy Harris. Um, I'm also in my second term. Um, I would say I would like to have a full understanding of our short term and long term goals and how we're going to get there. Instead of it just being nebulous, I would like to see some concrete things that I can work to at the end.
All right. And how we're accomplishing.
Stacy, will you say that again, please? I'm sorry.
Just that I want to have a good understanding of what our short term and long term goals are at the end and that it's something concrete and not something nebulous. Um, just talk.
Okay.
Action items.
Thank you. Ginger, I can't actually send you a picture at the moment, but all I'm seeing is a black screen that says C O D. But again, that might be a me problem. Go ahead.
Right.
Okay, Rob?
Rob Price, um, in my first term. Uh, one of the beauties of going last is everybody's already kind of pointed out what I think are kind of the key things. I'm just hoping to get kind of what are our main initiatives that we're gonna work on this year?
Okay.
And I'm gonna advocate for sustainability to be one of them.
Okay. So you want to clarify all the priorities?
Kind of, this is the general goal of the retreat. Every year has always been kind of one of the main things we're gonna work on, so.
Okay.
I'm content with that.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, thank you for all that. Um.
Lynn, do you want to ask Lynn?
Oh, yeah. All right.
Good morning. These were good guys. Those were all good. Sorry, I'm not there. Um, I, um, my goal for every retreat is to come away with a plan for the future. Um, prior, I'm, first of all, I'm Lynn DeWeach. I'm the mayor. We met briefly a few weeks ago. Um, I'm in my second year of my second and final term. I'm term limited. Um, and I was on council for eight years. But prior to me being mayor, we spent a lot of years at retreats looking backwards, spending a lot of time looking backwards and then a little time discussing council priorities, but not coming up with a plan. I didn't find that to be a particularly good use of council time. So since I've been mayor, we've worked towards a retreat where we end up with actionable items. Um, I approached this year with some deep concerns, um, or concerns, deep may not be the right word, about where we're headed. Do we have a clear vision of the city we want to be? Do we want to be the same as thousands of suburban cities across the United States? With an asterisk, and I'll come back to the asterisk. Or do we want to be the spectacular city that I think we are? And how do we, uh, grow on what we already have and are? Um, as well as just keeping momentum going? Um, and the asterisk is, is there's a lot of suburban cities across the United States that aren't doing great. And I want to make sure, I have three years left, that I leave a legacy that ensures that Dunwoody doesn't become one of them. And everything that everyone said is their priorities is part of, of, of that strategy, of what we need to do to make sure that we're competitive. And at a, at a speaker that, at a, at a meeting, conference, not a conference, an event some of us were at recently, one of the speakers, and I wish I could credit her, and if Michael Starling is there, he probably knows her name, said, as a reminder, and maybe it wasn't, I don't know, somebody on the panel said that when someone chooses Dunwoody, they're not just choosing Dunwoody over a metro Atlanta city or community or location, they're choosing us over locations all across the country. And while I have always realized that from a corporate relocation perspective, I never thought of it in that terms for a retail location or another kind of small business. So what do we do to make sure that we are the premier, that's probably a lot longer, sorry, but I'm the mayor, um, a premier destination? So my short answer is, is, um, what everybody said, uh, plus a long, a longer term vision of where we need to be to ensure our relevancy in the future. And now, oh, be quiet.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you, Lynn, for that. You let. Thank you. I think wraps up a lot of the comments that we had from the council members. So, um, that was great introduction. Thank you. Um, can we conclude this part by having the staff just introduce themselves? You don't need to give the objective, just introductions out from what department you're in, just like put a name to the face.
Let me start.
Sure.
Michael Starling, economic.
Richard Plaid, we need to all.
Jennifer Basher, communications director.
Richard Plaid, finance director.
Virgil Aldrin, parks director.
Mike Carlson, chief of police.
Michael Smith, homework director.
John Aldrin, money to court clerk.
General Page, technology director.
Cheryl Lowry, city court.
Eric Linton, city manager.
Yeah, he's assistant city manager.
I've met these three before, so. Everybody else, very nice to meet you. And I think at this point, um, we're just a couple of minutes early, which is good. You can probably chew up this time elsewhere in the agenda. So, um, thank you, everybody, for participating and introducing yourselves. And I think at this point, I'm gonna launch into, um, the recapping of the twenty, uh, twenty-four retreat. And I think Eric's gonna lead us in that, so take it right here.
Sure, sure. We're going ahead and Jay, Jay, I should put this presentation together. Jay, you want to go ahead and he could all go through that. Is it? I'm.
You have to share still.
The Jay, the Jay pulled that up, little, um, what we put together of that, is this is something that the mayor wanted to look at. You know, where, what did we do last? He might run the retreat with a list of deliverables. Where are we? What happened to each, each one of them? Did we finish it? Did we change it? Did we say that we defer that to later? So that's what Jay's gonna go over in a minute. And, um, and I want you all to ask questions as we go. Is anything that comes up on these items? And also, I think one thing that, when, when Richard and I spoke, uh, setting the retreat up, you know, is there stuff that they all have? You know, if it's appropriate, bring it up. Otherwise, please write it down so we, we don't forget anything that's what needs to be said from the council. So Jay, is it ready?
It's ready.
All right. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, first of all, just to let everybody know, there's a slight bit of a delay, like about a four or five second delay when I press a button and something happens. So it's not instantaneous to go to the next slide. Um, the first thing that we wanted to do was recap last year. One thing that has happened over the retreats for the city council for the past three or four years is to create, and as the mayor said earlier, lists of deliverables and directions. It has vastly improved over even just the first, you know, the past three or four years. So what staff did was we took all the deliverables and directions from last retreat and updated them. Now, the thing that happened during this that staff figured out was sometimes we don't feel like, oh, we got a lot. Oh, but then all of a sudden we realize, oh, that got done, this got done, that got done. Sometimes when you do the work, you don't realize it till you go back and you actually check the boxes. So with that going off, for, uh, like, okay, there's gonna be a little bit of a delay for it to be up there. Let's see, one, there you go. There you go. Okay, first one, city council deliverables. Uh, first thing was an administrative change. Uh, it was to get a pre-agenda list, as we call it, which you get the week before. Before that, you got it on Wednesday or Thursday or Friday before Monday meeting, but now you get it earlier. Sometimes that old documents are there at that time, but that way you know ahead of time what's going on. That started almost immediately. Uh, another one, add updates is needed for capital projects. It's a monthly city manager's report. I also want to do a thing on here. In your. Yes?
I just do want to share. We're trying to get it on our screen, so. They're following. Apparently Ginger, these slides are on our computers? We can follow on?
Yes. Yeah, if you go to your desktop and go to the one labeled.
Agendas and documents or something.
It's right after it, but it's the folder labeled, yeah, agendas and documents is the second file in that folder.
Thanks. One thing.
Yes. Okay, um.
Wait, can I make, wait, wait, wait. Can I make a quick suggestion? Please, so sorry, I'm not there. Um, go back one slide. Please. Can, is that, can you do that?
Yeah, you'll maintain three or four seconds for it to be there for you.
Okay. I think as we, if it's okay, cause I think, and we can do it quickly, but if someone has questions, so that's the first one, now go to the next one. If someone, like, I think we should ask, did this have the impact we thought it would? Or something, so we can know whether, you know, this was a cha- right. This is. So I, I'm not there. Tom can do it or the facilitator can do it or you can do it. But look at these two deliverables. Did they, are they helping? Is there more we need to do to solve the problem, et cetera?
Good point.
That's, that's an excellent point. That, that's what we, Mayor, that's excellent. As staff, that's what we really want. We, we want feedback. We don't want to just do stuff if it's not effective. So that's a great point.
Uh, so first of all, pre-agenda thing, pre-agenda thing, pre-agenda, whatever we should call it, working, not working, helpful, not helpful. We're. Yeah. That's helpful. Okay, cool. Second one, updating city council, the city manager's monthly report. And I also want to dovetail into this. In the list of documents for here, one thing we added was all the reports that city council gets throughout the year. All the monthly reports are there in one document. All the quarterly reports are there as one document and all the monthly financial reports are there in one document. We wanted to do this because there is a great deal of systematic reporting. And when you total all those together, I think we got over five hundred pages worth of things given to council during the year. Actually, the monthly reports I actually find a lot of value with and staff themselves will go, it's a long list, it's a little bit of work for them, but it's a good way to recap it. When you're trying to figure out what you do, it's there. So on reporting, good, bad, otherwise? Anything lacking? Right? Moving on to the next one or, oh, wrong. Laugh, oh, sorry.
Jay's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, the, we separated these into two categories, deliverables and direction. One of them was direction. Our council members wanted to look at developing district town halls. And it evolved into coffee with council members. And there were three last year, uh, one, two in July, uh, actually four, two in July, two in September. There's one planned for March. This is what kind of the town hall concept evolved into when it was activated, for lack of a better word. Has that worked with those that participated in it? Is there something else that we could do?
So. My thought, Joe and I did two. We did one as an actual coffee with council and we did one where we went to, um, the farmer's market. The one where we had the coffee with council, I didn't get a lot of value out of it, didn't have a lot of people stop by. I think if we want to do this, we ought to try to tie it to other events that are occurring in the city. And then the question is which events? Because you want to make sure you talk to different groups of people. Um, and we just picked the DHA farmer's market because it was easy to do, it was, you know, kind of the same timeframe, but, um, you know, maybe make sure we have coverage. I know, I know we try to do it at the lemonade days, but maybe we try to make sure we have, you know, some council members present at every city event in case, you know, just to randomly ask citizens, what's on your mind? You know, what are you thinking? What do you, what do you think about this? I don't know, Joe, if you have any.
Yeah, I like that. I mean, I haven't, I've never been to a soccer game. I don't, I don't go to the baseball game, so there's other places that we could hang out that I'd be open to, uh.
But it's got to be hot, I think. Stand alone, just, it's, I don't think that's a good use of time.
So how do you do something like that? You just, I mean, you have any prep? Do you have, uh, I mean, or do people just recognize you?
No, no, no.
Come around. I do think that, right, they, they're just gonna show.
It'll be put out in communications from the city, you know, we'll post it on our own social media. Um, but, but honestly, if someone needs to get a hold of us, I think we're all pretty available. So it's more kind of those chance encounters where someone, it's, it's not an issue that's pressing enough for them to reach out, but if they see you there, oh, hey, I really wish you guys would do this. Or I really liked that you did that. You get kind of more genuine feedback, um, and, and you get to talk to more people.
Yeah, we have a pop-up tent, the city has, and it's got the banner, so they know where to come.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's what I was gonna say. There, there is a way to identify.
Yeah. We did the coffee thing, we had like a little table stand sitting there.
Okay.
So people, you know, wearing their name tags.
That makes sense, cause I could pass by my rapid, we're capable of not even.
Yeah, sure.
That makes sense.
So I go, I'm sorry, I go to most farmer's markets, most movies, most concerts this past summer proved a little challenging, I think. But, and I do think that being present and identifiable, you know, wearing your name tag. I think my, uh, a friend of mine on the council in Sandy Springs actually had big, you know, buttons made up that said, I'm on city council, ask me anything, or whatever they said, or can I help you or whatever. I think when we're at those events and we're identifiable, people, if they have something they want to say or ask us or just thank us, they'll find us at the farmer's market. Cause farmer's markets were my jam long before Dunwoody was a city. I'm often there and I have lots of, I have conversations. I can always have lots of conversations because sometimes people stop me and I don't get as much time. But I think that, that being present in the community is incredibly helpful to get a pulse of what's happening. Um, I think there is a place for town halls. A pulse of what's happening. Um, I think there is a place for town halls, I certainly have been remiss since the pandemic. Scuttled my first state of the city, um, be doing a state of the city next week. That the chamber invited me to, and then we'll launch a series of meetings through the community. I just got off the phone, though, with a constituent who said. Sort of Rob's feedback, which is, is we need a new and different way to communicate. Um, he suggested podcast, something where we can reach more people. Um, and so that's what we're talking about later, but I, I do think physically being in the community at different events really helps us hear what's happening.
I'd, I'd like to just chime in too, because I've actually done two different events, uh. I did the first, uh, the coffee and conversation, actually mine was very well attended, maybe because it was the first one, um. Uh, and, uh, that, that format was great, and I think that the benefit of that was they could talk about whatever was on their minds, they, you know, it wasn't. My agenda that they were following, it was their own personal agenda, or what was most important to them, and they can have that conversation, and it was more. Personal interactive, I found that much more, um. Beneficial, though, the one we did in, in July, and J U helped me with that, is we, it was a formal town hall meeting, and that was, um. Uh, I was a little disappointed with the, with the turnout, there was only a handful of people that showed up, I thought the presentation was, was excellent, you know, Jay handled most of it, we talked about. Explaining city taxes and how it all works, um, and city, uh, finance as well. Um, I thought it was, I think the people that attended got good benefit from it, but the attendance wasn't, and again, perhaps it was because it was in the summer, perhaps it was because it was the first. Real town, formal town hall meeting that had been done in quite some time, um, I don't know, but. From my own personal experience, you know, I'd be willing to maybe give that formal town hall another chance just to see it, because that was the first one. Uh, but my own personal experience, the, the coffee was a lot more, uh, beneficial, um. And, uh, had a lot more interaction, and I, and again, I think to, to the point that both, uh, the mayor and Rob raised, I think. Maybe another part of that is because we are all readily accessible to the community at events, at the grocery store, just, just walking around town. Or through phone calls and emails, um. I, I think that may also contribute to the formal events, maybe not, because if we weren't. As readily available, perhaps people, that would be the only way for them to reach out to us, so. That was just my experience with two different formats. Not sure what I'm gonna do moving forward, to be honest.
So something like this is working for you, and you're relatively passionate about wanting to continue with, so is maybe. The action item here to button down the template of how you do it, or when you do it, or where you do it. Um, or just continue with what you got.
Can I even offer a kind of a question? Part of this, and when y'all sent the topics and swap analysis in. One of the things that popped up occasionally was reaching out to communities that do not communicate with the city regularly. As always, we said, there's a chunk of people who have lives and do stuff, and they know where they live, and that's about all they do. Is that a priority in this, is using these to reach out to those that you do not reach out, or do not get to reach out to yet? Got a big, big goal in this?
I would think so. I think what we're gonna do, the next one will be in the ice cream, the brand new ice cream place, and we can just. People will know, some people will know, but we'll catch people who don't know, and they'll just be, we'll be there to greet them.
So when it comes to scheduling this, then, right, so we're kind of. Do we kind of? What, what is our, you know, what is the cadence look like then, of the frequency? Uh, of when we do it, because right now, I, I just learned that you're doing something on the twenty ninth, so. Yeah, let's, let's develop a cadence and, and see what we can.
I think that's, that, that seems like a doable action item. For communications.
It's a good point, because I think we intentionally waited. A period of time after you guys did your first one, and we want to respect that.
I honestly forgot about it, actually.
So, I, I looked at the calendar, and I was like, oh, it has been a hot minute since we did ours, so I reached out to Catherine, and I was like. What is your, what is your calendar look like? And that was the date that worked for us, and we just thought the Good Vibes Ice Cream Place would be good, and it, we're doing it on a Saturday afternoon, so hopefully we can catch some people that we wouldn't. Doing coffee on a weekday morning. So. Um, I also, I think. A lot of it is perception, you know, like being accessible or doing this, we can say, hey, we were there. We're there for you, but, you know, citizens do have to. Meet us there as well, but we have to make ourselves accessible, so by doing that, like, the perception is, we're out there ready to talk to you, you need to come meet us too.
And, and one tactical is the whole perimeter business districts, that whole ecosystem of people there as well. They may not be residents, but they're part of the environment and economic, so like. Do, are we even considering going to the mall or Ashford Lane? I mean, so we have a lot of other nodes there to look at.
So I think the action line, maybe coming back to Jay, is just, you know, when, where, how, how you do it. Communicating, you're gonna be there, make it effective. Instead of, I mean, you can just show up at a soccer game, but then you're depending on people to kind of come up to you, or if you organize something first and. Kind of broadcast it out there to say, hey, we're gonna be here at this farmer's market, we got a tent, come see us, you're likely to, you have a lot of intentions communicating, so. Okay?
We will move on to the next one, even though I think it is actually disappeared from the screen, I can actually, the smaller screen, and they have, everybody has that right in front of them. I, I don't know.
Lynn does, Lynn does. What happened to your chair, your chair?
I'll pull it up on my computer, keep going.
Uh, one of the deliverables will be working to assist. Residents about communicating with nine one one. It occasionally becomes the issue where somebody does not know how to interact on it, and, uh. Both police and communications worked on that and put it in one of the digest, I'm forgetting which one it was.
Summer. Four, quarter.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm flying line right now, um, so, so. Read over it, shoulders, yes. Work didn't work. It was a smaller thing, it was an easy deliverable, but it's a type of deliverable that can make an impact with someone.
It was good.
I don't know if it worked or didn't work, but I'm also wondering, what's the status of smart nine one one? Is that still a thing? Are you still? It is still a thing.
Yes, it is still.
We, and the reason it's important to me is because of the cell phone coverage, calling nine one one, in that aspect, you might want to talk about it more, but. I think that's an important thing to be discussing on a pretty regular basis, because I know you have to update that and recertify your phones. At least once a year. So I think that's an important thing that we need to do more of.
And I think Jennifer and I. Periodically. You know, by sending out the smart nine one one, because like what John was talking about. Um, like, I need, I just moved, so I need to update mine, because when I call, I'm probably gonna ping off a Gwinnett Tower. When I call nine one one, which means I'm gonna go to Gwinnett nine one one, but if you're registered in smart nine one one. It'll direct me to chat on, because it's gonna know my address, so it's gonna link me to that, to that, uh, area, so, but yeah, I think. Pretty consistent reminders, maybe quarterly, like, hey, don't forget to register in nine one one, send that out to.
And. I, um. Think that we need to, this'll come up under public safety, which is maybe tomorrow or today, I can't remember, but to talk about. What John's talking about, but also nine one one in general, so.
Well, and let's be sure, mayor, for tomorrow, that we put a pin in that one for tomorrow, then.
Right.
Several things that I want to add on that, because a lot of the public safety issues that we get, sometimes they start with the fact. The call did not go to the right center to begin with.
Right.
Dig into that some more tomorrow, but I love what we're saying, and we need to increase the effort, great point.
And, and I, I think that. One of the ways. We can look at the messaging with nine one one is that it needs to probably be on a continual, like, we need to regularly remind people. I'll give a quick example, that we had a resident whose child had passed out. You know, lost consciousness or whatever, and fell, hit the, their head, uh. When they called nine one one, by the time that, you know, nine one one was fast, that wasn't the issue, but when they called, they said, oh. You know, she passed out, she's regained consciousness, and the call was prioritized differently because she never mentioned the kid hit something on their way down. So. You know, nine one one can, they, I think. Continuing to educate people that calls are triaged. That if you have a broken arm. It's gonna be a while before someone comes, probably, versus, so it's very important what you, how you answer the questions. I think that's something we have to continually, um, message, how communications depend, it's up to them. But I think the D News is clearly from our surveys, the most widely read, not D News, the, um, Mail Digest. Is, um. It's a good tool.
Well, and mayor, that's a great point to talk about communications, because those are the things that you and I hear about a lot about. That we get the emails, and we're the first ones to get those, the council sees some of it, but not as much, but it does go back to the educational level, and what is the protocol? For that type of stuff, because people don't understand, when nine one one was originally envisioned, everybody had a landline. So that eliminated most of the problems, we knew where you were, but nobody has a landline anymore, so the system has to be. Or we have to learn the system, how to use system more today, we as the general public, that is, anyway, great point.
Are we coming back to this, or?
We want to.
Or should we take an attitude on this point?
That's, that's.
Sounds like you need some clarification, and now you're.
Yes.
I just have one quick suggestion, because I'm on our nine eleven communication on the webpage, can we put a link to the article, or put the article on that, I mean. That's like, because it has a whole, you know, smart nine eleven, blah, 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 might as well just throw that on there. Just. It's easy to do, it's done.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Any more on this topic, or the law? Next up, beautification, there were two on here, and one of them is a, did not get checked off the list, we have to put those on there when we don't get to. One of the things out of last year's retreat was, as we call it, small options to beautify commercial corridors. Well, in developing the twenty twenty five budget, we started, we looked at it, due to budget constraints, wasn't included. One of those things that can always be added back later, but we all have said at the beginning that funding is an issue that we have to talk about. So it was one of those we looked at, but again, didn't make. Thoughts, questions, comments, and this is a bigger picture, by the way.
Yeah, we're actually, we can fall in that bucket, a partial check box, the box, because we're using for the. Multi, multi-packs, hundred and twenty-five K, using that bucket, the tourism product development bucket. For wayfinding. So that is part of, I would consider that part of that.
Partial, partial.
And, and that potential thing we could talk about for, for the future, for using a slice of that. For potential beautification.
And, and I think expanding too, um. Not appropriate everywhere, I understand, but, uh, we have a known net tree, uh, loss policy, and, you know. Maybe getting some of those trees, having a definitive plan to put more of those trees in the right of ways, where appropriate. To, uh, as part of the beautification process, uh, rather than just always defaulting to the park, not to say that. The trees, the park's not a great place for trees, but we, we can, we can distribute those trees throughout the city. Uh, in other areas, and, and since that's money that's already allocated. For those trees to be planted, let's. Put it into a. The beautification process.
Any project is using, they're beautifying the right of ways, you know, the Georgetown, the, um.
Public garden.
At Spalding, it's. It's nice.
Well, one thing that I think we could expand on that, what I'd like to do also is to be able to use the tree fund. For ways for other type of beautification besides trees, and here's why I say that, you know, trees in the right of way. Create a lot of liability issues for us, but what we have is, look at some pieces that we did, when Michael did it, northeast tree of two eighty-five. G dots all have any trees in that section, but we went and put in all kinds of other landscape or, or trees that met their specifications, Michael. But what we're, I think what we're lacking a little bit now, the two eighty-five product, water products finished. And there are more opportunities to go into some areas and put more beautification in, but can we? I think, and we have, we may have to, as can, but I don't, I believe that tree fund is limited by our own rules. There is a way to expand that in some other type of vegetation, is what I'm saying, is still, you know, healthy, hardy vegetation, that does what a tree does. But it's just not a tree.
What do you vegetation?
Yes.
It's what a tree does, but it's not.
Well, no, it doesn't like. It means, it means.
It changes the carbon dioxide.
No, I understood what you said.
Well, we, I've brought, you know, I've had this conversation a couple of times in my six-year tenure about. Trees in right of way, okay, we've had these conversations, and then I can go over to Sandy Springs or, or Shambly, and I can show you where there's the curb. Here's, here's a four-foot, five-foot landscape buffer, and then there's a sidewalk, and in that landscape buffer are hardwoods. I'd say Spring Circle, they did it, and Endorable, they did a new peach tree, so. I think it looks nice.
We don't want to abandon it, I'm just saying, is there, there's areas where we can't do it for some reason. This is beside visibility.
Yeah, and it's been an idea, I wa- I wasn't trying to limit it to just right of ways, I mean, there might be, you know, an exit ramp, and, you know.
Sure.
And beautifying that area with, with, with additional trees, or using existing resource, maybe rethinking how we're using existing resources to accomplish other goals.
To me, that's a big piece of when you come into, look when you go to other towns, you know, if, if you're driving down Interstate sixteen, for example, you know, you come into Meadow. But what's different about that? They have illuminated the night, they have more landscape in there, that separates that town out, how can we separate Dunwoody out? From other metro areas, is what I'm saying, so what, what else can we do?
Right, so that's a parking lot issue for the investment section, I think, or building Dunwoody or something.
That, that's, that's a great.
We'll move this over to the parking lot, then.
Yeah, and it's for the, for what we're saying, is in that other section that we have.
I would also add that, like, you guys talked about trees, but we kind of been pretty dedicated to public art, I mean, we just okayed the installation on. Um, Shambly Dunwoody, the red light project, to me, that's all beautification in the right of way too, so I kind of go, you know.
Let me jump in before we close the subject, I'm all in on the subject, I, uh, had the email back to Sharon, it was one of the bullet points. And I said, we need to, we've done enough placemaking in the sense of the big signs, once they're all installed, we're gonna have plenty of placemaking. But it's the beautification and the landscaping that should be next, and as far as the trees, great, but think about it from a flowering aspect. We should almost have standards of how many azaleas, how many, you know, flowering trees, it's that long term, so. For me, I don't want to talk placemaking anymore, maybe they need some over by the mall, but placemaking in the city is, for me, is done. But the beautification aspect should be next, so that's what I put in one of the, uh, reports back, staff.
And thank you for the three-minute ad hoc. Right, I mean, seriously, when I see people, when I see the guys out there, I'm out burning, and they're trimming and cutting and doing hedging work, I'm like. Wow, seriously, you know, people are taking that for granted now, but you go to. Unincorporated, that ain't happening.
Uh, for those that do not realize that, or may not, we did a presentation a little bit ago to Rotary. And showing the size of our government, and one of the things that we have is our second biggest department. Is a contract. With Tri-State, with twenty-six people, after police, once you start counting contractors, Tri-State is our second biggest. Beating heartbeats who are doing work for this.
And if I could, I agree with you, and I also want to thank Public Works, um, right-of-way maintenance is very important. The sightlines, as you're driving down and you have driveways coming in from, let's say, a gas station. And those cars have to go in front of the bushes to try to look, I, I put a request in to Michael, and he was able to clean up. Some right-of-ways, just for safety aspects, we need to be looking at it from that perspective as well. So, you know, a sweep every once in a while, just looking at it from a driver's perspective, either on the main road or from coming in and out of. High-traffic areas going into main roads, that safety perspective is important, and we should be taking care of that. As much as we're putting in new landscaping, we need to take what, good care of the safety impacts of what's already there.
So Richard, I think what we're kind of forming up to is, this is an opportunity, it's an area of further opportunities for improvements.
Yeah.
And have Dunwoody stand out, go over beyond.
Again, this is a great discussion. I hate to be controlling from afar, but we're need to continue the review of what we've done and put on the parking lot the stuff we need to come back to.
Yeah, but Richard, then he's adding that as a parking lot.
Okay, but we're still talking about.
Okay, with, with that, is it okay to move on to the next one?
Yeah, if we want to get into it.
Okay, uh, increased signs sweeps for code enforcement, this started almost immediately. First off, opinions for sign level in the city, it's not part of beautification, you can't make a sign beautiful with a. A little paint or thing in a piece of plastic, doing good, doing bad. No?
Do, do we ever try to hold, at some point, I don't know who was on council with such, John, didn't we pay for something? That, like, called the phone number or something, do you remember what I'm talking about, John? Like, of the people, like, it would say, you know, call so-and-so for junk removal.
I don't know, but, I mean, we've done sign sweeps, and then code enforcement would storm in the, in the building, and people could say, you know, I want my sign. We'd actually give them.
Yeah, that's not what, but I thought we had purchased something, maybe not, maybe purchase isn't the right word, but there was some tool we could use. That would warn the phone number. Not to put signs in Dunwoody again. It probably isn't very effective, they, they're all paying someone to put the signs out, I think.
And Mayor Richard's got something that, code enforcement typically calls those sign people if there's a phone number on there, and they warn them. That don't put signs up illegally in the right of way. Um, but. The one people, the worst, because. Get out a phone number, and we have to track them down.
I think it's fair to say that for all cities throughout America and the world, always be about.
Yes, there always be, thank you. Just keep doing the work.
You, we, they all know that we're not working out a weekend, so you'll see them up on Friday.
But we do sometimes, we, we do sometimes.
Yeah, we, we, we're doing, working on the weekends.
Okay, okay.
We had a number assigned, it was reported that you took down, I think it was a number.
Safe for the law.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Okay, uh, one that was on there, that when staff talked about it, uh, develop options available.
Go, go.
That's it.
Medium, that's it.
Well, this one, Joe.
That's it, you're on the right side.
You're on the right side?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, options available in the city, well, call it.
No, you're not on the right.
Here, here, look over here, just breathe out, there.
I'm like living in two different worlds, and really, okay. Review current film codes, report back to council, should there need to be changes or amendments, internally staff looked at them. Or Richard and Michael looked at what we do. Now, no need to do any. Now, no need to do anything else, but your guys' opinion on that, given the current state of. Of this whole filming in the light, we don't get that many anymore.
But yeah, I think what the problem was, was a disruption in the neighborhood, right, it wasn't the issue.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think. What, if I remember. The specifics that prompted this deliverable were addressed by code enforcement. Correct, Richard?
Yes, that's correct.
And when we looked at the code, our code was pretty in line with everybody else's.
It can be managed, it will again pop up, that actor will be that.
Right, and also the industry is not in the best shape of the moment, so. You know, we want to be as welcoming as possible, but respect the neighbors. As much as possible. And I think, I think for the most part, when people are, we don't get very many complaints, in fact. I can't speak for everybody, but that situation, Richard, was the last situation I had to complain about. Is that pretty much what you've seen?
Yes.
He said yes, we didn't, we didn't get to.
Yeah, I would say that it's working, you know, then. We, as a council, we know when something's not working, because people complain to us.
You know, I would say this, all productions have dropped dramatically in Georgia, the the back to back film strike and actor strike. A lot of productions just picked up and moved overseas. Now that those strikes have resolved themselves, some of those productions may start moving back, so just. Keep it on the radar if things start to become problematic again, because there hasn't been a lot of production in Georgia. Uh, but it's, it's starting to slowly trickle back.
We haven't seen people like Gary on the way. Um, safe to move on in this topic? Uh, next up, this is a direction one, as the U D C is being written. Things to be focusing on sustainability, housing, uh, uh, crime prevention by design, Richard, would you like to talk a little bit about this and we open it up to them?
Uh, we're just wrapping up the comprehensive plan, we're going into the code rewrite, but we haven't started that, but. It's very bold. Where are that?
Our cap is, well, later in the. Retreat, will there be any kind of touch on key findings from that comprehensive plan or? That might be influencing the code of changes or?
So, uh, it'll go to planning commission and and you all.
I just think after there was some highlights that you'd seen, you could share or if what, it's not, what do we see?
Is that in another section of the retreat? Later, within the next two days.
We're not touching on, I don't believe, on the comprehensive plan.
It is not set up to do at this.
We'll have an opportunity though, for some, let's, let's put that, let's put that somewhere on what items to cover, if we have time.
But I will say, first, the joint meeting. Yes, that is going to come present comprehensive plan, we could all, within all the other boards.
Circle back, what's there being?
That's the joint meeting, uh, the developer authority, planning commission.
It's on your calendar, I think.
It's an evening, right? Yeah, thank you.
Uh, other comments from council on this particular topic? Next up, uh, pay and compensation, now, just to make sure you're clarifying, you're seeing two figures on here during the retreat. From last year, the pay raise was being discussed, that's the four and a quarter part, that was the twenty twenty four. Pay raise and adjustment, so that was being talked about, we've included that the budget developed for twenty twenty five has a four point nine. Budgeted it in in July. Um, so that is the two things that were, was kind of a very, very good direction, and then also we wanted to update it to reflect. What's happening in this upcoming budget. Questions or comments from council on compensation? Uh, very much a more of a.
Is that still relevant in the sense of the percentage, in the sense of the adjustment? Yes, where others or what's appropriate?
You know, it it is, it is, and so where we are, you know, no, we try to look very closely. And we do a great amount of research, uh, through Nicole's office on where we are compensation wise. The number that we use, the four point nine, we feel strong, there are some places that are higher, there are some places that are lower, we feel it's competitive. Along with our benefit package, and also with this next piece, we're going to talk about this later, which is. Uh, an item that came up last year, I'm just introducing your next item there, which is. Look at some post employment benefits, we do have at eleven thirty, I have a short section on that, I have some experts coming in. Talk about one specific element there. And so, but that was something that came out of last year's retreat, we didn't have a subcommittee look at a couple of things on that, but we'll present those findings today. But to answer your question, the four point nine, we feel spot on.
I just want to make sure that since it's mostly police related, that we're looking at it from that perspective.
And and what we'll do from time to time, what, we do look very close to police on top of that. There's two issues that, you know, as a city manager, and I want to be sure I focus on, one is police. That's, that's the piece that everybody, the visible part, number two is the general staff. Because I don't want, you know, we, we don't want to get in a situation where we're not, but we have trouble with the general staff, also, we've been very fortunate. And our benefit package has allowed us to keep our directors. The police piece is a constant moving target, there's a lot of upmanship that goes on between the different cities. The cities that are our competitors, some of the outlined cities, they don't remove their numbers hard. But you'll have somebody who'll raise us by a certain percentage, and we'll hear so and so did a twelve percent raise, well, it wasn't across the board. It might have been somebody got twelve percent, but maybe they were twenty percent behind, I don't know. But we do look at those factors, there was a thing that Chief said this morning, that someone else has another moving target on the entry level pay. Of course, entry level is always funny, because entry level is not exactly what we always go for. Now, that means you have what I call zero, 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 um, education, and you have zero experience. You know, so that's not necessarily the number one target slot, we prefer someone who has some experience and has an education. And then you move on into the pay scale more, but there is a scale there. And it's something, my job with all this rambling, and I'm saying is, now that now we do need to readjust that scale. Uh, and again, this will be done immediately after this segment here, so that's. Next up, economic development. Uh, as developers approach the city, make sure city council is included in it, I think. That is an ongoing perpetual everything, council satisfaction on that, I'm getting thumbs up, guys, so. I assume that's a positive sign, if they're doing this, we're.
Yeah, I would like to flip that into the staff that works with developers, do they like it? Or are they thinking it's a waste of their time?
I like it, I, we've had a number of business meetings this last year.
I, we're, we're getting thumbs up emojis from everybody, I think we get the little hearts next, and maybe we'll move on to the next topic. Uh, next one, pull together a document that shows how Dunwoody is differentiated from other jurisdictions in its economic appeal. Um, Michael has worked on this with the Dunwoody brand manager, if you want to update more on this before council comments.
Uh, so I presented in, I think, October, a couple of pages in my update, and that was. Sort of what we came up with is, that's how we sell the city, so if there's anything else beyond that that you're, you're looking for, we can certainly work on it, so.
From comments, questions, rooms for improvement, things that are working good, things you like. And I would, I would just say this, Jay, on that one, in talking to my peers, um, other managers on. The program that we have, Dunwoody has, it really sets us apart, is excellent, I mean. So, uh, we're very small, you know, thirteen square miles, and I don't know how big the. Your area is, Mike, I'll say, you know, there, you try to capture, but I think we really do an excellent job in the incentives that they offer, uh, help. Free to move on?
Yes.
Next up, review current incentive programs available for businesses in the city, and see if there's anything. We do have some, some, eh, some entities come to us occasionally on it, we've done one. Um, right now, we don't recommend any changes to it, anything from.
I'd like to say something. Which is. For, to me, in this current commercial real estate environment. Michael, I just want to make sure that, like, we're constantly reviewing, like, we have Google alert set for Georgia cities and incentives or something. So we know. I know you have your ear to the ground, so that we know if suddenly Brookhaven is offering something. To lure a comp, you know what I mean?
Yeah, just so everybody knows, their local government is very limited on, on what we can offer, and we. Offer. I think a competitive package, what we do offer that very few other cities can, is our development authority does have a large budget. And that is from the deals that they have done, and we offer cash. Which, which, I, I don't know of any other city our size that, that can do that. So I think we're, we're well ahead of what other communities around us can do.
Thank you.
Well, where is the catalog or inventory of what kind of incentive workers that we offer?
I, I think you've already, I think we've got that in the presentation when we adopted it, right?
Well, we did, so, so we, so, so basically, we, we offer tax abatement through the development authority, which most governments can. It can rarely be used because a lot of our lease deals are so small that it, it doesn't, doesn't work. We offer an abatement on a business licensing, which is fairly, uh, common, a lot of communities do, we do it for ten years. At fifty percent, which is a little richer, and then we again have this cash incentive. And so we, we don't offer very many things like some cities do, like, if you meet this criteria, you get it. We want them to come to us and negotiate, we want to know what we're getting, because not all deals are things that we want to, to incentivize.
Then not all deals are equal, and then there's also clawbacks, so explain the clawbacks, if you can, and have we ever used them?
Uh, we have not used clawbacks, but yes, anytime we negotiate through, through the city or the development authority, we would require if. They would have to meet certain standards for a certain period of time. Typically not for the entire length of their lease, but for the first three, four, or five years, and if they don't meet those. Then we have the ability to either go back and get stuff we've already given them, or, or stop the, the incentives.
It's in every contract, you're saying?
Um, everything that we've done so far, we do an M O U, a memorandum of understanding between the city and the. And the entity or the development authority and the entity, and they're basically the same.
Other comments from council on this? Uh, next one, develop time tracks, regular trends and insights to be presented, not necessarily at council meeting, but also possibly other forums. It's been at council meetings, it's a quarterly economic update, council valuable, not valuable?
Very valuable.
Very valuable, and also, I think, I think Michael has spoken to several different groups. Right, Michael, have you lately, maybe I'm wrong, did you address Rotary?
The Rotary, I've been down in the state, we've been much more. Working with the state and Metro Atlanta economic development votes.
Right.
Successful point?
Yes.
Next move on, you get, as Tom just did, the hard move. Uh, next up, this is a longer one, and I'd like Richard to help me chime in on this, is we.
Let's keep on talking.
And then tell jokes in this. Okay, this has to do with the jet ferry and Winter Chapel redevelopment plans. And Richard, if you just can take this, because you know more about it, and Smith can chime in too, isn't he?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, um, most originally, we rezoned about half of that area. Uh, to see one, and I believe that, uh, there, there's a sign up on, uh, on there. Something's coming soon.
Big Clay, that's what it's called, Big Clay.
Also, uh, Joe, second, it would be walk the area, um, and we also implemented the street state. Street scape standards, um, which were adopted by, uh, council as well.
And and I'll just add to that, when we, uh, as part of the, the comp plan and, uh, the work that that committee is doing. Uh, we're kind of approaching some of those neighborhoods a little differently as well, especially the Winters Chapel area, we're actually subdivided into two. Groups, because they, we, the discussion was, there are different characters in different parts of that area, so. Um, so more of a fine tuning of how we address those areas, and I think that will be effective. Uh, for the city moving forward, so I'm, I'm. Uh, excited to see what comes from that in not only the comp plan, but the, well, uh, U D O.
So we'll see the fine tuning in the comp plan?
And I. We've, uh, summary of that in, in the update I provided from the last meeting, as far as some of the new areas, character areas that the group has identified.
And, and I know I put Winters Chapel somewhere on my suggested topics, I think this is definitely something we should. Circle back to, even if it's for Tom to give an over, more of an overview. As council, I think we want to lead. On, all, for all, we want to serve all areas of our city. And so I think this is worth a co- further conversation later today or tomorrow.
No, I agree, yeah, because there is perception. For a lot of people that live in that area, that it is a forgotten part of the city, and but what we have done to projects there and have others on the, on, on the. On the slate, so it's important, I think, also to kind of also celebrate the things we're doing here as well.
Absolutely.
From something later on, but we're going to get into where we invest later on in day two. Thank, free to move on on this one, or?
Yes.
Okay, next up, three, a multi year timeline to, uh, rewrite all the city financial policies. Uh, Richard and I have talked about this, and I'll let him go on it, we talked to the financial advisor, we'll get on it, it is a big lift, just to let you know.
Yeah, it takes time, yeah, it's, as Jay said, it is a big lift, we're, we're trying to incorporate some of ones when we adopt the budget this year. And and just kind of sit your path that way, that's our plan right now, to try to get to as many of them as you can, yes.
Uh, and that is one, just for all of us, not just financial policies, but all of that, it gets, things get reviewed during the process, performable day to day work.
This, is that something that's best done all at once, or in, in bite sized pieces as we go along and identify things to more align with best practices? So there's different people that are kind of quote unquote experts with these policies, like the financial advisor only will do like debt management. And things like reserve policies and things like that, they won't do an accounting policy or anything, that's not very of expertise. So it's finding those people that are the, the right resources to be able to help write those and everything, is what.
So we could do it with incremental improvements and not have to do it all, all at once.
Correct, correct, yes, yes, yes.
Um, other thoughts on this topic? Uh, next one, review and improve the pro forma general fund model, this is always ongoing. Um, at some point, probably about once a month, we throw it on, on the wall, we say we need to tweak this, we need to tweak that. Here's the thing, the needle doesn't move from day to day on, on, on what we've said in the past on finances, it. Assumptions can be made, but it takes a lot to move a ship. It can't just turn on a dime, so we just kind of look at it, we kind of improve it so we can project that easier on the expense side of things. Uh, this is probably a topic throughout the two days we're here, so thoughts on this and finance is just kind of an open ended thing with council, right? Question out loud on the monthly financial reports that y'all see, it got improved about six months ago. Uh, does anybody remember that it got improved? Okay, that first one, uh, we will say, Richard will go for it, how bad was the previous version you inherited?
Yeah, that was, uh, twenty seven tabs of a Excel spreadsheet, yes, that we remind manually updating, so.
And now, just so you know, it is a can push the button, it generates the report, so.
Thank you, can I make a suggestion, which is, is on the deliverables, like, this. We're going to talk about finances a lot, but should we have, like, the ones that are ongoing, like, someone keeping them for the next, next year's goals? Or whatever?
Generated as this whole two days gets generated, it'll be incorporated into it.
Okay.
Uh, free to move on to the next one.
Yeah.
Okay, direction, reincorporating City One O One. This is one that staff kind of struggled with, because there's kind of a mixed what we want to do on it, and I want to go back to council with this. City One O One is like a lot of people, people have lives, they live in cities, but they don't know, they don't have time, they don't care, so. Sometimes you can do City One O Ones, and no one attends, or it's the same for people that always attend. It's more of a tie with that than it is with the information, we tried to work it into the budget process this year, but it just doesn't lend itself, because again. The same communities, I want to get y'all's thoughts on City One O One. About this, because it's one that we couldn't quite grasp during the year.
How many times have we done it, what's the, what's the. Scheduling right now?
We have, we haven't done a City One O One since I've been here.
What, did Tom do it as part of his town hall?
Yeah.
Yes.
If you call that, it's, to me, that's.
One, one element of it, we focused on the.
One, one element of it, we focused on the.
So City One-O-One was different than what this was. City One-O-One used to be like a, uh, like our police, our citizens' police academy, but on city stuff. It, this isn't even remotely the same thing as City One-O-One. I I don't really recall this part of the discussion last year. I actually think we should talk about whether or not, about bringing back some version of City One-O-One. I think that Tom had a town hall meeting about the budget. We had one the year before, because I remember being it at Kingsley. I don't, I think that was a different meeting, or you know, about finances. It's clear that as, as part of our path towards a solution for the city's financial challenges, that we're going to need a variety of types of conversations. Like I said, I just happened to have a conversation early this morning with a constituent. I think town halls or a town hall has to be part of it. Um, I think our presence at events and having a, like the opportu- like we've done before. But I also think how we present the material on the internet is much, I think it's clearer than it used to be. But yeah, I I think the, and and this year we changed how we engage with the budget by not having a budget committee per se, but having everybody in the room at the same time. And I, and actually think that's helpful, like all of us working on it together. Is helpful.
I agree with you, Lynn, on a lot of stuff there, but I'd also like to see the City One-O-One happen every two years. In relation to those that might be wanting to run for city council. Two years, we have elections, we have announcements coming out from Sharon's office. I would love to see that, but maybe a year before the election, saying, in one year, there's going to be an election. Who wants to run for city council? This is what we do, this is how we operate. Please come, learn everything you want to learn. There's a lot of people that are interested. I just saw the, the, the list of people going to the April first meeting. You invite everybody that's halfway interested in city operations, all the board members and anybody else that's open to the public. Come join us, learn about city operations, because again, we council members every two years, second point.
What would be nice to have just a series of assets in a library, um, so like we have all these repeatable bits of information. Here's our, here's how SPHOS works, here's all these little things. So maybe we have these in simple little FAQ PDFs in a library. So when we do these little meeting meets, we can maybe just direct somebody to that. Um, inventory of that, this is how our charter works, this is our org chart of how the city council reports to the city manager. Here's how our budget works. So it's like a, potentially think about it, having a library of assets of civics, from other different subjects, public works, a different, uh, you know, what we do operationally.
And it is, you know, one way to rethink it too is, as, as we've talked about, you know, reaching out to people and or getting people to attend events is difficult because everyone's on different schedules. Um, and sometimes people are trying to reach are the, the least likely to be able to make it there. So is there a way that we can bring it to them? And what I mean is either having a city, having a sh- a short series of videos where we have a the, basically an online learning for people where they go, and that way they could also, there's only one particular topic they're interested in. You know, I'm interested in, in city budgeting and they can go and click on that video and they can learn more about it on their schedule. Maybe, you know, that way, I think it's an opportunity, and and that's how more and more people, especially of a, of the younger generation, and most of us in this room are getting their information is through videos and through online interaction. And and perhaps that's a way we, and maybe engage more of that generation as well, uh, by putting it in the, in the formats that they're getting their information from already.
So we've agreed we're doing City One-O-One, the TikTok version?
No, well, I think that, I think that there's, I think that, that Tom's idea is fantastic. It should go as a, I'm sorry to keep doing this, but it should go somewhere where we remember to come back to it. Under, under the things, but but I think, and and John's right, we ought to go back to City One-O-One. I think part of what we struggle with is the same, is same as every other city. But many of our peers have gone back to start offering those, I don't want to call them classes, what, I don't know what you call them, but the City One-O-One programs. I mean, just letting people understand zoning is a huge.
Um, okay, so we did, off, off the game with City One-O-One, incorporate it with election cycle. Breach more than just finance, this is back to zoning, this is other things. There are, people always forget, cities have tons of stuff they do. And I don't blame it when a citizen doesn't know that we do something. It's hard to keep up. Um, other things about this topic before we move on. That, I think I have lost the presentation visually, so I'm looking at the reason book. Rachel, I'll let you go with the next one. It's all about parks. What happened at Waterford this year?
Oh, nothing. So the, yeah, first deliverable and still playground at Waterford. For that one, um, next deliverable, install restrooms at Homecoming Wildcat. I will, I'll do a commercial. Facilities at those two parks. We can use the word as stall. They are placed in place. We facilitate it, yeah. And what we're talking about this morning, tomorrow morning, um, but the third deliverable was review veterans memorial option to report back to council.
Thoughts on those topics? Feel free to discuss it as much detail as you want throughout the restrooms.
No, if, if anyone hasn't been by Waterford yet, playground looks great, it really does. And and the neighborhood's excited about it, so, uh, that, that, that's one run in my book. They, I think they, I think they would appreciate it, yeah. Just not in the middle of winter when it's twenty degrees.
And your mayor's a baby. Um, can I ask a question about Waterford Park? So, how do we make sure the community knows it's there? Like, I did get a phone call from someone about that once. Like, are, are we measuring use? I guess let me step back because I'm a big believer in data. Like, are we looking at use, using whatever tools we have to see if only the neighbors are using it? Or, because before you have a problem, you need to define it. So I guess I'd ask, again, this could come up later, someone will write it down because I won't remember. You know, can we talk about that park and how we're making sure it's getting you, you know, that the community know, the city knows about it?
So the ribbon cutting will help. That's always a big bridge. Of course, it's listed everywhere that we have all of our other parks. I did look at Placer a month or so ago and it, we didn't have the data, just because that's a smaller park. Um, but I know we're doing, I think we did a splash in the last digest for a while. I know we've put it in different avenues. I could do something else that we've, really the ribbon cutting at the playground is going to be the biggest thing because that playground is, moms will find it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just say this, uh, this is by no means definitive, uh, a report on this. But I've had a couple of just community or neighborhood meetings over at that park. And I've seen it activated, I've seen families over there using it and I've, I've got up and spoken to them. And it isn't just that neighborhood, people coming from Fountain Blue, people coming actually from the other side of Dunwoody. So people are aware of it and are using it from other neighborhoods, uh, like, again, said at first-hand conversations there. Only a few of those, so I can't.
Right, that's good. I mean, just, I was curious. All right, thank you.
Free to move on to the next one that's also related to parks and also related to data. Free to move on? Uh, use tracking data to determine impact of birth events on local business efforts. Uh, for those, this evolved out of a contract and I want to bring it up at this point. Uh, we teamed up with a data company called Placer AI. Uh, they are not spooky big brother, but it's pretty close. They can get data off of cell phones that's phonotomized and can tell us the size of events we have. And between Michael and Rachel, they've been using it, it's been great. It's that type of thing like, oh, I didn't really realize that many people were there. Um, I always like to put this one up, I played around with City Hall. Where do people that leave City Hall go to the most? The next place they stop at? QT, it proved to me that the first place that, that, that. So it has been good. Rachel's been able to get the size of events there. Uh, Starling, I messed around with it the other day, and would you like to explain the size of the city?
So between seven AM and seven PM every single day of the year, almost, we grow to about a hundred and thirty thousand people. So in all of these conversations, we need to understand, we're not a city of fifty-five thousand people.
That's fantastic data.
It goes up to the top of about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty at times.
Fascinating, because John remembers, we've always talked about it as a hundred thousand people, right, before the pandemic?
So that's, that's residents, visitors, and employees.
So.
How far back, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you go, does Placer go backwards or not really?
Uh, the two thousand seventeen is the, is the late slash year you can go to.
So have we, I'm just curious.
We didn't go back that far. We, I think we did go back before COVID.
We played pre-person post-COVID and we're still not up to pre-COVID levels.
So pre-COVID, it was more than a hundred thou- thirty, thirty thousand people?
Yeah, we, and I think I might be able to get, no, I didn't, I didn't pull that.
That's fine. I was just curious. Okay, well, that's fascinating. And that's actually a really good data point to have.
John, John and Rob.
I just have a question in the sense of tracking. How many people attend the parade, Mother's Day Festival, and Lemonade Days? Is it able to?
Yes, yes, we have, we've done most of that. I don't, we weren't prepared to talk about it that way, but.
We can give a report. Maybe at the next quarterly report, we can do, we can look at those big ones.
When you get that type of data, that would be a good publicity aspect for communications to push out that that's available, that we do that.
I just think it's a good story to tell. Now that we have.
And John, Barry Deutsch will remind you that little children don't care, because, you know, he's all involved in Lemonade Days. And when I give him the number, he says, but you have to double or triple it because the children don't carry cell phones, the little children.
This, this does take into account.
Oh, it does.
They, they, only about nine percent of the population is tracked on Placer. And then they put that into a, you know, whatever they put it into. What that is.
Well, that's good.
So the numbers that are talked about with it are beating hearts.
So again, this goes back to me where Dick Williams would say, so how many people are at the parade this year? And we hear the parade numbers went up.
He made that up every year.
We, 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 six point five million.
No, every year.
And then, and then it came back, it's caused a lot of problems with insuring that event.
To let y'all know just how, how it works on that, we actually sat down and our GIS department drew the parade route. We did it, we moved off of it, took out the village. It works, it's neat. Okay, now I gotta bring up.
I just want to jump on the, um, parentheses part of this, where it says funding will expire next month.
Oh, you stole my thunder.
And I recall this being somewhat expensive, so I'm like, I guess, that's part of your discussion, talk value.
I, I, I want to bring that up next, just to tell you upfront, thirty thousand a year. So we said, one year, let's look at it, let's do it. We like it. Michael and I have been going back and forth with Placer. They're willing to go down to eighteen thousand a year for us, okay?
That's worth answering.
I'm a good negotiator.
Can we partner with the CBB?
But wait, I'm sorry, is it eighteen thousand dollars a month or eighteen thousand dollars a year? Okay, so that's not even something count, I mean, that's not, that's eighteen, even thirty is not in our, just.
Let me shorten. I'd like for y'all to continue to fund that.
Use it for another year and then come back, but eighteen thousand.
Legal, legal reasons, the way they structure their contracts. PCID and the CBB are separate legal entities, so we cannot share.
No, no, they ask us questions and we provide data to them and information, but they just can't be on the system. And therefore we can't spread it.
And also going down to eighteen thousand a year, we're going to limit it to just three users. That's fine.
Which is fine.
Those two and and.
So when does it expire? Because council, can you?
April.
Next one.
They're, they're waiting for, they know we're having this conversation, they're waiting for us to say yes, so we can continue it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, okay, fair.
No, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a favorite spending, what I would like to see is, is use it more.
Use it more, yeah.
Um, the data and saying, you know, what, where, where we're putting our, where we're investing our money as a city and saying, okay, we're putting money into this event. Did we get that return? Is, did we, with the, the number of people and it, our expected outcomes happen? Or, because sometimes it could be one way or the other, sometimes our perception is off. So I, I'd love to use that as a tool to, uh, better guide, uh, where we focus our efforts.
I, I'm going to piggyback off of that, just because we are currently funding, um, partially Create Dunwoody, which does a lot of events in the city. Are we allowed to use Placer AI?
We, we can use this for anybody, but we have to be the ones to run the report and yes, we get.
I mean, those are designed specifically for economic development in cities, so it would be useful to know how those events are working.
And, and then you understand that we as a city will be using it for other entities that come in like, so let's just say Conference X comes into town. We can use it for around that hotel where they went to and the like, so we, we can. I will have to bring up, we'll have to pull the money from the contingency that's in the general.
So, Jake, can I just interrupt just for a second as a time check? We've got a little over half an hour to cover, because John asked, are you good to finish up in the next five, ten minutes?
That SWAT analysis is going to take an hour.
We, we have capacity built into the, to the meeting. When, when those people get here, we may want to, right, into their area, then come back. The other, just so y'all know, and just so the, the civilian knows as well, the post, post-employment benefit of people are going to be here for lunch. They're going to stay through lunch and get y'all questions, they're leaving after lunch, so we do have some buffer, a lot of twice a go. Uh, going on a little bit for speed, uh, parks, uh, community events, uh, via outlook on your calendars, thumbs up, thumbs down? Moving on, uh, police, uh, recap previous efforts at reopening the region three EMS zone. We'll be discussing this on day two, and we're prepared to, we're prepared to talk about it then, so it's an ongoing thing, it has been, it will be. Uh, develop alternatives to proposed camera required codes. I'd like for the chief to chime in on this because that was talked about as an ordinance, but because of current participation, not needed in the.
Yeah, so.
So the legislature preempted us, so we can, they, they preempted us, so.
And it's working. What the chief's going to say basically is the system is working.
And it doesn't matter, the state legislature preempted us. We can't, we can't do it.
Yeah, a lot of the key stakeholders that we've reached out to are in, in compliance, and that's, uh, this, the, the schools, uh, the mall, uh, the Mark Steers Community Center, everybody that we've approached, they are allowing us to federate their cameras into our real-time crime center. Um, and we're just continuing, so we're not, we're not receiving any pushback. There is a little bit of a delay because they have to go through their legal, um, you know, through legal and through our flock for them to, to do that. But, uh, it's an ongoing process and we are not receiving any, uh.
And, and the schools were the huge piece. That was a, a big piece of the problem.
Yes, sir.
Uh, moving on, going with speed, this is one we'd like for everybody to look at all the bullets and we talk about it more in depth later on, but the road safety action plan. When this is one, when my staff got together, this is something that checked, the, the needle keeps moving on this. So there's lots of activity in this area. Thoughts from council on what you've seen compared to previous years on road safety hours?
Looks good. Well, what I'm, I'm still missing to see is the, doing any quick builds or tactical urbanism activities. We had that extra seven fifty K in the bucket, and I'd just like to, I appreciate that Jonathan gave us an update a few months ago. Um, I think the continued update, I don't know how frequently we should do that, uh, every six months or so. But I know you guys are working a lot of things behind the scenes, I hear about it at Anadoli. So I'd appreciate being as informed as frequently as makes sense. And then what do we do with that other seven, seven or fifty K in the bucket set aside?
I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback that just because, um, a thought I raised this morning, as we've talked before about having painted um, crosswalks and they're doing that in the perimeter through PCID, and they are a lot more noticeable. So I'm just going to throw that out, that hasn't been done, but it would be nice.
Feedback from other council members.
Um, just the one bullet point, conducted safe routes to squad it. I would love to see the results of that and if there's any action plans coming out of that.
Who, who did?
I think we need a update on this.
Yeah, they've done two and we're waiting on, the state helped coordinate that and we're waiting on their report.
And, and what Rob was saying too, on the, uh, And and what Rob was saying too, on the uh painting the cross, and then that almost, in my opinion, almost falls under kind of a beautification. Element. Only reason I say it is because it's an enhancement, but it's, it looks different, something that looks different, makes the community stand out. And hey, you're in Dunwoody now. I think that almost will be a subcategory under that as well, on how to say. Other comments going for speed at this point? For this burner area trail development coordination with PCID, this is an ongoing effort. We can hear about it as we go through. Um, update city council on Ashford Dunwoody trail progress was presented in November. Um. Phase one construction was completed, PCID negotiated the right of way. Um, and then the third one on this, approach all trail projects with a focus on softening the impact to the affected property. It's always an ongoing thing. Comments on this area from council?
This is, I I'm glad I gotta be proactive with the CID. They're supposed to be right away thing. I'd like to. You know, how frequently are we gonna get an update with that? You know, because again, that's that's local motel. If we're constructing, how quick, what's the critical path to get to the build? Construction. On that, to get an update. So otherwise, I appreciate what's happening in the.
Uh, next up, promote stormwater efforts in all public works projects, mediating, in other words, when we're building sidewalks, I'm always starting to talk of it. That has been a concern, a focused effort with Jennifer and with Michael. Thoughts from council or comments on that? Get thumbs up. I get a glasses adjustment. I'm not sure where the glasses adjustment is from.
It'd be you.
I'm taking, I'm looking it on my screen here, so.
And I would also throw the stormwater when we talk about um. W one O one, city one O one, you know, zone in in stormwater. That's a topic.
Very good.
And I raised this last week, we're gonna stormwater in a project, it's a small project, but it's storm, it affected stormwater, so it's not just. Big projects, it's could be every little thing we do, if it's water.
It is almost impossible to touch something without an effect control. Well, the uniqueness on that, when we do talk about it, is the different, people always understand the different funding sources. Or that one O one, you know, why are we doing that project over this project? That's all I'm pulling it down.
My request moving forward with this was is that we name the projects. We include stormwater and trail, stormwater and sidewalks. Stormwater and intersection improvement, like literally included in the name, so people know that we're working on it.
Moving on, yeah, that's the last one. Is that the last one? That's the last one of that section, Jake. So. Are, is anyone take a break or anything? Or we just like more of a. Couple minutes so I can also find the presentation. You know, you wanna.
Take a five minute reset or? Without objection, we'll take a five minute recess and return.
Do I need to bring a device?
No.
No.
We have yours here.
Okay.
Laptop setup or in-lifetime setup.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Next week, next year, it'll be like. I I'm not sure how to do the conspiracy emoji, yeah, yeah.
Citywide methane tasting.
Right, so you could think about that.
Yeah, I can look at this.
Oh, I don't believe it. Make sure I understand what.
And then you'll have your email. And that part I video. And then I'll, I'll look, I might have to remember which, because it's a different app than it used to be central with it. That is totally not important, but this can kind of was.
Yeah, but I need to make sure you have it still there.
I've never had, it's never been on here.
Oh, okay, well, you have it on there. Period. Yeah. That's not August, right? That's August, right?
Yeah.
What? On their table? Child.
I think you're showing your forties.
So, would y'all leave the.
Um, I mean, I just want to make sure we stay, don't, don't be too far off.
Michael was gonna, Richard says.
Rather play your tense. A project.
No. Not, not in primer.
As soon as the uh. Oh, wait. Did did we lose some air or? See your screen.
I'll take a one second.
Okay.
I think she just turned off her.
Her camera, okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I didn't reconvene without her here.
Mayor, are you still here? Still with us?
I don't think so. She, it'll be spread.
She's still, I'm like, part of the meeting, but she needed it, no camera.
Okay, I'll just text you real quick.
Okay.
Like up and down what you need. Like.
Well, there she goes.
Thank you. So are we starting?
Uh, yes. And I'll turn it back over to Richard and Jay.
Okay, I wanna um, I want to introduce a section briefly. So the purpose of doing the SWAT analysis was to get us thinking strategically. Not that we don't always think strategically, but as we proceed the next day and a half. As we're talking about things, I want you to think about, you know, how they relate to what you identified or what somebody else identified in this analysis. Um, you know, how they enhance a strength or play on a strength or how they may help solve a threat. Et cetera, just something to enhance the product we end up with.
With that introduction, let me. Okay, I'm gonna go through the introduction part of this very quickly, just to kind of talk about it. Um, the mayor said, everybody, please fill out this one, a standard strength weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Along with please also give topics for the retreat based upon the categories that you see, investing, all the I and E words on it. So that's supposed to start us off. The following slides are gonna see merged them all together, and this is why I have to ask for apologies and liberties with what I did. Because some of the things you got when people fill out things is people use the same words for different things. Or use different words for the same things. So part of this is I took what we got in and I had to try to translate it and make. Oh, what he said was apple and what he said was banana. They're both fruits, okay? Then isn't it banana fruit? I always forget for some reason. Um, so along with that, there are some language things where some people will call strengths, opportunities. Or opportunities, strengths, and weaknesses, threats, and threats, weaknesses. That's okay. That's how the process works. So with that in mind, just make sure there's some liberties in in determining which they are. What you're gonna see are the four categories we did. And in that case, I put down those that were mentioned by multiple peoples with a three, two, something like that, and then you're gonna see a laundry list of ones with no number. That means if it's your item, you're the only person that brought that up. Now, again, the goal of this is discussion, not perfection, not to say this should have been a weakness, this should have been a strength, this should have been a this. This meant this, to discuss the parts. Are we good on the ground rules?
Good.
Are you ready for the moment of truth?
We're ready.
Are we excited?
We've already flipped to that page.
Okay, strengths. First thing some of y'all put up, location, location, location. And we did this ourselves with the department heads and on my own, and I like to say this one. Dunwoody has a location and an infrastructure and a core that other cities would kill for. Location is everything. Three of y'all mentioned it out of this group. Uh, three of you mentioned something along the lines of community pride or engagement, that we do have an active constituency that is participatory. There are some cities that don't have it. Uh, duos of y'all brought up an educated population as a strength, transportation and leadership and staff. So those are some things that came up as strengths from a couple of years. Uh, single ones, the reputation of police, the fact that we have local amenities. Uh, kind of a neat wording here, we had to work on a little, recent unique new builds. We have things that are going up in Dunwoody. That's a strength. There are cities, again, that would kill to have what we have going on. Other thing, strength, we have established commercial office areas. They're built, they're built, they're running, improved, yes, but we have them up. And then we do have master plans in place. Those are strengths. Okay, now here's a question. Do we want to go through all four fast and then regroup or do discussions after each one?
I don't know that we need to discuss it. I mean, I'm not there. We just need to share and then. I think you're gonna keep them visible during the meeting, the retreat.
I'm gonna put them on the walls.
Right, okay. And people have questions, like if somebody has a question they should raise their hand, you know, what does this mean? But otherwise, keep going.
Gotcha. All weaknesses, the need for connectivity between places. Everybody kind of had different wordings on it, but it was, we weren't connected in some ways. Uh, three of you mentioned weaknesses as revenue needs and or tax limit caps under this. Uh, two people, EMS came up as a topic. Uh, two people mentioned a weakness that they have a, we have a need for green space, and that's where it is. Like, in other words, the weakness is that we do not have it as an amenity. Missing middle housing came up with two people. Uh, some on the single side, the speed of project completion, and I didn't put that in a negative tone, but I just, the speed that some projects are completing that. Challenges with redevelopment. So in other words, redevelopment's challenging everywhere, but it is a challenge, or it's a weakness. The lack of civic involvement of younger groups, specifically, we got into ages on that. Uh, lack of high density development, uh, you're gonna see another one under the track where it's a little bit worded differently. Uh, one bullet was DeKalb County School District. Uh, one bullet was need for council collaboration and the final one, senior housing options.
And I, I wanna make a point for everyone in the room, but also the listening public. Or someone who might watch this later, is I limited everyone, you know, you didn't get to list ten. I think I said two or three, and so just want to make that point.
Uh, can I also just ask, well, real quick before we move on, does everybody know what missing middle housing means?
Oh, yeah.
Which term?
Oh, yeah, we know, missing middle, we know. It's housing for uh middle income people.
Middle income.
No, that's not really exactly the right way to. But we don't need to, we can, somebody can explain it to you at lunch.
Just, just say it right now. Single family houses and apartments, everything in the middle.
Right.
Now you learned something today. Uh, next up, opportunities, uh, opportunities became a very long list. So let me go through all the book. Uh, okay, interest in trail buildings and warm amenities, kind of a, a head of wordsmith. But three don't have that there are opportunities because there are people who are interested in these things. Uh, a duo of you, placemaking and activation locations, and in the. Topics when you chose under investing Dunwoody and things like that. Placemaking and activation came up as kind of either not the core item or the wording that we choose a lot. Um, another opportunity, we have a track record of good projects done well. There are lots of things, you're gonna see this in day two, that the city has built over the past fifteen years. Um, another opportunity, we are, we have an existing CIP, which was something that got developed about five years ago. We have a priority list of capital projects, y'all have done a huge heavy lift. It's not like you're sitting, what should we do? You have the what should we do? Um, a duo here of comments, potential for private investment and a potential of corporate relocations are always on the radar. Those are things that are definitely opportunities. Again, location showed up for somebody under opportunities. Again, some people do strengths, opportunities, and put them back and forth. Um, an opportunity, we have the ability to invest in quality of life and then. I kind of took liberty with the wording there, because that's kind of how the concept was coming across. Um, there are possible rezonings that could come to council that could change the landscape of Dunwoody. That's an opportunity. Um, unreserved fund balance that can be invested in capital, that is by definition an opportunity, something that has, something could be. Um, other opportunities that were kind of a duo of things that might could have been, the demand for non-motivized mobility was mentioned by an individual. Micro mobility opportunities, uh, the fact that we have transportation infrastructure in place. And another one that's an opportunity, again, by definition, undeveloped park plan that we already own. So those are opportunities for council. Next up, threats. Five of y'all put down some version of charter limitations or tax limits, because the one that out of all these came up, so it became a threat. Uh, three of y'all mentioned, and this is, I like the wording, that commercial real estate changes and empty offices. By definition, a threat, the world always changes and we always have to adapt. Other simple issue items, messaging complex issues in today's world, that's always a big deal. And again, it goes back to reaching out to constituencies, but reaching out. That's always a big deal, and again, it goes back to reaching out to constituencies, but reaching out into a way they understand. Uh, capital needs list that does not have funding. Public safety needs that do not have funding. Other metro areas as a threat, and this goes back to the comment the mayor made earlier. We are not just competing with Smyrna, we are not just competing with Lawrenceville, we are competing with Austin, we are competing with Shutter. It is other metro areas. Unwanted disdevelopment near residential. Uh, another comment was not sticking to the comprehensive plan. Another single bullet, complacency or a lack of investment in the community, this was kind of what the, the author was trying to say. Um, and it had to cheat me if I'm turning a little bit, but there are some people that just don't want to invest. Uh, follow through on created plans. A lack of support for funding for trails. Nimbyism and a future turnover elective officials that can impact priorities. So that's kind of the, as I said, I, we digested, and I got help from departments on that, I kinda helped translate, so it's not just me.
Just one note on one that was missed, um, looking at my submission, I had also added environmental impacts of growth.
I remember you doing that, I blended it somehow. And on things like that, please feel free, if it didn't make the high wording that you thought it did. It is my interpretation and I got other people to help me as we try to do it.
So.
Got missed by anybody. Okay, I'm gonna put these on one of the walls, I have them broken up in big things, so they'll be up somewhere up there later on in the day.
Sounds like Lynn wanted me to come in.
But I thought it was interesting that in, at least in one example, at least in one thing, I just happened to see. You know, one, one weakness is not enough density and one threat is sort of too much density. Or density near residential areas, I just thought that's inter, I think perspective is everything. And I think, I think it shows the complexity of local government.
And, and again, we'll have to give me slight apologies and liberties if I have to try to translate things that are wordy and.
I know, no, I think it's very possible, I mean, nobody, everybody has their own brain. And their own senses of what's an opportunity and what's a weakness.
Um, and also to dovetail with the second half of this is what you did, you said topics for with the retreat.
Yes.
Done is we got our list to the side where, uh, each one of you put two, I think it was or three maybe. And we got the topic, so it's building Dundee, and there's three or four things. We got a list that we wanna make sure we go over, to say make sure we talk about these during it, so nobody's list of that gets omitted. We'll bring those up with each big topic, starting with topic.
And when, if we don't, we add it, you know, we have the, we have presentations on some of the most common things. Or things that staff felt like they needed guidance on. If, when we finish and Jay ha, and Eric, they have a list of what y'all submitted, if we don't talk about it, you gotta speak up. And say, wait a minute, I wrote down or whatever, because we don't wanna come to the end of the retreat. And, you know, well, I meant to talk about, or I wrote down and we never got to, so advocate for yourself and the community probably. So just keep, keep the process honest by making sure that we're covering what you included.
Anything else on the SWOT?
Now, I think, again, that, you know, I'd like us, as we're discussing things moving forward. That we're looking at these things and figuring out how it all plays together, you know, the goal of this is for us to sort of be really strategic. And what we think we need to get done the next few years.
Okay, we can move on, I think we have, uh, some presentation for benefit.
Would we do, and if somebody could pull that up on the screen, Jay, can you pull it up on, on the screen, I'll introduce this, we have a Patrick Wayne with us with U S I. He's gonna do a, a presentation, and I wanna say this as, as, as a preface to this particular piece. Uh, and I encourage y'all to look at the slides on your computer as well, they're broken down very simply. But one thing that, that I wanna focus on is what are, what is the city missing in terms of retention and recruitment? And although this may not, this plan may not recruit new young people. But what we wanna do is retain the people that we have, and as Patrick goes through his example, or through his process. What I wanna, what I always wanna focus in on is, let's say, the forty-five year old police officer. Because, and I have, a neighbor of mine was a Sandy Springs police officer. He left there because they didn't have this element. And he went somewhere else where he could work ten more years to get this element, so he left there as a founding member of Sandy Springs. And, uh, but nonetheless, what we're looking at is a forty-five year old who needs to say, hey. I'm, I would like to retire at fifty-five, or have the ability to retire at fifty-five. At that point, they have worked, been working what, thirty years, twenty-five years in law enforcement? And so we wanna say, hey, we have a program to keep you from forty-five, to get you to fifty-five, and then maybe beyond. The program is designed, that Patrick's gonna go over is, it doesn't mean somebody's gonna leave at fifty-five. It just gives them different opportunities and reasons to stay with our organization and not go hunting. For other organizations to have a particular benefit. Patrick, with that, I just wanna, that's my little preface, but why don't you go into the piece that they have on the screen? And how do you want to approach it, go into these slides?
Absolutely, thank you, thank you guys for the time today. We, we were asked by ad hoc committee to, to do some research and benchmarking on, on what's available out there and, and best way to go about this. And, um, there's, there's a fair bit of good news in this, in this research. In that we found that we could establish this type of program without, um, not making any changes to the medical program. So Signa would allow us to create a big class of benefits for early retirees. And, um, and I have to give kudos to, to the team that worked on this with us. Because, uh, the methods in which they designed this is to create that, that stimulating retention factor. But not add excess risk to a program, not create long-term future liabilities that are out of control. So to give you kind of a broad spectrum view of large municipal organizations around the country. Some may still have a retirement program, but that is for those that have already reached Medicare age. And that is a huge risk, that's something that we're not looking to do for you guys. What we're looking to do is create a retention program that allows someone who's been here ten years. Um, and has satisfied that criteria based on what is set by the city. Um, to be able to retire early, and this would be benefits that they could carry until they become Medicare eligible. And it would cease at sixty-five. So, um, so the idea there is, is positives or that, uh, the medical retirement plan can be created. Without changing anything to the plans, there wouldn't be any change to cost right now. And the reason for that is, all of these employees are currently part of your risk pool, so. So, um, if it's something that's gonna be considered, Signa would add this as a sec, separate class. Um, there's some things that Richard would have to figure out on that side, but, uh, uh, that's, that's part of the, the actuary of the process. Um, but no additional plans need to be added, no changing cost. And all we need to do is create a class, and the example that we created so far on this, employees with ten plus years of employment. With the city who are at least fifty-five years old and retire before age sixty-five with benefits ending at age sixty-five. So that's kind of what I was talking about, with limiting the risk pool there. Um, the city would have to create a process for retire recovery, which would include. How, um, the city covers costs, whether it's cover employee only or so forth, how the employees would submit. Or sorry, the new retirees would submit payment for the other, their dependents if they have their spouse on the plan. Um, and, and that process, uh, of receiving a payment from, from that form. Again, no, no need increase to the pre-retirement sixty-five, uh, pre-sixty-five retirement class. Um, there is some potential future increases in cost. But one, one thing that's nice about this is, in creating a separate class, we can be able to kind of monitor. Um, if there's claims exposure that begins to come, to play out of whack with what the prior group was doing. On this end, we'll be able to manage that claims experience from year to year.
Yeah, right error. Takes a second to show up on the screen. Or two.
So, uh, what we wanted to do is, is create some modeling using the best numbers that we think would apply to the city of Dundee. So what we did is we took, uh, prior year increases, going back to two thousand eleven. Um, through twenty twenty-four, and we just set an, an even number. Uh, here's, here's a few ways to look at this, as we model out costs for the next ten years. Um, so there's three different scenarios that we could look at on how this cost would break down and how the state would administer. Cost increases over time. So the first one would be just a year-over-year increase. So if we're using the example of twenty eleven through twenty twenty-one. You can see here that, uh, in twenty eleven, for example, you have a six percent increase. In twenty twelve, there was seven percent, but in twenty thirteen, it was twenty-five point seven. So the scenarios I'm describing here are whether you look at it as every year you pass along exactly the percentage. To the new retiree that, that, that the city experienced. Or do you look at it from a trending increase perspective? So we take the average over the last so many years, and it's eight point two percent. So first scenario is whatever increase the city receives on medical, they pass that cost along to, uh, the retiree. Um, or the second one would be doing an average of. The third scenario would be to look at this as, hey, it's been eight point two, let's just say it's, let's just say it's six percent. Cause that's a national number, right? Six percent, but that could create some problems with, with, you know, let's say you reevaluate that every five years. Uh, it increases by only six percent, the city could be increasing their burden of cost increase over time. So, um, any questions on that before I go forward?
Is the renewal rate, is this actual?
Those are actual numbers, um, we just applied a hundred dollars to it, to, to kind of keep the numbers simple. But yes, those are the actual percent increases that the city has experienced since twenty-one.
Uh, what about the scenario where we just take it year by year and decide at that year how we're gonna, what their coverage is gonna be? I mean, I've, I've worked in private sector, that's how that works.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely an option, and I think one of the things that was discussed in the, in the ad hoc committee was, um. Absolutely, this is something that could be put in place, but frozen in a future year, right? So if, if it goes in a direction that isn't desired, then, um, hey, it's something we offered, we decided to not offer to anyone. Going forward, but those that are on it would be able to stay on it until age sixty-five. So wouldn't take anything away from anyone that had it, but, um, there's definitely an opportunity to look at it year by year. And also make decisions such as that.
So you're saying that when an employee enters an agreement, or that's, that to get in, to exceed, to receive this coverage. They're gonna have some documentation that talks about the terms and conditions, right?
Well, they would just, they would just be enrolling as, as a retiree. So, um, so that, that, I guess the documentation would be built on the city's side.
Or some summary plan document, right? The detail, right, yes, of what the covers are and so on, but did it also entail that the, when they sign onto this program, would they be? Are we entering an agreement, a contract with that person legally to guarantee through age sixty-five?
Yes.
We are, and then are we also, so what is the terms, what would be that, in that contract term binding us? To what would be the employer's share of the, of their contribution?
So this is something that the, the city can design, but what we've discussed so far that would help limit risk is, so that, um, now. Generally speaking, most spouses are the same age or younger than. But the idea is, uh, to have the employee-only cost covered by the city. And then dependent costs be covered by the retiree. Um, and the reason for that is to kind of steer away from adverse selection, you don't want someone to necessarily pick this plan. If they're already Medicare eligible and can get, you know, similar benefits for much lower cost. So, but again, if the city decided, hey, we wanna cover both employees and spouse, that's the city's decision, um, from that perspective.
Would that element of it be dependent on their coverage as an employee, so for example, as an employee. Uh, I have a family coverage and I can continue that, but the other side is, as an employee, I only had the employee coverage. And then as a retiree, I wanna throw my family in there as well, is that, is that?
That's a great question, and part of, part of what, uh, has been discussed is, in, in the definition of the class, it would, it would require. For them to be on the plan currently, and then they can continue what they have.
So whatever plan you retire at, is the one that continues.
Right, and, and so the, the, the second piece of that is, in theory, not, not necessarily everybody, but in theory. Um, most folks, their dependents will be permanent, so it would most likely be employee only or employee and spouse. There could be a chance that it has a full family, and if they're retiring with still dependents, they could continue that.
Twenty-six, so you conceivably.
Conceivably.
And part of the design for that is, 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 we wanted to, what Signa wanted to say is safe. Freeze your pool, freeze your pool, so we understand what the health risk is for your family. But if somebody was on a plan to retire, at that next cycle, they could add dependents on, but it's whoever's on at the time, I mean, they could add them on before they retired. In other words, at that November time, right, they'd have to add them in during open enrollment. And then they would be in the system, but that's part of what we're looking at here is, um, you know, what's the cost for that? Would it be a hundred percent for those people, some of them wouldn't take it. The other thing is this, we don't feel there's gonna be a, maybe they're gonna take this at fifty-five, so then, but the maximum exposure is a ten-year period. I know can't afford to take it to fifty-five, they can't afford to leave. But what we're trying to do is get people to, you know, to first of all, have a reason to stay with the city. But also, when it becomes time to retire, I don't want somebody just hanging on until they're sixty-five either. So that's help with that system, so that's part of what we wanted to look at, but some of the things that Joe was asking about have not been defined. What the goal, my goal is, for y'all is to give us a thumbs up, thumbs down, and say, take it to the next level or not. And then we can come up and iron out some of these details and bring something back to y'all.
Um, for background information, that would be, I, I, you're doing exit interviews as people leave, right?
Yeah, well, we, we under, we don't do a formal exit.
I know we're missing our H R lead here.
We don't do a formal exit interview, but we do talk to people, we always know, we know about them.
And, and this would be, uh, a retiree with open enrollment, just like an employee, right, every year, they'd have to re-enroll into benefits?
I, I would assume so.
If scenario, someone enrolled as a retiree, and then the next year they decided to opt out and not. Would, did they lose their eligibility at that point, or can they re-enroll during that ten win, year window that they're?
They would, they would lose.
So as soon as you opt out, you're done.
Yeah, cause they would no longer be an employee or, or a retiree, so they would not be eligible for it.
And, and another good scenario on that, I'd say, is this two times, somebody could retire, you know, a year, then they go back to work full-time. At somewhere else and have benefits, and then they're all in our program. So I'm just saying, I don't want us to look at it like this is a hard liability for ten years per every employee. It's just, the numbers aren't gonna work out that way.
Yes, if, term would, if they, if they become eligible for another. Uh, or through an org, or another organization or the spouse, uh, employment. Would they therefore have, would they, would, you know, they'd have to take that?
So there, there is, the, the city could make that, uh, a decision across all the benefit plans. And then that would also apply to retirees, so. So, so me, me, if they decided to say, uh, hey, if you have an active employee who has spouse, who has. An option to choose medical benefits, they could choose that. Um, I would have to check with Signa, but there is a possibility, you can always ask them, that we create that indefinitely.
For the retired one.
Retiree class, but not the city class, so, or active classroom.
That would be to me difficult to figure out, because what if you were, well, my spouse has coverage and then she's gonna retire, but now I'm not eligible. Anyway, that, something to figure out, I guess. My, the thought I, or a question I did have, and this you probably, you may not be able to answer, but. Range on a given year, looking forward five years, if something like this was implemented, how many people might be on it? Yeah, and that's a good question, cause we look at, we look at who's retired from the city, so they haven't had very many people. And the other thing to remember is this, is some people that we have had retire from the city. They, they had medical benefits from another organization. So it, it becomes very interesting scenario, and there are different people too, you know, you have people who were in the military. They retired, they, they're gonna save on their military benefits, they're not even gonna use this. And so you have various, you know, so that number of people, I think, if we had this program already in place, probably about three people use it. And I'm just guessing, gee, do you have any different numbers than that? I know we had a couple of people, but I'm not even sure they would even use it, because they have their benefits.
Yeah, um, so, uh, we do have a few military retirees that we're gonna have, uh, have those benefits, but. You know, what I'm attracted to about this is that when you see.
When you see a lot of officers, you know, you know how stressful this job is, they stay on longer. Because they're trying to get closer to that sixty five year gap, and that's becomes more of a liability. From my standpoint, because I'm have. Aging officers that are wanting to go out there on the road when they are able to, because that's a huge cost, you know, if they don't have those. Tricare or anything like that to pick up. You know, that Cobra, that's expensive until, you know, that Medicare picks up. So um from a safety standpoint, from the law enforcement side. Um I do see that, I see them staying longer because they don't have that benefit.
Yeah, I guess I I I look at this as this is obviously a very appealing benefit, but it is. I mean, our operating funds are our most constrained funds, and so. I'd like to offer things to me, it great for employees, I just, that that's just kind of in the back, that's scratching the back of my mind.
Is there a precursor for being eligible? For example, I think I myself at my work, I have to be in that health plan for five years consistently. Part of that program in order to be eligible. Is there any precursor prerequisites in order to be eligible? Or can I sign up for it a month before retirement to be able?
Right, the desire is to create that that class definition, so that one, it's non discriminatory. And two, so that it has those protections built in, so there's not excess risk for city of Dunwoody. So the idea is to have the the definition of the class say that they need to have been part of the medical plan for as long as they were eligible. Now, they don't have to have been on this, they don't have to have been family coverage, the whole ten years in order to stay family or so forth, but. Um but they would need to be taking the benefits for, and and again, this could be defined by. The organization on how stringent you want that to be. I think from some other conversations, there are some folks that. They want to include eligibility that have had contract status in prior years, and they want to give uh certain. Uh credits.
Right, it is a, so wait, it is right now, you had to have ten years of service to all the quality of this, but. We didn't want to have some kind of special piece, and whether it goes before some kind of committee, I mean, you have an employee, one of our directors, for example, has been here. But but they were here the whole time and now was brought into the system. You know, at what point, whether we have formulary, in other words, maybe they have been here at least eight years. But we'll give you two more, two years because you've been here for twelve.
As a city employee versus contractor.
But no, no, no contractor would be eligible, but we're saying, if you were serving as a city employee, basically, but there would be some formulary.
That employee would have to be pretty close to fifty five.
Right, and like I said, a lot of the numbers are gonna work out, I'm just, I mean.
If that employee were to stay till fifty five, more than likely, they're gonna have the time and service in.
Correct. That's right, that's my point. When I say most is gonna work out, there'd be very few, if any, examples, that would fall outside that plan. And and the way Signa looked at it too, there's there's not a great. Cost differential that you all on the upfront end start with, because of the pool, it goes back to the pool. You know.
Do our investors, you know, the newly staffed, are they employees?
Yes, sir.
Are they eligible for benefits if they're, that's nice, that's good.
Yeah.
That's really good.
I'm, and I think I've raised this with you before we talked, but. The idea that someone needs to be on the plan prior to a longer this. I I'm not sold on that as a necessity, because if they're not on the plan right now, they're saving us money, so why do we want to incentivize someone to cost us money? For a benefit they might be eligible for eight years from now or five years from now or whatever, you understand what I'm saying?
And that's just something we put in there, I mean, those are things, those are kind of things that can be open. What I tried to design when we got with them was a lean, a leanest. Program we came up with to make it appeal, more appealable to y'all, you know, I say, look, what what can I, what can I promote? That is gonna sell.
I can, I get to see a situation where an employee, you know, their spouse might have a better plan that works. For the two of them in terms of benefits or whatever, and so they're on that, but. Then they, we offer this, they want to use this employee benefit, well, they've been saving us money for, you know, maybe nine years. Do we want to make it so they were costing us money for those nine years?
Well, that's a very interesting point. One thing that we're looking at too on the healthcare stuff, we're always trying to find ways to save money. We don't, we're not trying to. Um. Create some kind of problem for any family. What we want to look at is any, if a, if a spouse. Has insurance available through their employer. We're gonna require them to take that in the future, because why, why should they come to the city's pool when they have their own? Now they're getting on our pool and they're getting a credit from their employer. If they have insurance available to them, that's a legitimate insurance. We don't want the spouse to take that. The rest of the family, that's a, that's between the spouse and our employee, or what they do for them. Their other dependents, we can't control that, but we are trying to say, we don't want more people on our plan, because our plan is better. You know, but as you're, what you're talking about, that's a fair point down the road.
Then the other side of that is, this is all based on the risk pool, and this is no risk pool.
True.
So that's.
That was what we looked at.
Um so you, police officers are gonna be on their own, if they've retired from the military, they can have their own, the military insurance without paying.
Right.
Depending if they were active or reserved, reserves get it at age sixty.
So, right, and see, that's a big deal, because a lot of people are gonna, they're gonna wanna be on that anyway, because that goes beyond sixty five, there's an element that goes beyond there for that program. They're gonna wanna, they're not gonna want our program anymore, most likely. But that's what we were looking at, we wanted to see if y'all, because like I said, this came up last year at the retreat. We refined it into into a more, you know, put some numbers to it, look at the system. What we want, what I want from y'all today is to say that we want to begin to pursue this to the next level. Or is it, you know, is it, is it that kind of idea? I guess that's what I'm, what we're looking for. I'm not sure to answer any questions on the system, so.
I'll I'll just make the quick comment, this third page is basically taking that a hundred dollar calculations from page two. And putting into real, real numbers on what the cost is right now and extrapolating it over the two different options. So it's either the. The physical renewal year over year or uh using that eight point two percent trend. So. That's a little bit more real life if you're trying to figure those numbers out. And to uh Chief's point and and to your point. The goal was to have a a retention tool that allow for employees to be able to plan um what they're doing. Also as a safety tool, right? Uh we want to retain folks that are strong contributors. Um but for those that are just hanging on and maybe creating some risk there. Um for a retirement option, uh this this gives them, uh you know, a a report that's, that's the same one for the city.
So look, looking at the numbers, just. If, let's say, five years from now, there are five people in this, it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars more in operating costs, plus or minus. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
What about the employee employer split? Is it gonna be the same kind of percentage as it as an active employee?
Well, because of the percentages, the active employee today, you know, the employees are covered a hundred percent, and then there's a, it's a subsidized piece for. Uh dependence. Well, we kind of looked at this plan was, it would be a hundred percent for the employee, but then. You have to pay a hundred percent for your spouse, maybe what we looked at, that would be a cost, in other words. So that takes it back, if if that's the case, if you and your spouse are on there, then it takes back the way I look at it, it's a fifty fifty.
Yeah, exactly.
But if it's just the employee, it's a hundred percent.
We're still looking at keeping the same hundred percent.
Yes, and that's what we're looking at.
When they're retired.
Right. That's what we're looking at. I mean, we're not, that's always, it's open for discussion, but that's what this is designed under.
Really generous.
That's what we're looking for feedback, you know, so I mean.
I would like, I mean, have other cities in Georgia done any?
Oh yeah, a lot, a lot of places have retiree benefits. That are part, but you know, some places have pension programs, and then a part of the pension program is a retiring medical element. I think, I don't want us to go towards a pension program from financial, and the way we have it is very lucrative. We're getting, we've gotten huge response from our eight percent. Required piece to get your four percent match, that's been huge. This year was the first year we made that. We didn't make it mandatory, but we did make it automatic, automatic, about that, and then, and uh.
No match then.
Right, right. But but we didn't make that an automatic piece, and people had to say they don't want to do it, but when I designed that years ago, I wanted it to be in a place where. Some people always think, hey, the the employer should take care of my retire. Well, you gotta put some skin in the gene tube, that's why I said eight percent. And then then you get a four percent match. You can put in more than eight, but you only get up to a four percent match. So that's part of that program. We go back to the original question, yes, a lot of places do offer this type of program, and it's something that I feel. That we're not, that we don't have, and I think that we have, that's part of this. But uh volume of the ball goes back into people leave, come and go, come and go, it's one of the things that I think will keep people from bouncing back into. From one police agency to another. I think it would, I think it would help. Have we designed it, if there's a, I mean, let's just throw in, if it's a ten percent match or whatever the match may be, I'm not, I'm not here to argue that. I'm just here to say, like, if it's something we want to pursue, we can find tune it to a number, a level you want it coming.
I'm not against it, I'm concerned about the costs, I will need to know more, I need to know more specifics, I need to know. More policy fleshed out, I'm not saying no, but I need to know a whole lot of information for it, I guess.
So what you're saying is you'd like for us to move, go to the next level to get more information?
I'm interested in that more, but again, you're you're talking about. Tight budget cycle operationally, and you haven't told me where that money's coming from, but yet you're asking for this.
Sure.
So I'm.
Sure, you you're more of a deeper that, but that's what we wanted to get today to see. Like I said, is it move, keep moving forward or just? No, that that's what, that's good, that's a good point.
I mean, it's a higher level conversation, uh this is a one subject about employee retention, right?
So to to go along with that, um you know, our competitors, and I call our competitors our neighboring metro Atlanta agencies, Brookhaven, Roswell, Sandy Springs. That's where we was in officers too, they don't have those programs. Um as a retention piece, you know, when we bring in an officer, whether certified, non certified, it costs us a lot of money to get them up and running. Um once we get them there, obviously, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know already, um but it costs us a lot of money, especially if they are. Um non sworn, which means we gotta send them to the academy. Um and it's it right now with our, with the academy, when we get them, um. It'll be one whole year before I can get them, where I can count them as an added officer on the road. So the retention piece, um retaining these officers alone is gonna be cost savings. Um knowing that they have this, that potentially could have this benefit re- when they retire. Uh and as I spoke earlier on the on the safety piece, I see other agencies where these officers that are aging. Um are staying longer just to get closer to that Medicare age. Um this would be a huge retention. Um benefit for uh definitely my staff.
Is there a kind of a sweet spot on this retention as a retention tool tool? Because it seems like if I'm a twenty five. Year old officer, I'm looking at thirty years before I can enjoy this benefit versus perhaps. You know, poaching a experienced officer from a neighboring city that might be in that forty to forty five year range and say, hey. I'm getting, I'm getting ready for retirement, I can do my my last fifteen to ten years of my career over in Dunwoody and and. Cause I want to retire at fifty five and bridge that gap until Medicare is, so.
It's a great point, Tom, and that's kind of what, what I preped a little preamble. I wanted to kind of hit on, because you're right, we all gotta look back to when we were twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, we didn't care, oh, there's some kind of program over there, I don't know what, doesn't mean anything. But when you hit, at what point did you, in your life, did you say, hey, look. This is important, maybe part of it was thirty plus, thirty, thirty five, when you say, this is an important piece, you know, if somebody, if if they move on, they get a family. It becomes more and more important. So I think that's what we're focusing in on, plus that person there, that's a prime candidate, Chief doesn't want to lose. Somebody's like thirty, thirty five, we train them, they've got great experience, we want that person to stay. And this is just one of those things where they start looking at those numbers, oh, hey, Rob was offering a little bit more of a piece over here. Well, but but then, then I'm gonna give up my healthcare benefit at fifty five. So they don't, that that they started looking at that, that's the way I see it, Nicole sees it, and Chief. And those are the three elements that can design this thing, they come up with, and he has, he has experts, experts to look at it. We also have online, online with us too, Heather is on the phone right now with us, along with Stacy, uh Wedge, who was our president at Evergreen. And she's a compensation expert, and could kind of tell a little bit more about some of this. One thing to think about is the bigger picture, I'm gonna introduce this other piece of it, which is. We've looked at, okay, police pay, so our starting pay. You know, we always decided we would be around that eighty fifth percentile of where we are in the market, not a top, not the top, remember, we're not gonna chase the top. So, but what we are doing, we're far beyond the top, is our fifteen thousand dollar hiring bills, nobody can touch that. And then speaking to Stacy a few weeks ago through Nicole, we, she said, look, okay, y'all may not be at the top on your su- uh starting salary. But what nobody else can touch was this fifteen, fifteen grand, and when you put that in, y'all are over beyond the top. So it's just, it's just how you look at it. So here again, we won't be looking at the entire package, the only other element that we're chasing. And it's something else to consider, I'm not forcing it, I'm just saying, letting y'all know, compensation wise, is we do an eleven percent employee. Um contribution towards a retirement. Some of the places have gone to twelve percent, that was the one element that Nicole said, hey, we've fallen behind, I click on that. But we said, hey, look, I'm not, I want to see what we can do on the healthcare piece, because the healthcare piece to me is a. Long, a bigger element than that, but at the same rate, it is an element, these are all different elements. You're never gonna find an apple, an apple to apple comparison among each jurisdiction. Chief, I know you probably want to speak to them for a moment.
Um. Yeah, the um, I wanna say, uh I wanna say Brookhaven, is that twelve? I think Sandy Springs is also, Sandy Springs is also at twelve.
Right, and they are, and there there are main competitors, and that, and that's what, because I think Chief brought it to me originally, one other wild element, and John, you mentioned this in the past. Which is the housing stipend. You know, we're eight hundred dollars, Brookhaven's at a thousand, Brookhaven just went, well, and then they just went for twelve hundred, they just went for twelve hundred. They also have an element of people who are non-police that live in the city, I would never promote that, that's not, that doesn't meet the model, what we were trying to do. But we're trying to get police officers in the city, we have sixteen officers who live, who live in the city, I didn't ask. Brookhaven the other day, and they have twenty two officers who live in the city. Um and so, but they went to twelve hundred dollars a month, you know, we're at eight. So these are all little, little clicks, little things we do, but they don't offer that bonus like we offer, so it's all, it just all becomes. Where do, where do y'all want to drive the money, and what changes do you want to make? We feel each of these are important issues, but we also, I feel that the, for the officers that live in the city, that's one side. You're only, it's only for those sixteen people that benefit from that, but that is a huge retention piece for those sixteen people. Right, you know, to give that, whether it's eight hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars, that's a big discount here.
But if we were to up that to twelve instead of the eight, it would then grow it exponentially.
Well, is is that that time sixteen, and then you can probably get a few more people that will move into a big apartment, I mean. I don't know how many home, but we have several homeowners here, that are with it, but what percentage of that, probably four to.
Uh I think it's four of us that don't know.
Yeah, so, which is, that's pretty, that's pretty cool, you know. But a lot of people, they may be a security officer at a at a apartment, and they still, but they still have to pay, and they get that stipend. Which is good for them, it does what we want. So there's just different, those are the three elements that I wanted to say, I won't say we're deficient, it's just different, if however you want to look at it. To me, I think the priority for it, to me, for what we were thinking was, the the retirement is is top, is number one priority. Healthcare, the other piece is just where do you want to put the money, do you want to put money in one year? For sixteen people plus the extra people that come in, or do you want to put it towards a, from eleven to twelve percent on the standard retirement? Do nothing, do all of it, I don't know, I don't, I just.
So here's a, an interesting side thought that I just had, what is our um. In terms of like workers' comp for older officers, I mean, are we looking at, you mentioned officers stepping out. Younger, you, do we have higher workers' comp issues with our older officers that just might help negate or?
Yeah, potentially, I would have to get with HR.
Yeah, I don't, I I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, you know, if somebody's gonna wrench their back.
Well, I mean, I, I.
Fifty nine.
I've I've seen a couple knee replacements, I've seen some paper replacements, I've seen some bamboo replacements and.
So are we, are we potentially saving on that side?
That's a potential.
Paying, I'm just, just.
Well, to your point, it's a good point, and now I'm thinking about it this way too, is what it allows is that person who does have an ailment, like some kind of knee replacement pieces. You know, rather than hang out on, they may say, hey, look, I'm I'm out. So, and therefore you don't have that potential for an additional workers' comp. I think it's a statistical number you can see in the, in the.
So I think the retention part is the important part, but Chief, I want to ask you, because you obviously. In recruitment and getting a new, a younger uh non sworn that has got to the academy, there's a lot of expense with that, do you think? There's potential as a recruitment tool for a more experienced officer that would see this as, hey, I can go finish out the last ten or fifteen years of my career at Dunwoody. Retire at fifty five. Retire at fifty-five, uh, and have my medical coverage bridged until. Do you, so we're getting a, a more experienced officer that we don't have to invest as much financially into. Do, do you think it would be an effective recruiting tool for your department?
Absolutely. Yeah, it'll serve twofold. You know, not only bringing in, um, those experienced professionals that have. Um, a wealth of knowledge certifications, um, and then can also bring that to the department. Um, which is also helpful with development, succession planning, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and then of course with, you know, our younger, we, we have a very young department now, you know, and I, and I look when. When they say, oh, you know, so-and-so, she's our senior officer, and I'm like, oh my gosh, she could be my kid, you know? Me getting older, I don't know. Um, but we, we have a young pool. However, we have seen, um, other. Older officers that have come over and then just left. Um, and I think this piece, you know, e- even when we bring them in as a lateral. Um, it's still a huge expense. That's outfitting them. That's getting them trained. That's getting them. He fully equipped, you know, and then for them to be there for a year, two, three years, this would definitely help. Um, like you said, to bridge that gap between.
And, and no, no, just, I mean, we do background checks, you know, HR is involved, finance is involved, everybody's involved, but somebody just comes in and out. It's very disappointing. You know, all the way around. And I think this is one of those golden handicap type things. It does help to keep the retention.
I, I guess if you're looking for direction, I'm willing to go ahead and look at it further.
That's what I.
The mayor online?
Uh, she might be on the phone. She was gonna.
Mayor, are you still with us?
She was gonna be, she's gonna be, she's gonna be in transit.
And, and I have briefed her on this ahead of time, but nonetheless, you know, she, she thought enough of it too.
I agree, we should move forward with, um, investigating it. I just, there's so many different ways to. To cook it, you know, um, so brought up, brought up the point of, you know, if somebody hadn't been. On our plan, but they've been here for X years, but then they need it, what does that do to the risk pool? I mean, does it? Bringing them on, does it? Off, but then the fact that we haven't paid for them, is that offset? I would love to know that question. Um, I would love to know, um, and apologies to the rest of the staff, but what if we did this for sworn officers only? Um, and then what if we did the cost of, if we pay a hundred percent for the tiree versus eighty percent and what the. Savings, like what, what does that financial picture look like? So there's so many different ways to cook it. I'll be interested in seeing the different scenarios myself.
Yeah, I wanna see it further.
What I'd like to do is, I'll get with the mayor, is what I'd like to do is put a, uh, a group together and, and have a couple council members on that. On that, along with some, uh, with our staff and experts. And, uh, and come up with something that, that makes sense to propose to the entire. That's fair. Anything on the, um, do y'all want? Do y'all want us to explore any more of those other two topics? The stipend? Or the, uh, eleven to twelve percent?
I think that goes to the overall financial picture.
Okay, or do you want to be all part of this? Maybe we can all be part of this one.
I'm grouping, we're all options.
Let's do that.
That's, that's. Those options.
Okay, thank you.
And honestly, it'd be. Could maybe worth a little bit of the informal or formal falling to the existing officers we have. If you could have one of these. Which would be the most important?
I said, it's probably depending on their age and their.
Maybe, but you don't have to do what they say, but it will give you input on. If they're looking at a program, which is the more appealing part of it.
And Patrick's gonna be here, he goes after lunch, and if y'all have any questions or wanna ask him on anything, on anything else, light into his field of expertise.
Thank you, Patrick. So just, just to recap, then we will, we are capturing action. I'd be happy to go ahead and start this group together and finish any. Analysis and presentation. With that, uh, is, are there any other quick questions, comments before we break for lunch? I think we're right on schedule.
Look, you're doing such a great job.
Done an awesome job. Everybody here to this, really appreciate that. A lot of good discussion.
Alright, so then sticking with the agenda, we'll take a recess and reconvene at one P M. Alright, we are in recess.
Hey, Ken, you have my iPad in front of you with that. So scroll out.
Oh, you'll be here about two calls.
Cause she's all on. Ready here, right? Alright, everybody, it is, uh, one O two, so let's reconvene in the meeting. I'll start it off, Richard.
Uh, yes, and we're up for topic three, building, um, the thing we're gonna, Michael's gonna take us through most of this stuff, starting with streetlights, so. Not much for me to.
The most dynamic speaker of the exciting topics, right?
Mayor, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. You could hear me, I guess.
Yes, we can hear you.
So the, uh, the city funds, currently funds streetlights through two different types of districts. We have. The single-family residential districts, which we inherited that since we did the cab. And then a few years ago, we created a commercial streetlight district, space for streetlights and commercial areas. Uh, this map here shows all the different streetlight districts we currently have in the city. I didn't count on the southern streetlight districts. Um, the light gray was. You know, these areas here are where areas are not currently covered by a streetlight district. But, I mean, we have pretty good coverage over the city, but we do have some areas that are not in the district, so the properties in those areas are not paying any kind of streetlight. Uh, that's assessed on property tax.
But there's also no streetlights.
Uh, that's correct, yes.
If I remember correctly, Peach, uh, Dunwoody High School wasn't in a district, but yet we put lights up.
It, it's in the district.
It's in the district?
Yeah.
I thought there was something true there. Well, the issue was that it's on Dunwoody, probably, so we have it across the street. Residential, it's like a court, I think, he's the partner. Okay, again, I just remember, yeah, something.
Okay, now we do, yeah, there's kind of a third category too, which is private subdivisions, and they. They do often have streetlights and they pay for them themselves. They don't pay any, any of the cities' streetlight fee. Uh, what, one thing that this, and Councilman Henigan's brought this up a few times, the one. Challenge with the way it's done now is that we have some streets in the city showing on the black lines here. Where, and they're usually, most of them are residential areas, that those, the way the streetlights, residential streetlights works. Is that the developer that originally built subdivision or the homeowners in that subdivision. Have to petition the city to create the streetlight district, which then assess the fees of their streetlights. So we do have. Residential areas in the city where it's been brought up to put streetlights before, but. The property owners in that area have not ever asked to have streetlights, so. If the city were to do it, there's really not a mechanism for the, the properties in that district or that area to pay for it. So, but, and then these are the, the streets, the main streets, not counting neighborhoods where we currently don't have streetlights.
What's the, what's the legend there, the, the different color and dashes?
Says the, the dark, well, the dashes of the city limit, the dark, the dark black lines.
Okay. And that being Dunwoody Club up there, I'm guessing, is there nothing down Sandy Springs, uh?
No.
Okay, there's no sidewalk. There's only a couple lights up by the ball mill, by, uh, the country club. There's a couple lights by the country club. I'm just looking up there.
So I, I think the, the thought I'm bringing, I'm just looking at how we administer the districts now and. How things are paid for and how we might do it in the future. Uh, the last thing I have here, and then. Y'all can discuss is how the different ways. The different land uses and then how, how the streetlights are initiated and how they're paid for. Um, I, I've mentioned the three categories. Uh, if it's an existing development for a residential area, they have to petition the city. If it's a commercial area, the way when we created the commercial streetlight district. The commercial lights are either put up when redevelopment happens, and that's part of what they have to do, is the street improvements or the city does a project like. The Ashford Avenue path or, you know, the Georgetown Gateway. In the commercial area, we put in the lights and then we start assessing the property owners. Uh, the commercial property owners adjacent to that for the home clearing cost. That's what I put together to kind of get the conversation started and then.
Alright, so. Just a question here, especially that section running north of Brook Run Park. Yeah, if, and if we put the lights on the Brook Run side of the road, that would be the city's responsibility, correct?
Correct.
Right, and the whole reason I bring that up is just because. I mean, the people immediately adjacent to that parking lot is most likely to be, say, walking to and from, driven on the greens. And would actually benefit from a lighted sidewalk at night. And, and I, I mean, I think there's ways to address some of these using. In that case, for example.
I'll, I'll give my thoughts. I think I talked a little bit about this at a prior meeting. Is, I think this would just be a flat fee across the city. Streets are public. Uh, facilities, uh, just because you live on a street, doesn't mean you're the only person that drives on that street. And I, I do think the streetlights. Are an important part of public safety as well, and I think the city should make the decisions on where. Those facilities are best needed and not have to. In essence, get permission from every homeowner on the street or ma- maintain a certain threshold. Um, you know, or have people not watch streetlights because they don't wanna have a small additional fee under tax law. I mean, everyone drives. Obviously, driving your own street, getting home, but you're driving a lot of other Dunwoody streets, getting to and from where you need to go. Um, and so, you know, and especially, you know, there's, you know, especially on the materials and collectors, you know. Uh, every time I drive down Peeler and how dark that is, I'm, I'm amazed, right? And then, uh, you know, and then, uh, Ashford Center Parkway as well. Um, so I would love for the city to make those decisions based on safety and needs. Uh, and it should be, you know, same as street paving. You don't only pay. When your street's paved, right? I mean, eventually all the streets are paved, but, so that might not be a perfect analogy.
Stormwater is another example where everybody pays.
Regardless.
So what's the, what's the, what's the typical, um. Let's just say, right now, existing property owners paying for streetlights in their neighborhood, what's a typical cost?
And this is another issue with how it's done now. It's really, uh, challenging to administer because. Your rate is depending on when you got in a district, and then it just escalates. Based on what it costs us, but everybody, every district's paying different rates, but it can range, for single family. It's typically gonna range between forty and a hundred dollars a year.
But it's based on street frontage.
Right.
So, I mean, you have a thousand different issues when it comes to the funding. It's very complex. I do agree with Tom that we need a one district citywide. The problem comes then to the equity and the fairness, and how do you do it? Does that then? Lower the rates on everybody existing and put rates on those who don't have it? And then do you have? You have, there's just so many, for example, the, the houses near Brook Run. Across the street from Brook Run might not be paying at some point if we were to do it differently and only put it on our property, but. Those streets, Peeler and other streets, need to have lights for the safety of our community. Whether we put new districts in for them in particular, for, let's just say, all right, all made in thoroughfares. Or put a citywide in, I'm not sure of how it affects. Some of the areas that, if we do citywide for every piece of property that has street frontage. Do you do it by the square footage of the frontage? Do you put it as twenty dollars a house? I, I don't want the taxes to go up. I don't want it, this, this is not gonna be a moneymaker for us. But how do you do it fairly inequitably across the board to make sure that it's? Again, fair and equitable to everybody paying for, everybody paying for their own lights. And then you got the private subdivisions in there who are gonna have no control over this. But yet they're also enjoying the streetlights that they're driving on, but yet they're not gonna pay to us, or are they? I, I, I have more questions on how to do this than I wanna do this.
I ran a few scenario, a scenario where everybody in every parcel in the city is in. And as far as the, the private neighborhoods, it's, you know, using the stormwater analogy again. They, even though they maintain their own stormwater infrastructure in their neighborhood, they pay the city's stormwater fee, because that helps bring. City roads and all.
Is it also based on frontage? It's on the coverage of the concrete, right, or their?
Is based on, in previous area for residential, it's just a flat fee.
Got it.
Um, as far as if we, if you put every parcel in the city and said, everybody's paying streetlight fee and just said. Not by frontage, that you must pay a flat fee, uh, which will be the easiest to administer, um. You know, most single-family residential would go up, um, but it, you know, it's not gonna go up substantially. You know, you're talking twenty, thirty dollars a year, maybe, um. Commercial areas will go down, because one of the things right now, the way the commercial streetlight is, is only the properties that have lights. Their frontage are paying, and in the commercial areas, you have more of the decorative lights. Um, that are newer and the, the, the cost of those is, is more than just the, the ones that are attached to the wooden. Holes in the neighborhood, so, so commercial properties would see a decrease, some, some very significant, because right now, you know, perimeter mall has. A mile or more of frontage. Um, and then residential would see, you know, like a slight increase.
Is it allowed to have legally two different zones for commercial versus residential?
Uh, I'd like to answer that outside the context of an open meeting, cause there's some legal issues associated with it. I want to be careful. I'm, I'm talking about the exact form of, of funding.
Okay. Michael, I always like to say, how, how do other cities? Have, 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 what, what, what have you seen out there?
Haven recently went to a citywide one district. Uh, I, I think within the last year.
But they had the same format we had, right?
If they had inherited residential from the cab and then they had done a commercial. And then they just went to a citywide.
And that fee would, it's similar, I'm taking analogies with the stormwater, so would we both pay for new? It would, it, would it pay for new install and electrical maintenance?
That's a good question. Currently. Currently, it only pays for the maintenance and the, the energy costs. We, it doesn't pay for any capital, but. Um, and Ken can weigh in on this. I, I think under state law, it allows you to also charge for capital needs. Too, um, so the area, the, you know, so if it's. Council wanted to, you can look at those streets, as we said, we don't have streetlights on. If you want to put streetlights on, you can build that into your. Your rate to help cover the cost of installing new lights.
You would then include all the commercial, if you were to do the Brookhaven Mall, you would include all the commercial businesses in the city as well?
Yes, we, we include every property in the city.
Did they get any pushback?
I'm not sure. I, I haven't heard of any, but.
The rates went down, why would they push that? Well, the rates are gonna go down.
Well, the residence went up.
No, no, no. But the commercials.
But the commercial.
And, and the folks that are currently paying s- streetlights, like you say, this range up to a hundred and twenty a year based on the street frontage, some of those people that hire in. Would see their, their, theirs go down as well.
Yeah, there would, there would be some residential that would go down, some that would go up, but it's all gonna be, um. You know, tens of dollars, not hundreds of dollars.
I mean, it's, it'll go, if someone's paying zero, it's gonna go up.
Right, but is it just better for us in general to have everybody pay in?
Mayor says yes.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I would say it's a lot easier to administer. And, you know, we, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with the cab where they. And and us giving them what needed to be billed. It didn't get translated to the bill and they had to go back. I don't know if y'all remember that, but. We had an issue with streetlights a few years ago where the right amounts didn't go out on the tax bill.
Alright, go ahead, Lynn.
Sorry, I can't get the, it's, I'm on a phone, it's a lot harder. Um, okay, so, but yes, I mean, if we want to get. Um, to John's, to everyone's point, I think, or to John's point and Tom's point. If we wanna get our main thoroughfares all to have lights. I think that, and to the point that everyone uses the roads. I think the only way is to have some kind of citywide district. I just don't think we'll ever get even the responses we need. Like if we ask the homeowners to vote or something. Um, I had a question, though. One of my questions is, is because I'm in a neighborhood with streetlights. So I think a lot of our bigger, older neighborhoods might have streetlights. Do we know what percentage of residential properties are not paying for any streetlights? You know, exclude the private neighborhoods, I can't, but, but you you know, are there a lot of neighborhoods and streets in Dunwoody that don't have streetlights?
I I don't have that number now, but we could get it just, uh, if my map comes back up here, which I know you can't see, but.
I can't see it very well.
It's a small percentage of the city that's not paying.
So on that map, which I can barely see, oh, it lets me enlarge it on my phone, okay. Hi, so what color is not?
Berry's driving.
Yeah, the white gray.
Right, Berry's driving, the light gray.
The biggest section is the waterworks, right, so.
So what's the white? Or is that really light gray? I'm, anyway, I think we start by understanding. Like, how, what impact this is, is if we do it. Like, you know, how many, how many homes are already not, you know, how many residential properties are not in the streetlights? Um, Joe already asked the question about how, you know, I was gonna ask about how other cities are handling it. But, you know, for uh, for me. Um, public safety is our number one priority and this is a pub, totally a public safety issue. And so, I guess our. Next steps would be to figure out, like, come forward with some plans potentially.
That's it, Michael, you said, you know, establish a citywide one, and you looked at that. What else did you look at? Like, what's?
That, that's the only one I looked at so far.
Okay.
And this map with all the black lines, the black lines are the ones you'd have to have. That's the, the, the one that you put in.
Those are ones that are like collector arterial roads that don't have streetlights now.
So this excludes private neighborhoods?
Yes, and it excludes all neighborhoods. It could, I just looked at, because I don't. And y'all may say otherwise, I didn't think you would get into going into a neighborhood and putting streetlights in. It would mainly be like the main roads.
Well, the analogy is kind of like the sidewalk plan, right? So you prioritize and here's five years and then what's five to ten years out?
But is there, is there currently a way for a neighborhood to request stoplights? I mean, trap.
Yes, there's a petition process, so like there's a part of Dunwoody Club Forest, the the direct side of Dunwoody Club Forest. I think they don't have streetlights.
They don't.
And so if they wanted them, they would actually get together as all the property owners and a certain percentage would have to petition the city.
Okay.
Have lights installed and then we would work with Georgia Power.
Well, then what's our policy? If we do a citywide district? I mean, I think we were gonna say we're gonna install streetlights on the thoroughfares first year. But somewhere deep in the neighborhood, if they don't have them, they're paying, they deserve them as equal as everybody else, right, to a certain extent?
I use the, uh, you know, the stormwater ana- analogy. I think Councilman Lambert mentioned this too is. Even if they don't have them on their street, even if they don't have a pipe on their property, they drive on roads in the cities. Do have pipes or do have streetlights.
I'm guessing they have roads in their house, near their houses that don't have lights, so therefore they should have lights eventually. There should be a plan.
We should have a, I think we should. I mean, I think we're, we event, we should have a a process by which neighborhoods can request it. And and does Georgia Power have a? A plan where we just pick that, like, and we don't have to pay for the install? Like lease to own or something? I don't know.
Well, i- if it's a neighborhood with, uh, utility, wooden utility poles. They will go in, they'll go in and put them on those poles and it real, they don't charge the city for that. Like, we pay for the own, for in maintenance costs, but the installation. They will just do if it's an existing wooden pole.
Well, I can't imagine that on our main thoroughfares, we have areas without utility poles. So, maybe the, that, the, the infrastructure cost. For that one.
Areas or subdivisions that have underground utilities that don't have streetlights.
Right.
Those would be the problematic.
Yeah.
Half of Dunwoody Club Forest is underground. I don't know if it's half, but a big chunk of Dunwoody Club Forest, and maybe it's the dark side, actually. Maybe that's the, but they are underground.
Can I say something? Yeah, can I say this without getting into what I don't wanna get into here? So, you you have to look at it like this. There's some places that have sidewalks because there is a. Uh, y'all have made a public policy decision that it benefits the health, welfare of the society for this area to have a sidewalk. That doesn't mean everybody's entitled to a sidewalk. So you can tax everybody to benefit something that benefits the public. Everybody's not entitled to a streetlight when y'all are making determinations and it sort of depends on how y'all make your determinations. I'm not. I'm not saying the goal may not be there, John, but you can tax everybody to participate in putting lights up. Damn shambly, uh, Dunwoody, because y'all feel like that's a congested area. This is no different. So you don't have to put lights everywhere when you're making policy discretionary determinations as to what benefits the public as a whole. And you can tax people, it's like the system they's trying to say, the sewer system. Whether or not their subdivision comes in and out of a light, eventually they travel through your roads or places where you do have lights. And if you've made that public health determination, public safety determination, that's, that's fine. It's something within y'all's discretion. How we get there, I'd rather reserve because there are some issues around. How you get there that are legal.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying from an equity perspective, if I were paying taxes and. Eighty percent of the city had lights, but my subdivision didn't, I mean, we wanted lights. From an equity perspective, that from what we're paying, I would think we would get them.
And I'm saying that, I'm just saying as a whole.
And it sounds like it wouldn't be an issue in neighborhoods that have utility poles, because George Howard installed those for free, which would only be an issue in underground. And maybe there's a policy or a plan that we develop around those specific scenarios.
And I, you know, we, you know, we need to come up with the task and direction and time. Time, I don't know what the strategy is, I'm not, but we need to come up with what we need for next steps. For this.
By agrees, we want to go to a citywide system, whatever that looks like, but you need more details. On how that affects everybody, and then at some point, the council would need to decide. What the priorities are as far as installing new.
And when doing the math, you gotta take into consideration what you're gonna install in the first two years to set the funding level for that. And then make sure it's not a moneymaker, but you have an investment fund to put in the lights that you need to install.
Right, so. Eric, are we going to? When are we gonna assa- assign a time, like, or which quarter we want it done by? Is that at the end of the retreat?
Well, I mean, we can, we can certainly talk about it right now if we're on that. Michael, what's a reasonable time? That you're thinking to have something done? I mean, we're already at the end of the first quarter coming up. I'm thinking end of the third quarter would be reasonable.
So by, by the end of September?
Because that gets us through, I mean, through the initial start of the budgeting cycle, and also it's a world plan over the summer.
Um, related question, not related to financing or funding, but the streetlights in general, um, solar. Right, the technologies are changing, it's location-based, blah, blah, blah. We got, we bought, we did a couple of prototype ones that we're putting out some cars, but. We think about long-term sustainable, um, potential use of solar, streetlights. I'd like to, you know, put that in the mix of solar streetlights. So therefore, we're not worried about Georgia Power and have to pay a bill, so it's more upfront. Utility costs, I mean, to 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 maintain. Um, secondly is, um, there's other types of lighting that are, that may or may not be a streetlight, like. What I had wanted to get in front of Dunwoody High School was literally pedestrian-level lighting that just shines on the sidewalk. So there's a mix. When we call it streetlights, I'd like to have a conversation about what are the different types? In the mix versus this, this is, this is what we do and this is what we do everywhere. Right, versus, okay, well, maybe if you go to Hilton Head, you know, and you're riding around, you've got these lights that are literally, you know, four feet high and they're just shining down. On you, so there might be some places that might enhance security and help safety for that level as well.
And let me say this too, Joe, a couple of different things, because you hit a lot of topics there. Georgia Power has a very limited power of what they are. So from that standpoint, you know, years ago, we changed all the co- what they call the coverheads. It was the mercury vapor, some were sodium vapor. And, you know, Sandy Springs stuck with those, and it's a huge difference when you drive between the two communities. They. Were having an argument with this, with our Georgia Power at the time, so they didn't change them. We didn't get any cost benefit as far as reduc- production and price. It's less to operate. One reason we wanted to go is more sustainable. They they drew less power, but they also got, they replaced them all. We had several that weren't working. There, it's a battery light now. So it is kind of harsh. When Jim Riley was on the council, he did argue about the number of, you know, what a good solar temperature, right, the temperature. In the perimeter area, you know, it's all with the, the other design, which is a Georgia Power design. Here again, Sandy Springs went off, they bought their own ones. So what we've always done is we've always used Georgia Power as the lease purchase program, which is all-inclusive. They were, they maintain them, put them up and pr- uh, provide the power. On the solar ones, going back to that, we all put in some up, assigned the thing, it took a while to get. From the other companies and not from our, but we finally got those and we going in soon. But we look at the cost of those two. The cost is, um. It doesn't, financially, it's, y'all just thought, hey, if you wanna put solar up, it doesn't save any money. Now, if there's not a pole there, if there's no pole or no power available, yes, it makes perfect sense. If there's a pole, a Georgia Power pole, based on what it costs to buy the thing and the lifespan expected, expected on it. You wanna say more about that as far as the cost?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need to put down what we need to talk about. And then, you know, through the process, investigate all this. Because we're not, unless you tell us, we have to make a decision on something today, or that you have to have our, we need to keep moving.
Okay, fair enough.
In the spectrum of options, keep those open to those things.
Are we ready for what we want next?
Yes. There's a delay there.
Gotta go ask, um, for an update on the Ashford nobody number four doors. And I'm just gonna run through that. Real quick. So starting with Asher Dunway. And, um, we just completed phase one recently of the path on Asher Dunway, Brown Mall. Victor will come up here in a minute.
Did you paint that green line?
Yeah, yes.
Just green instead of yellow, hmm, tell me about the color.
Yes, uh, if we did the green and make it look less like a road. Um, so that, so that probably, uh, not necessarily there. Moving on to phase two, we we, uh, presented this, the IGA with perimeter CID recently at council meeting. Phase two is from, um, River Center West up to Ashford Center Parkway, showing the green and purple there. The, uh, and the right shows all the property owners we had to talk to about right away. The CID, that was part of what IGA was, is CID is leading that effort. I would say from the council standpoint, it will be helpful for you to continue to impress upon them the. You know, what, this is a priority for y'all, um, but they, they wanted to. Talk to the property owners and kind of lead that effort and ask, you know, see if we can get donations, uh, for the right way. So that's really what has to happen to move that project forward to construction. Moving on, Mount Vernon, the, the first project that's gonna be out for construction is Mount Vernon Atty's Mill. We're in the utility relocation phase there of the project. We're working, um. We, we've gotten all of our right of way, um, pretty much completed. George Power has to get their own easements and they're working on that now. And then the cab. Watershed has kind of come in a little late in the game and said, we, we wanna replace the water mains there. They want to put in two new water mains. So we're working through that. They're developing their plan, but that. That would become part of this project too, which I think long-term will benefit the community. Um, so we're working with them to incorporate that.
When does construction start?
Well, stop it, that's too.
You, you'll be alive.
George, George Power's schedule has them completing their easement acquisition by September. If they beat that deadline, then then they can, then the utilities can start and we're. We don't wanna put it out in the business of construction until we see that the utilities are actually in place to start working, so. We're targeting the end of the year, but it's, it's contingent on the utilities at this point.
And what about the cab water, like?
Their, their work would be in our plans, um, so, but, but they. Like I said, they came in late in the game. Their plans, they're supposed to have to us by June.
With the, remember, we changed our policy about the cab and where they can put pipes or whatever. I, this is a big. This is a big water main, so maybe it's not the same thing, but. Are we gonna manage the watershed project and they're just gonna pay for it, or how's that gonna work?
Yes, it'll, it will be like Georgetown in that we, they will pay for it. We will manage it as part of our project.
That's all.
They're actually talking about putting in two mains. One is a sixteen inch and the other is an eight inch for distribution. Uh, so that's the conversation we're having them right now is where those mains go. Uh, and we're gonna, you know, based on our experience with it, there's certain conditions we wanna put on that to. Try to avoid some of the headaches.
Okay.
I think I put it in the roadway or off the, off the sidewalk area?
They wanna put it under the roadway because they said that there's no real, there's no other place to put it out there with all the other utilities. But that's part of what we're talking about right now.
And if y'all remember, that's a huge issue on Mount Vernon. And it creates a lot of problems. Part of the thing was the standards that the cab wanted to use, which were, I don't, I don't even, anybody scruff. They were just out of date, don't work. So if we did it differently, I hate for it to go under the road, I have a passion, I hate for it to go under the road. I just don't know, we don't, we also hate breaks, right, in the waterline, because it's disrupting everybody, so. We're willing to work with them in some fashion, but the whole issue over there was compaction, so we can fix that.
Yeah, well, we will, we will use our standards, not their standards.
Would we bend the waterline like we did last time? Would, okay, because that was a problem too, though.
The, uh, that's right. The next phase is, uh, between. Birmac and Mount Vernon Place. This was discussed within the last year, I think, at a council meeting. Where we are with that, we're in the preliminary design, the sixty percent plans are expected next month. And the, in our five-year CIP, the construction is funded in twenty twenty-nine. And part of that is thinking about, we have, we're gonna talk about three projects on Mount Vernon and trying to. Thinking about, we have, we're gonna talk about three projects on Mount Vernon and trying to stage those a little bit. So that it's not just back to back to back construction. So. I I would say a little bit of the schedule on this one is driven by when the funding will be there and, you know, not having it. Overlap with the one at Tilly Mill. And then the last phase from we're calling from Village to Birmack. Is then there's design money put in the budget for this year to start that project, the construction to find it. Uh, we'll be putting out a a request or proposals for design on that here in the next um, couple of months.
So, can can that concept go to Shambly Dunway? Then therefore to connect on the network that we're going to be building along Shambly Dunway and with the village uh, across from it.
Anything's possible. We we stopped it at the Parkway because. From the Parkway East, the master plan calls for a path on the north side of the road. You know, and it's, it's gonna be a lot simpler to build than when you get to. Knowing those Parkway through the village, it's cycle track on both sides of the road like we're doing on Shambly Dunway. And so we felt like, if you, if you continue with Shambly Dunway, you add a lot of complexity and cost to the project. And it's probably just gonna drag it out because this other part should be fairly easy to build.
It would, I would think it's uh, like you do phase it though. I mean, look, this is gonna be what, ten years from now? But you want to be able to connect, obviously, the network. You're missing that node though. We build that facility on Shambly Dunway. And then, I'm not expecting uh, six-year-old kids, ten-year-old kids to ride on a bike lane. I'm expecting them to set up. So they're not, there's not gonna be connection. They're gonna have to go on the sidewalk. For that, for a mile. So, you know, I'd I'd like, like we're doing with Mount Vernon, you know, we're doing Ashford Dunway and then Ashford Center Parkway and then. Now we're just gonna miss this rest of Mount Vernon with this quarter mile, missing node for, and that'll be fifteen years from now or something. It'll be built.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at possibly other ways to connect at least maybe to the shopping center entrance. And then you can kind of get into the village. And we, and we can take it all the way to Shambly Dunway. I think you can do that. You're probably gonna. At least double the cost of the project because, because when you get it in Mount Vernon there. You're talking full street state, both sides of the road, kind of like what we're doing on on Shambly Dunway. I mean, I don't know how long that is, but. I think you're adding millions.
Well, I I get that. If we just like did the concept only and then we could do break it, break the project up into two parts. So that a future councils, maybe they do have some funding that they'd be able to flex. I'm just, anyway. Well, I'll leave it up to ever. Anybody else have any thoughts of connecting to Shambly Dunway? When we're gonna build all that stuff on Shambly Dunway to get to Mount Vernon?
Actually, Steve, what Michael said and why he stopped it, the Parkway makes a lot of sense. It is two different projects. I I mean, I understand his, his logic there. And I, for me, why would we hold up one project? When it is separate projects.
So, we have the the streetscape of the village does. Shambly Dunway then and not, so we're gonna have just this weird. Spot. Doesn't have like, it's like Joe said, it's gonna here and it's gonna be here.
But it's also, I mean, why, why do we, we have to? They're all spots. They're all.
It's it's almost, so. Uh, path phase four needs to be pre-concept, I mean.
At the very least, it should be indicated as.
Needs to be indicated as.
As a face for.
As a face for.
Yeah.
That will be done in some.
So that they know that eventually we'll get to that spot.
That would be good.
Can I ask like a forty thousand foot question? Which is that? You know, I'm concerned about, we're all concerned about funding. I think the funding environment is, I know we're gonna talk about it. I think somewhere on the agenda. It's gonna change, but we're all also concerned about connectivity. And should we, in these design processes, be looking at, you know, the ideal? Like the ideal option, but also if we want to get people from point A to point B. To point C to point D, should we also be looking for um? Should we also, in this design process, have options that might not cost as much to build? I don't know. Um, I'm concerned, I'm really concerned about funding. And so it feels like if our goal is, ultimate goal is connectivity. Then, um. Then maybe we ought to know what our options are. If the option, if we just have, if we just have one design. Or one set of standards for design, if everything's gonna come in too expensive, then what?
Richard, that's, it's Mount Vernon, phase four. Lynn, I'm gonna say, I don't really understand your point. I'll I'll be honest.
So my point is, is that if our goal is to connect people. And we, but we have a plan that calls always for X.
But we don't. That's the part of, part of this is, is like each, why it's divided into phases that each. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but each phase is designed individually.
Yes.
With a goal of connectivity. Each phase is a different design.
Right. Except that we, that I understand. But except that if we say in our RFPs or RFQs or whatever. That it must be twelve feet, that it must do this, that it must do that. And then we get the design, the only design we get, or the design options we get, they all meet that standard. But at the end, we can't afford that standard. That's what I'm talking about. And so do. Does Michael need to come back? Does someone need to consider? And I'm one vote, 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 just in one voice. Does someone need to consider? Time in all this, because you know, we can save and save and save. That, I think that's my point. Is it in the design process, should we be soliciting? Something that might cost less along with our ideal design?
Well, and had Lynn, this is Rob, had hadn't we talked at one point, when we were looking at one of these preliminary designs that? Kind of going forward, we were hoping to get, you know, maybe two or sometimes even three options depending on the project, just. So we could kind of do more of what you're asking for.
Yes.
So I think that that maybe that's just how we write the RFP is, you know, we have. Uh, you know, preferred alternative and then, but also give us, you know, a couple of other alternatives so we can see, you know, what's a. Um, you know, option that costs less or that impacts less, um, requires less right away acquisition or. You know, I don't, we could come up with the criteria.
Yeah.
For it, but, and and with the understanding that the, that initial design might cost a little bit more because you've got to generate this, but.
Right.
Road, it gives us more flexibility for the preliminary. Did I encapsulate that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think for phase three, what what we were envisioning, based on the mass, the trail master plan is. The kind of the most minimal thing you can do for a project, which is put a. Path on the north side of Mount Vernon from here to here with no. No other road widening or turn lanes or or any, anything like that. Simply just build a path. So as far as. Uh, all less costly alternatives. I I mean, the only thing would be, you know, a slightly smaller path, which narrower path, which. When we didn't feel or like from a cost standpoint, I think it was.
Well, we're, we are, do we already have the concept for this one or are we?
No, we're, we'll be developing it this year, but I guess what I'm saying is, okay, the goal is to provide. Bicycle and pedestrian connectivity from the village to Birmack. We were approaching it as probably the least costly, most simple thing you could do, but just put it in path.
Michael, continuing on, just, so when we, when we did the south side of Mount Vernon there, did we kind of already tackle all of the utilities? And stormwater like, so which is a lot of the expense in these projects, so is is.
Water main was replaced. We put the sidewalk on the south side. Now the stormwater, you know, we'll have to look at that. We may still have to do some stormwater things, but. You know, we weren't, you know, whereas Tilly Mill especially is really like a corridor improvement, not just a pad. We were, we were looking at this, this is already kind of been completed other than a pad.
Some built-in savings because some of the work's already done hopefully.
Yeah, so it sounds like it's.
My point, Billy, wasn't just this project.
Right.
My point is what Rob said about all our projects. Because if we want to get things done, if for us or even a future council. The cost part stuff has to be realistic. And so that's, I mean, just options. We just need to know options. And so it's not just about this phase. It's about for.
Narrative that talks about what drove that conceptual design.
Look, and and literally, we're talking about in twen- in the year twenty thirty-four. Whoever's elected gets to make that decision then for this guy, this segment.
Yeah, but the con- the the concept, you know, drives the preliminary design, drives the final design. So, kind of the decisions we make now. I mean, there's a little bit of variation, but once you kind of set the boundaries, it's tough to kind of wiggle over that. Let's see what we do. Yeah, I I understand what you're talking about, but this is ten years down the road, but.
Are you getting what you need?
Those charges are. Fire protection, yes, zero three seed.
Jay's got it all in order.
Jay's got them all in order. Zero three Charlie. It's sorts.
All right, we're gonna talk about uh, orders that you all uh, opted probably. Five or six years ago. Eight, eight years ago.
Yeah, been eight to ten years ago.
Uh, the projection of multifamily and uh, kind of the regular part passing of, for eight uh. Things you guys passed uh, for the national fire. Election code, um.
You have ten seconds.
You're gonna have a delay, but.
So these are above and beyond state requirements. So additional fire catching standard, two hour fire resistant rating. Against sprinkler protection, as agent enclosures, enhanced wall enclosures, and portal protection. Hence building separation, range top, uh, extinguishing system, you know. Enhanced roof fire. So all these. Are applicable to every apartment and every condominium. But there's no exceptions for ownership. There's no exceptions based on height or size. Currently, we're the only city in Georgia to have these regulations. For example, High Street is, did it because in the first phase, um, because it was costly. The cost allowed them to do that, however, with the current economic climate. Uh, it has become increasingly expensive. I think when you all saw High Street, John had a conversation about amending our code. Again, Sandy Springs was formerly uh, had these restrictions, but their staff had taken it to city council. And they did away with all theirs and worked that. This is a comparison of the cost breakdown. Uh, the average construction cost per square foot. For about two hundred and twenty-two dollars for type one A, which is concrete. Deal as a hundred and forty-eight uh, per square foot for wood frame. So it's about a fifty percent cost increase. You can see we've just compared it to twelve hundred square foot and eight hundred square foot. These are the actual costs that it. So again, it's about fifty percent increase, uh, no impact for single family or uh, higher level family because those aren't covered. Um, a large impact and this is uh, wife, Tom. Asked for this to be put on the agenda because we're talking in conference and plan meetings about bringing the missing middle housing. And we have a case that went to planning commissioner last night, which has condos, one on top of another. They would have to do all these things, otherwise the project is dead because they're just not doing it. So um, and some discussions with the mayor, she's asked us to revise the the code. Bring back a short term or small building, so we're proposing under four stories. With plus a basement or a hundred thousand square meter less, would not have to do that. Uh, so. This would clear the way for a current project to move forward without uh, private room. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so what was the um? What was the issue that led to the imposition of these standards?
I mean, fire fires have a cabin, they're looking.
I know of Dunway Village, there's three or four. Don't be crossing Dunway Village, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not retroactive, so it can only go backwards. That's why we're looking forward.
I'm gonna disagree with John. That's not the reason. It was to discourage apartments, Billy. Because it was made it more expensive so that would discourage builders to do so.
It doesn't have to do with the fire department and making it safer.
No.
That's not why, but it does make it safer. Sure.
Sure. For example, the thing about the uh, the stove, the cost difference is. Three hundred dollars versus three thousand dollars. All it does is. It's a commercial sprayer of your, first of all, they can barely fit in an apartment. So it's just.
So is is the question to get rid of everything? Is it to get rid of? Something like that, that's perhaps unreasonably onerous, that keeps with the other. I mean, what? What are we anything else to consider here? Totally scrapping, revising, make, you know, coming up with pieces that are, that provide. The best value fire protection for our residents.
So we can make these buildings really fireproof. But that's what the code does. It's. Code is developed by professionals and people are in the industry, builders. They have a tolerance for what they're upset. Um, we can make them a fireproof. But people can't afford that. So.
It's it, and it's, it's a, it's a cost issue and and I think this dovetails directly into. A lot of the planning, especially with the conference of plan and the code rewrite, um, uh, the Edge City two point O. Uh, types of housing we're looking to get in the city. Aren't be buildable under our current code. So if if, if we want that missing middle housing, if we want the types of. Uh, those types of developments that come into the community. We're gonna have to amend the code because it's just not economically. The land costs are already expensive and you throw this on top. It 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 allows, uh, you know. And 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 quite frankly, there's an affordability factor for residents as well that'll be enhanced. Um, but but it's it's mostly that the the economics don't work with the type of housing that we're asked. So we'll never get what we're.
Well, so I guess what what I'm asking then is, let's say. let's say this whole package of requirements is really others. But maybe keeping the enhanced sprinkle protection provides a disproportionate amount of benefit.
Yeah, and.
Compared to the others, maybe, do we, that's what I'm saying, are there aspects that are worth keeping?
It's the steel and concrete that's really the overwhelming, uh, expense, and there might be elements that are worth keeping in. The, the thing is, is the incremental safety benefits justified to call, like, is, is there, is there a real? Or is, or perceived?
Well, that's what I'm asking, like, the, you know, hood extinguisher may be a a negligible difference, but, you know, better sprinklers might, hey, that way might help, it might, that's, so I'm fine with revising ordinances. I just would hate ten years from now, you know, horrendous fire and standards were weakened ten years ago that allowed this to be built, and, I mean, I definitely want missing metal in affordable housing. But I don't want to.
Yeah, well, the. And to, and to Richard's point, we're not authorizing unsafe building, we're, 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 we're just removing over protective elements of our code to allow down to the current safety standards for the, the state of Georgia and other municipalities.
And we feel those, how do we know that those are adequate?
Well, I would say far more so.
Richard, I, um, appreciate the slides and the detail here, because I, I need I, I have to get levels set on here, because I was not on council either, but, um, am I looking, I'm going back in your slides, you show about, um, the requirement of interior things, of sprinkler access, or anything, but I'm missing the big point about the actual build itself, so in, in, in your slides, I'm trying to see where it talks about, um. I'm, I'm not an engineer, I don't know anything about this, um, but talk about wood frame construction by cost comparison, but I don't know what we changed.
So.
Well, wait a minute, no, no, I'm talking about the actual, you can't build like, can you build stick built, I'm sorry, wasn't there a certain height that you?
Yeah, you can do, um, five stories over podium.
You, you can do that today, that's wood, right?
You can build it in wood, and we didn't take away that ability.
Okay.
But if you build it in wood, you have to do all these things.
Oh, but then, what was this, where is the, the, the steel construction building?
Steel, you don't have to do these extra things.
If you do steel and, and metal, then you don't have to do those things.
So somebody could still have a fire in their kitchen, but they don't have the sprinkler to stop the fire in the kitchen, but even though the place is built of steel and concrete.
Which means that it would be much less likely for the fire to spread. That's, I'm guessing, I mean, I understand there's a, keep the apartments out.
That, that, that current code is curious, I, is it, is it, is it interior walls as well made of concrete?
No.
So. I'm so sorry, I missed the last ten minutes, but for me, when we did this, you know, you can read in the motives what you want, but for me, it was about, at this point, in terms of housing that would fall into these requirements, it should be big and dense. Like Dunwoody, to me, perimeter center, like what's, but our neighbor to the east allowed on Hammond. That's such a, I mean, it's a good use of land in some ways, but it's so underutilized for an area that's a top commercial center in the country to have all those five story buildings. And so you can't, once you go over a certain height, it has to be steel.
Right, over five stories?
So.
Five stories.
So it has to be steel. And so that's, that was my motivation in supporting this was, is that I have a vision, it's just my vision of what prim- what perimeter or the central perimeter should be, and what is built, we can build across two eighty-five. Uh, in Brookhaven, it was not my vision, you know, I want a variety of housing, because some housing types weren't qualified. Like that, they don't have to qualify, because they're smaller than what we said. But, you know, I, I believe this was a tool to send a message of the quality we wanted in terms of density.
Also, the, uh, several communities started doing this, but they put it in their zoning code, and the state came back and said,
Right, no.
No, local jurisdiction.
Right, the legislature.
The process for apartments or closets.
Right, so we might not withstand a legal challenge anyway, but we, we changed the language at that point to be about fire safety. So you need guidance from us.
I've said that, uh, you had asked us to rewrite the code, we're going to, um, under four stories and.
We need to be able to allow the, the diverse housing that really wasn't our intention to regulate with this, which is like condominiums that are short.
All right.
Cause we, what we didn't do is we didn't specify the number of stories. So right now, for example, if somebody wants to come in and put two story condos, you have to do all this if their square footage exceeds what we said, right? Right.
The total development, not just the single building.
Right, not just the, well.
So then what, where's the four story or five story, where's that coming in, where's that?
This is what we're like, we're gonna introduce the next council meeting, we're gonna dedicate this.
From Lynn's point, it sounds like maybe it shouldn't be four stories, maybe it should be something small.
Oh, four stories or less.
That, 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 that kill that, uh, deal with the apartment, apartment condominiums.
If we did, no, but four stories or less would encompass something that was two or three stories.
Correct.
Right, or four stories.
They wanted you four stories on top of those.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, our intention was never to regulate these smaller impact projects, I don't think, it was to regulate bigger projects um, that housed a lot more people. I mean, if you look at number of residences, a, a trigger, I mean, I don't know, but it was, it was never meant to be about projects like that.
You brought up High Street. Tell me how this all works with High Street again?
So they have four or five stores on top of a podium, um, the podium is the roof, uh, the retail, so this would exempt them if you all pass four stories or less, plus a basement, um.
I thought they should have gone higher anyway.
It did.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, so this is.
Sure.
I think we have to be careful, to John's point, and to why my, what my original motive was in supporting this, to not send a message and to Tom's point, someone coming in and building five story apartments with a wraparound garage is not a product that we need to solve our housing issues, it's just not, we have thousands of apartments that are market rate apartments. So if there's a way to fix it.
I think there is, there with conditional zoning.
Right.
You could say, if you're gonna do that, then we're gonna ask, ask for X, Y, and Z, and pull up very.
I mean, that works for me, I, I want, I'm like John, I was, we all know that I was really disappointed that High Street didn't build what they said they were gonna build. So I'm all for fixing it for the products that make sense for the community that don't need all this particularly, and then leaving it for the rest.
So, so I wanna make sure we're, we're including this for apartments and condominiums, because it gets into the legal what, why does the apartment burn faster or slower than?
Again, I'm not sure I'm set on four stories, but why wouldn't not work for the three stories thing? It sounds like, I don't want to encourage four stories.
There's a spec- there's a specific project.
Yeah, it's.
But you live with this, correct? Is four stories, no, we've lived with this since like two thousand twelve. No, this. The change, you mean? Yeah. Yeah. Is four stories too much, is it enough? You just made it up because, well, you just chose it off the, the last.
It shows that because Joe was screaming, "Oh, shit, this is gonna kill my deal."
Well, but also, what is your five story project that's gonna kill?
No, but there's. But what is the Georgia, I mean, I, I assume, we're not making this up i- in a vacuum, like, there's fire standards and building standards from the state of Georgia, correct? I assume that this fits within it just fine.
I mean, it's funny, like, why is Dunwoody different from the rest of the five hundred and fifty municipalities in Georgia and, and the hundred fifty-nine counties?
Ri- Richard, can I just interject? It's fine that this has been discussed and broadly managed to be, but I don't want to pinpoint the discussion about an application of one person saying it's gonna kill the deal, because then it looks like we're zoning around that person, this is evidence, because it's getting recorded, so we need to be more cautious about what we're saying. But let's think big picture, because I think that's what you're trying.
I think before we go to a, like a rewrite, I think what might be helpful for us is to see the types of housing that we've been talking about that we want, and to understand, here's a picture. This cannot be built because of, but these changes will, it, it's always so that we can understand the, the total impact across, because sometimes, you know, and of course, we're always thinking too, density perimeter, yes, but there are other areas of the city, Winter Chapel, Georgetown, that may be appropriate for more density in the future, but maybe not the high rise level, so we need to accommodate for that, as that type of where, where appropriate, and so I don't, I don't have all the answers.
So I, I, I think that what we're asking is for more information and more instruction, or more information to present to us. I think it should be soon.
And apart of that, I would, I'm interested in the delta, like, what is the state minimum standard?
Yeah.
What is our standard? What's the difference between the two?
And what do our neighbors do?
Yeah.
We compete with them.
Yeah, the standards, the one what we had before, we implemented this, which was the state national electric code or fire protection code. This is what this is for.
Yes, but we're, you know, like I'm reading in the enhanced sprinkle protection. Well, what's, if we remove it, I guess I don't understand enough what was there before to understand what this changed, if that makes sense.
I've got it on here, if you want us to hear it.
Look at the lower one and go to the top one.
Yeah, so this is the actual language. I guess.
So.
So what, what's in subsection thirty point three point five point two right now?
Right.
That, that is what's now. What was there prior? I guess is what you're asking about.
Yeah, so.
What's the ba- basic, I guess, what?
The basic is what we're removing from here, and new stuff is what we're, what's in.
No, no, no. Right, maybe, I'm so confused, because when we, because every other city doesn't have this. They don't have the enhanced.
Correct.
If we didn't have enhanced sprinkler protection, if we had never adopted this, what would it say?
It would say new.
I mean, what would the, what would our code? Right, so is it up, what is that? That's what he's asking.
I don't have that.
Right, so that's what he's asking.
When you present to us.
Yeah.
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 So also, is there a way to have re- requirements for perimeter that maybe are different than the rest? Is it too complicated?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was just a question to see if.
You could have, probably have different fire codes based on the proximity of the business next door or something.
Yeah, without, mayor, I can answer.
So that wasn't even what I was asking, but go ahead.
Yeah, I can answer it this way. Uh, if you have character zones that include multiple parcels.
Yeah.
And there's a basis, maybe. If you have types, there's a basis, maybe, but if you single out a property owner or a special, whatever.
That's not what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, and, and I don't know if we ever did it, but I can remember when I was on planning commission three million years ago, the first community development director who lasted a hot minute, you know, she comes in and she starts talking to me about her vision for Georgetown, and she has high rises lining where the shopping centers, do you remember?
Yeah.
And I'm like, I think that's gonna work very well with the community, and so you know, whatever, she didn't last very long, but the the question I have is, is, is do we need a code, a code or in the comprehensive plan laid out our expectations for development in perimeter potentially that look different than the rest of it, like Dunwoody.
You say, look, but these are, these are safety.
Right, this is a city, right, we have it.
I think the level of safety should be the same throughout the whole city.
I, yes, yes, no, I agree with you on that, it's just that the practicality of a ten story building on Winter Chapel maybe is less like that.
Let's go.
Right, that's what I'm talking.
The code's already exists.
Right, okay.
That's.
All right, move on, a little, I'm a little brainy, whatever. Keep going. Did you have your instructions?
I think so.
Well, just.
I, I guess it would be helpful to see what could, what could be built under the current code, what cannot be built, and then if the code was changed, what that opens up, the good and the bad, and also how, what, what is the impact onto public safety, if any?
But in reality, everything can be built under the current code, it's just a matter of you got developers saying, oh, I can't afford it, right?
That's correct. Everything can be built, except you can build all these, uh, buildings with these, correct, eight things, but being built, built out of stainless concrete costs more.
Right.
But I'll do this.
Man, but the finances need to be, that's a part of the reality, I mean, I'm, I'm sure if you got the top engineers in all of the room and said, build me a car that someone could not die on a car accident, I guarantee you they could build that. It might cost three million dollars, so it's not a practical
Right.
thing to do, and I guess that's the practicality is the part that we're looking at here.
Well, I guess in my question is, cars didn't used to have seatbelts. How expensive was it to put a seatbelt in, and now it's a lot safer? Or it's not, it's not death proof, but you know, is there a medium in here where we get safe and reasonable? Apartment complexes typically are built and then sold ten years later to somebody else, then sold again, and sold.
Five years later.
Yeah, they're not being built for long term financial gain of any way, shape, or form. So an apartment complex who's built at the lowest dollar value does not look the same thirty years from the day it was built. So having them invest into quality and building standards from the, from the very beginning helps us as a city twenty years from now, when those apartment complexes are not substantial.
Right, and it helps us get the density that I think makes sense for a community like us, because if they can't afford, but we, but it doesn't mean that the way we've written it didn't have unintended consequences, and we need to figure that out for the kinds of product, you know, we anticipate that central perimeter would be able to be redeveloped in our lifetimes properly, or certainly not in our ti- times as elected official, and so I think it's worth stepping back and saying what what tweaks need to be made, or what changes need to be made, so we can get the senior housing we need, or so we can get the whatever we need. But that, um, but that, so that's what we're asking.
And we say, when you do the presentation, one thing that would be helpful for me is, what is the minimum for the Georgia state, and where would we go above and beyond? Where we go above and beyond now, and yeah, okay.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, I don't disagree. Okay. All right, so I, could that be second quarter? Could that be in the next few months, weeks?
We're planning to bring the first draft.
Okay.
You all.
Perfect. Okay, so you're on it.
Yeah. Actually.
Don't overpromise.
Okay, this next topic is not, there's no ask here, it's just a request to have.
My, uh, request to educate us all.
Is it true?
It's has to do with, uh, our federally funded projects. We currently have
Yeah.
Uh, federally funded projects, you can come up on the map here in a minute. Four, four transportation projects and one, the wetlands project that's ongoing right now, is, is has federal funding in it also. There you go. So, uh, the, these are the four projects, the four transportation projects in Green, and the one at the wetland, at the nature center, the percentages shown are the current percentage of the total funding that is coming. Percentage of the total funding that is coming from federal, so. A lot of our projects, the, you know, right now, most of it is local funding, um. And as I said, the the nature center project should finish, you know, this in the, in the next few months. The others are more long term projects, and what I did was just, the mayor asked the question.
What'd you do today?
What happens if the federal funding goes away, and so I have a little table here that, but I think basically. Where we would be right now with looking at our projects in the five year capital plan is that the village cross. Crossing project, which is the most expensive project and has the most federal money, would get end up getting pushed out. Two or three years for the state, the city had to come up with the funding locally to to replace the federal money. And the uh, they kind of moves some things around and keep other projects going that Mount Vernon Phase Two project that we talked about. Would probably be delayed if, if the, you know, depending on what the council priorities were. If you wanted to keep the other two federally funded projects going, you'd have to push that project out to have enough money. Uh, that, basically, the synopsis of it.
Can you remind us like how much of Georgetown was federal funded, like what percentage of that one was?
That was, uh. I think it was about six and a half million, so.
Was that an eighty twenty split?
Construction was eighty twenty, yes, and we got six million. But a lot of these other projects that are in early in the design right now, um. The the goal is ultimately to go back to ARC and ask for money for construction, but in some of these projects right now, all they have. Federal money for is designed, so that's why.
Back to the map, you showed us those projects is, right, so. ARC's money is mostly federal.
Yeah, that, when I say ARC, I'm talking about.
Okay.
So, like the village has construction money in it currently, and we were asking for more. The other, like Winter Chapel and North Southford, uh, Winter Chapel does have some construction funding. Um, North Southford is all designed right now, so but, so the idea is to, now that we're into the. Maybe ARC's plan, they can go back, it's easier to get more money, but right now, this is what, what's allocated, percentage wise.
And and just to refresh everybody on these different projects, those twenty percent, the ten percent, those are just like concept or engineering design studies?
That's the, the total project cost, that's the percentage that is currently coming from federal funds for the whole project.
Okay.
Through construction.
So I don't think we have to do it now, I want, I. Spend a lot of time deep in stuff, and I think as we see what happens, because it may be that, and. I'm just throwing this out there, that it may be that, you know, the, that those projects. We're gonna have to reassess, I think, in terms of priority projects, how, you know, how do we decide? If these two are the projects we say for, and which then, like he said, it moves other projects out of the way. I don't think we have to decide now, but I think we have to be prepared to measure what's happening. At the, you know, federal level with Department of Transportation's and stuff, to see. You know, what happens, I think that was my whole thing of bringing it up.
And Michael, yours, there's a, seem to be a little disconnect between the visual on your map and then the, the the chart, the Mount Vernon. Path Phase Two, we're back to Mount Vernon place, I don't, I didn't see that on the map.
What what I'm saying here is, these are, if if we try to confund the federal projects and adjust our CIP. These are the projects that would be affected from a timing standpoint. So it, Mount Vernon does not have federal funding, but I'm saying if you wanted to keep the federal projects on the current timeline.
Or the project.
That project would get pushed out.
Oh, now I get it.
Yeah.
Do they owe us much money? Do you think everyone, I mean, like, how much money are we waiting to collect in reimbursement? It's a legit question, and I've asked him a million times, I drive them crazy.
Uh, they, they don't owe us much money, because every, you know, every time we get an invoice that's eligible for reimbursement. We, as soon as we pay it, we turn around and submit requests from, from the state for federal money, so I mean, it's. I don't have an exact number, but I'd say it's, you know, it's not hundreds of thousands.
Okay. Just wanted everyone to have the level of information, does anybody have any other question?
That is the the four presentations we had for this part, and what I like to do is kind of go quickly. All of y'all submitted stuff under building Dunwoody, and I've kind of got that again, amalgamated into a list, and. Some items will be better fit under other areas, it just happens that way, so I just kind of want to make sure we did it. Okay, streetlights got it, a couple people put that, some things about parks, and we'll address that later.
And invest, right?
Uh, some other ones that didn't find it here are somebody that making Dunwoody stand out as part of building Dunwoody. Uh, intersection improvements, we'll begin with that.
Um, so slow down, please, sorry, all right, so for intersection improvements. Did someone have specific intersections they wanted to talk about, or just an update on where we are, what?
Or or what do you mean by improvements?
Right. Someone wrote it down, guys.
Well, it's like what they did at Spalding, and. I mean, there's something, you know, when they tear it apart and put it back together and.
Intersection.
Intersection improvement.
Right, Tilly Mill and North Beach Street.
Yes.
Well.
It's a something. What was the question concerned, want more, want less?
Right, want more.
Right, so I, can you, I know this is putting you on the spot, Michael, wherever you are. Do you, can you come tell us what's like out there?
I think we should look at, like, updating, look at the five year CIP.
Right.
And we're doing that.
Right.
Talked about, uh, that's really the next one.
What's the next one?
Tilly Mill and Mount Vernon.
Right, which we talked about.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah.
That, that's really, that's really the only standalone intersection project in the five year CIP. Now, the Chambly Donley in the village, there'll be some minor improvements at Mount Vernon as part of that project. Uh, if you look in our transportation plan, like more long range, the other intersections that come to mind, they're in there. That would call for for improvement are Chambly Dunwoody, Peeler, Vermac, that little area there, and then. Uh, uh, Asher Dunwoody, Mount Vernon, and the, and Roberts and Chambly Dunley. That's really the, the intersections that are in our transportation plan for.
Isn't Robert Chambly Dunwoody gonna be part of the gate, the village?
It is part of that concept, I don't think you will have the money to build the whole thing at once, I think. We're, our recommendation is gonna be to do the core of the village improvements, and then do the intersection as a different. Projects, but probably a locally funded project, so.
I have a, I guess, a question that tangentially tears off of this, what was, what was the year of our comprehensive transportation plan?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
Cuz I had jotted, I just pulled up my stuff, I jotted down.
Right.
An update to the plan, just because now we've got a trails plan, we've got post covid changes and traffic patterns in the perimeter. We have a better idea of what's going on on two eighty five now, and I I don't know if we need an update, but I put it up there.
We do.
So I would like your opinion, do we need to update?
You need an update because there's, I mean, traffic patterns have changed, two reasons, I mean, covid's changed a little bit, also two eighty five, intersection improvement.
All right, why don't we put that down, because I just kind of thought.
Changed significantly since twenty seventeen, mayor, one thing I think intersection improvements that you and I had spoken about before. Was what's the tolerance of the Dunwoody citizen for intersection improvements? You know, based on the construction disruption, is that?
Yeah, so I, you know, when, when, in our last retreat, I think you brought up Peeler. Shambly Dump, it was somewhere, and we're like, I was like, yeah, no, you can't, but we hadn't finished the Georgetown.
Location, cuz those.
That location, cuz we would just, people might like lose their mind.
But you can move up.
It does, I have to tell you, I get compliments on the Georgetown project, and I'm like strangers, like people that don't live in Dunwoody, other city council people. Somebody from Sandy Springs the other day said, what y'all do, which is fancy, um, but. Right, and so, um, I think that we, I think a transportation plan update is a really good idea. I don't know what it would look like, um, I think it's, think that there are things in our transportation plan that. Even this council may or may not support, I think it's time to push it back out to the public.
There's no doubt, mom.
And get a sense of, and then also to look at intersections with changed traffic, cuz we used to grade intersections, right?
Yeah.
Do we grade intersections still?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And so we probably need to reevaluate crash data and stuff, um.
Are we mandated to update a certain schedule? What's the, what's the requirements versus what we want to do?
There's really not a requirement, and I was, I would wanna get kind of a. Define what the goal of it is, because a lot of communities that are, you know, expanding and growing, you know, they do a transportation plan. There's new, new projects like widening, some things need to be done, here, I don't think. It sounds like, I don't think there's a lot of, there's projects to be defined, to be done, it's more what are the current priorities. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think that doing a transportation plan, you'll find a lot of new ideas for new projects, it's maybe more. We don't wanna do these projects anymore than we're in the plan, or.
I think maybe more, what standard y'all want, compared to what the old council did, what standard is it? And part of that goes back to what you've talked about on the sidewalk program, and what's it gonna look like?
Right.
Pedestrian, and even we talked about beautification this morning, so I think that's, I think y'all are gonna dig deeper into those issues. More than just, they were gonna make some roads for cars.
And when we had the citizens' capital committee in twenty twenty two, we looked at all of the transportation plan, uh, projects in there, and there, there's, there's a lot. And what was an eye opening, is a lot are not even, are no longer even feasible because of other changes that have happened, either developments. Or, you know, other construction projects, which, so there's projects on there that we really can't even do anymore, so. Well, at the very least, a cleanup is, is in good order, but I agree at, of kind of getting it up to speed with our current standards and. And and a prioritization is probably the most important part, so that gives Michael and his staff.
Right.
Uh, you know. Vision of, hey, this is what's most important to us, how do we get it done?
We've also, we've also had some small projects that were raised at one, one or another, I'm thinking maybe Peeler and. Um, Happy Hollow, things like that, there were small things that. I don't know, just wondering where things are on that, they're smaller projects, whether it be the small one about the traffic calming and things of that nature.
And in, and what I am concerned about, like with the funding stuff coming, maybe. That smaller projects actually may become more attractive, because you can accomplish them in a timely manner, and they can make a big impact. So I think it would be, you don't have to do, I don't know the process and the language about whether it's a whole one or a, just a revision or a update. Um, you know, the comp plan, you have to update every five years, and what's the, what are we in right now, the ten year?
The ma- the major and the minor, it's not required on this, but it's.
Right.
By the time we got it out the door, the current one would be ten years old, I think it's already ten years over the day they did, probably gathered in twenty fifteen, you know?
Right.
Kind of flipping through, a lot of it is a marriage between, cuz we do have a current. Um, road safety action plan and marrying that with the transportation plan and what has been done, I mean, I don't think there's. It's almost just updated to what has been done, what's in our CIP versus, cuz that road safety action plan is current, so I.
Right, I mean, I think you could update it, I think you could call it an update.
You could, and then I would incorporate the vulnerable road user piece, because that wasn't part, that wasn't in place when that was written.
Neither was the road safety action.
Right.
That's a big.
Yeah.
Piece of it.
Cuz that gives us a lot of small projects.
Yes, it does.
Right, right, I'm just, right.
There's a lot of these quick builds, quick wins, whatever else, that can make some impact here.
Michael, what's your thoughts on the traffic counts? Do those need to be updated, and is that data available then to developers? Let's say a large developer wanted to go into Dunwoody Village and put up something big. Um, is that data then provided to them, products that work, and really the question is, do we need to update our data?
The, if a developer is doing something, they have to do.
They do their own.
Traffic study, we, we take counts periodically as needed for different things, of course, if we're doing a project. We'll do counts for that, but then we'll do other counts just for. There's no set schedule, we just do it as needed for different things, so we, we have a database of counts, but it, it has been hard. To really perfect since covid. Um, you know, obviously, traffic is down and there will.
I feel like Asher Dunwoody is hitting pretty close today.
To pre covid levels.
Maybe some days, but on weekends.
Right, the block, the, all that stuff worked, they're still there, CID's still out there, right, chief?
They, they scaled it back though.
But yeah, it's not like. That's moved a lot better, but I think it has impacted some other parts, I mean, other parts of the city are more impacted than.
Yes, and Asher Dunwoody, I think Mount Vernon and Shambly, anyway.
Um, don't tell me what John mentioned about traffic counts, can we leverage Placer AI? For traffic planning as well, can we track like origins, it, what I'm talking about is not just a physical count, it's origins and destination. It's like, these people are all just living within two miles of there, or are they coming from?
From going in through.
Is that a layer that would?
It's there, it's not really designed for that, I mean, we can, we can use it as supplement, but the raw traffic data will have way more value. Well, first of all, you got what, seventy thousand additional people coming in, right? And I don't know how many go out, how many people leave the city, or how many, how many of our people work outside the city?
Census shows that a quarter of the Dunwoody residents.
Four.
In this, no, work in the city. I think that's too.
You can pull it, you're pulling Dunwoody, it's a. Yeah, and they, you know, show the routes to and from, like those that come down four hundred, like, that type of information can dovetail into that, it's not. Super traffic specific, but it's there.
I think it would be, I I think some, but I never, cuz we haven't had a lot of development that we're, I think we're gonna have some soon. It might be interesting for us to see traffic data as part of this process, just to know, like. You know, we may think, like, I may think that Shambly Dunwoody between Vermac and Peeler is just the worst stretch of road in Dunwoody ever. Cuz I can't get out of my neighborhood, but maybe that's, you know, I mean, it might be interesting, I don't know how much all that costs, and so we'd have.
Well, I see kind of big picture, perhaps on big roads, the Georgia DOT actually has a really good.
Okay, so you'll share that.
Site, um, where you can, like, for Asher Dunwoody Road, you can go up there and look at this historical, you know, total volume.
My question is, is that what do we wanna do with information we get?
New tra- a new transportation plan?
No, I mean, the.
Data can, should certainly, I think, drive improvements, right, and and maybe it's changed, and maybe it hasn't, but maybe all of a sudden. No one's using Mount Vernon, so that would tell us.
Former priorities, so.
I mean, it it does, it can be, you can pull it from the Georgia DOT site, if that's a thing, and just show it to us. But it, or use it as part of your recommendations, but they're, to Tom's point, there are projects on there that don't make sense anymore. There's probably projects on there that quite frankly, we know are not gonna be politically possible, potentially, whatever it is, we ought to have a list that reflects twenty twenty five. Not twenty seventeen, and there could be things that we know now, like the boxes, you know, I know that it's not your favorite tool in the toolbox. But you know, painting that box, you know, I would say seventy percent of the time, someone will let me out, or I'll let someone out, yes. People, people pay attention, people pay attention, it does help, it's not perfect, and it's, it's particularly not perfect if. People are really busy, you know, busy time of day, but it's, it can be very helpful, so what tools in the tool toolbox we're using that aren't in there? What projects are not gonna happen, or there are projects that weren't even on our radar, you know, from the, the vulnerable, that kind of thing, that's. The kind of thing I think I'll look for.
And then I just wanna ask about, you know, these transportation plans, twenty seventeen. I'm gonna say this from an outsider perspective, but why do we give like, here's twenty million dollars worth of projects in the plan? That will never, ever, ever, ever be able to fund, right? Why do we have that stuff so far out that it's just, it's just. High in the sky vapor where, versus, okay, let's all sit down and spend two days with what we currently know. And reprioritize it, and just have a new list, and here's what we could do in the next ten years. Based on our current funding.
Well, that can, we can talk, I mean.
I know we're supposed to, oh, just talk about the wish, don't worry about the how, like, let's, why don't we just say, here's how much money? We currently could have in ten years, and here's what, and then we sit back and say, well, what can we do with it?
Right.
Well, yeah, and then that comes out of the transportation plan, I, I mean, we, we, we work, we're working on priority now that was done. Two years ago with the committee, and the only thing I would caution on that is that these projects take a long time. And if we, if we reprioritize too often, there's. And if we, if we re-prioritize too often, there's a lot of efficiency or waste wasted, cause we start down one road and then we go down another road. Um, I think what would be. Most helpful is to go through and say, all right, we know we're not, these are projects we have, we don't have to deal with. And then kind of expect that off the bottom. And then, you know, our five-year CIP gives us the priority for the next five years. And if you remember last year at the retreat, I said, here's what I think. We can do in the next ten years. Um, and that's kind of what we're working on right now.
I think an update is an appropriate. Ask at this point, you can pick what quarter you wanna bring it to us. It should, you can, if you can do it internally, that's. You know, the best we can pull together some council people to whatever it needed.
And, and even for.
And then take it to the public.
I think it, but just, let's take the word improvement. Let's just kind of go there. There's the traditional transportation engineer term of improvement, and that means increasing throughput of motor vehicles and getting them through as fast as they can. But we could do the improvement from an aesthetics perspective, a beautification perspective, a sidewalk perspective, a street stations perspective, a nice street lights. Of signage and those things too, right? So that's a little bit, maybe not in the public works realm, but. There's, there's another level we can address.
We've got a couple of topics. I don't know who's gonna take the lead on this, but there's somebody wanna talk about the village post office.
Yeah.
So the federal government says it's gonna rid itself of a lot of buildings. We should offer, we should run in. Right, I think we should just. So they don't mow the grass even. I think we need, you know, we've had multiple rejections. You know, we've gotten letters back that this is not in their plan. This was. Before the current administration took office. I think we should start over. With, but we don't, but this time I think we should just communicate with the people that rejected us and not go through our senators. I think we should say, has there been a change?
Right.
Of plans. All, and, and give examples. It's not open consistently. Cause you know, you have this huge space that now all you're doing is selling stamps and their PO boxes. And so I, I think we ought to, and I think that should be second quarter that we rewrite.
But there's also new information that we can share back with.
Yes.
They moved, they did other things.
Yes.
We can explain everything that we know.
Yes, that could not happen when we ask. So I think maybe the end of second quarter, so we give a few more months of. And, um, figure out. But, but I think it's a legit ask. And I had somebody, I talked to somebody this morning, and he said that he had packages to mail, so he just went straight to the one on Asher Dunwoody and just had a purely good, normal experience. Which shouldn't surprise you, except that normally he went to the one on Mount Vernon, the one in the village, and his experiences were not. And so I think we'll, instead of, I mean, we can CC our elected officials or something, but we should just, we have the names of the people that rejected us. And assuming they're still there.
Maybe you could reach out directly to, um. Musk and invite him to achieve quick, he's in the mood.
Right, that's true. I mean. It's too bad we can't code enforce them. Look at the violations you have us, like. Right. Oh, okay.
Can we cover the intersections, the way people want to? It's on here, intersection improvement, is that? Done here at this point?
Yes.
So we revisit that.
Keep it going.
You wanna do that, Tom?
It's all of these will overlap.
Yeah, I can't have that twenty minutes.
Three nights, I think we're done with, um.
The three that we still got. You know, we, we need to get the expected outcomes for the UDC and the comp plan. That was one of, one of y'all put that out there.
Wanna talk about it? Say again, Jim, Jay. There probably won't be an action item this one.
No, and what I just wanted to do is just, you know, touch it. I've, I've been, you know, sitting on the committee, uh, with TSW and I just, you know, I've been sending summaries of meetings. I just wanted to touch base. To make sure that we, I don't want any surprises when the final documents start to come out. I wanted to make sure if there were any questions, concerns. Uh, input at this point that Richard or I can share with, uh. With the committee or with TSW or. Or anything like that. That was really the overall purpose for that.
It's. It seems like you've had good citizen participation.
It's been great. Committee, we've had some really, really, uh, good discussions.
From the committee and then community input? Outstanding.
Yep.
And when, are there stages at which we go back to the community again? Okay. And you're come, the TSW's coming to us.
On the first.
Of.
The joint meeting.
April? Oh, at that meeting, the joint meeting, okay. So I think, um. I think it's good.
Yeah, okay, I just, I just get just a touch point, touch base and. Yeah, make sure.
And I think the transportation plan and the comp plan, they always kind of work together, but I think it's. Given if we're refreshing the transportation plan at the same time we're writing, rewriting the. Comp plan, we should make sure that there's a.
How much does that transportation plan update cost?
No, we're not gonna spend much money on it.
I, I, I hope so. Hope not.
No, we can get any. We should not know.
With an update, not a rerun.
Right, and we should have some public meetings. I mean, I think we should, we'll figure out what that looks like and whether y'all hosting them and just a casual fireside chat. But yes. Okay.
Rob's aforementioned conference of transportation plan update.
Well, we talked.
Just making sure it's all works.
No, yeah, yeah.
And last that I put down here was school safety and sidewalks. Somebody clinted their building.
So sidewalks, where are, where are we with like school sidewalks? Have we finished?
I have, I have Michael coming.
Um, we, as far as school sidewalks. I think. I think we have sidewalks around all the schools. Um, there are like five or six. You know, main roads where there's sidewalk gaps, one is Mount Vernon, those, you know, projects we talked about, um. There's a few around town. Dunwoody Club is another one. That lacks sidewalk on the Dunwoody side.
Does it have sidewalk on the Sandy Springs side?
If there is.
Big switch. They're on Sandy Springs side, on the western side, and then on the Dunwoody side on the eastern side.
Vermac, south of Womack, and so, so there's a handful of places around town.
They have it across the street. Vermac.
I'm talking places where there's not sidewalk from both sides.
Vermac, I'm trying to figure out where that is.
In front of Homecoming Park.
On either way, okay, right.
So, so yeah, well, there's. Half dozen locations around town. We just. Try to, I mean, like, we're working on Happy Hollow right now, so we're working those in with other. You know, with our budget and other plans, um. You know, there's been talk in the past about expanding the program in the neighborhoods, but. And, you know, the discussion in the past was no real reason to push that until we get one on the main roads. I mean, so I, I mean, based on, you know, doing one of those every year or two is, is probably gonna be, you know. Another five years before.
And, but we have a, not that it's happened necessarily, but I've seen a few neighborhoods sort of on, touch on it. Where if they want to put it in themselves, they can come to the city for assistance, not money, but.
Yeah, there, there is a process.
There is a process.
Pay for them themselves. Nobody's ever.
Which is. Well, that was, um, that was back, we put that fifteen years ago, concrete probably cost less. Um, I, to s- school safety, one is that. We need to fix the sidewalk across from Chestnut Elementary School, like. We need to fix it. We need to figure out what we're gonna do. I know that we had a humongous plan for the north, that part of North Peachtree. It is so unobtainable, and that was with a different administration. We're never gonna get. Multi-million dollars of federal funds for that, I don't think.
Which segment of North Peachtree?
The one by Chestnut.
Just a couple of weeks ago through that same area, uh, we'll probably hear on that in the next few months. We only did that.
I mean, how much is it gonna cost if all we do is widen that sidewalk?
Make it like six feet.
Like, just make it.
You got some walls that butt up against it, so in some areas.
Wide enough or that makes it more complicated.
The question is. If so, for that corridor, we wanna widen the sidewalk on the opposite side. There's a path called Flow on the school side.
Right, I'm, I just right now, I want children who come out of Dunwoody North, what's that street? Right, like south of the school, um. They come out of Brookhurst to be able to. Walk, turn right and have a sidewalk where they can stand holding their children's hand. And we don't have that right now. And so I don't, I know we have a big plan and let's see if we get this grant. But at some point. On some issues in my mind, we just have to do it. If, I mean, we have to be able to afford it. But we have to find a way, if it's all possible. I mean, like, I think that street's really wide right there, maybe.
Well, right, well, that's, that's kind of the question is, there's bike lanes on the street, so the easiest. Cheapest way to get that sidewalk wider would be to take the bike lane on that side. And expand the road, but do you wanna do that before the path is built? Or, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't see how, a path is a long way away, as far as I can tell, unless you know something, I don't know.
And you already have a path on the Chestnut property, right, that sidewalks are already ten feet wide, right? Something like that, right?
Right, right in front of school, yeah.
Yes.
Um, can I also ask for solutions to say if we don't move curving gutter on that side?
No curving gutter on that side, I don't think.
No, 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 on the, uh, on the east side. Yeah. Keep the existing roadway as is. What can you do to, what, what can you do there on the sidewalk to improve it?
We, yeah. You can do a sidewalk, as Councilman Henigan said, it will be a little more involved, because you've got walls there now that would have to be moved, new walls that would probably have, short balls. Have to be built. It would just require a little more work to put the sidewalk in, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, I mean, we can put it for third quarter. Just to get a sense of, what do you think, John?
Should be evaluated, going out there, see what's possible. Give us options and come back to us.
Cause, as we know, it's just not a sidewalk, it's also stormwater.
Maybe in this one.
That's where if you move into the road.
I, if you have not, I mean, it's obscene that we. I mean, I'm part of it, that we have not addressed this yet. And so, and we want children to walk to school and we know Chestnut, they just got a big remodel this summer, so there's no uncertainty of the future of Chestnut. Because they just invested, well, it's to cap schools, but they just invested a lot of money. And there, it had, it has such a small attendance zone. I think it has one school bus at this point. And there's a hundred kids, I think, from the, it's a small, Chestnut's four or some kids, but. It's a, I think the apartment complex, I don't know for sure, but I think there are like a hundred kids that go to the elementary school. That are walk, many of them are walking and a lot of times they're walking home in the afternoons without an adult. And so if we could just look at it and look at what the solutions are. And figure out. I mean, it'd be lovely if a large ramp landed for the whole project, but in the meantime, we keep waiting for that and it's just uncomfortable to me.
Was there, you're applying at federal or you're doing the Georgia? Is there a transportation infrastructure bank or some other, is there state level fundings we can apply?
Why don't we just apply for us through the DRC? I think it ultimately is federal money, but it's a GDOT and that's for. As transportation alternatives is what it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think if we, we can do, we're able to walk and chew gum at the same time, and if we can start to look at what our options are, just in case. And then, you know. Apply for grants where appropriate, but the reality of finding twelve million, even if we find twenty, twelve million dollars. To do that corridor, it's. Too long. I mean, we gotta, even if it's a temporary, I don't know what the fix is, but let's try to figure something out. So that's one thing. The second thing is, you would think I'm never with these people. The second thing is that, and I missed it, I heard y'all talking about it, but I had to get up, I think, the Dunwoody Elementary School crosswalk, what's going on there?
Uh, we were supposed to hear about. The, uh, end of eight, February, GDOT said they were planning to make a decision about that money and we haven't heard anything.
Okay. That was not, that's not very expensive, right?
I mean, we can pay for it out of that, um, banking money.
What, what is the proposal?
A beacon of some type at Dunwoody Elementary School.
Is it just the, is it the red one?
Is there flashing?
Flashing yellow one.
Would stay in the same location across, which is.
The flashing yellow.
The one that we just took this down off, um, Shambly Dunwoody. Of the flashing yellow, cause it wasn't affected.
These are the ones on the side or horizontal.
As a side note, somebody said that the school zone flashing aren't synchronized, how one school has a difficult time zone versus others. I don't know if they ever look at that.
Or maybe for Dunwoody Elementary and the high school, it's different.
Yeah, well, Dunwoody, it, it was about Dunwoody Elementary. And they also go to Chestnut and somehow.
Well, I think the Chestnut one is different, because it also includes the middle school.
Yeah, that's one big zone.
And that state wouldn't let us make DES in the high school one big zone, right?
Right.
I wonder if we ask now.
I have a, only related because it's school system, um, that that little property across from Georgetown Park, do we know what's going on with that? Are they gonna do it? I'm just, I'm curious. I know at one point they had big plans and they dropped them and now it's just kind of sitting quietly.
I mean, I, I, I. They have lots of properties. There are a handful, like the Schallerford property and the property on Orchard Hills, that they can identify and tell you about and that are large. They also have lots of apparently small parcels all over the county that they don't even totally know they own. So, and they're not. There's no reason, I mean, they're not usable pieces, so somewhere along the line, someone did something and. But, um, you know, I have. I believe, and I'm one member of the seven of y'all, that we, the city has invested a tremendous amount in District Two. And I don't think we should buy that piece of property, because I don't, I mean, we could find a use for it. And maybe I'm wrong, and also they haven't offered it to us, by the way. They haven't offered it to us, so, no, I know, but I think they should sell, you know, I've said, make it hap- do something with it. That lines their pockets, right? They have these, all these unmet capital needs. But I'm sure five years from now, some council will be talking about it. I, or we make a decision a year from now that, that we can use it, but we would have to pay for it. So.
No, I, I don't know that we want to acquire it.
No, I know.
It was gonna cause all kinds of headaches and it went away and I assumed it had stayed away, but I hadn't checked on it recently.
I would say that. In the process they're in, which I'm not paying a total ton of attention to. That to, you know, they have this, the school system has this big committee right now working on school assignment type issues. And my. Probably one of us should start paying attention, but my, the little bit of conversation I've had makes me think that they're not gonna recommend another. Elementary school in Dunwoody. And so with that decision, plus that sees the land is too small and we have other parcels, like Kingsley could be rebuilt into a bigger school. Chestnut could maybe be added on to. There, there are other solutions. Rather than a piece of property that's totally too small. But I, I wish they would. Yeah, well, the, the community uses it. People walk their dogs and they, there's some, some of our high school teams, I think, practice there occasionally. Um, so I, for sure, some of our high school teams practice there occasionally.
Okay, so I guess in this, this section, we picked up, uh, eight new action items, um.
We didn't assign times. Can we, out for Dunwoody Elementary Crosswalk Safety, I'd love for it to be decided by the end of second quarter. I'll email Russell.
Well, and it has to be, cause the budget runs out.
Okay. Okay, I, I'll email him again. I think he CC'd me when I emailed about it. And, um, ask, and then we gotta make some, and then. We do, we have others.
We covered everything in this section. We are five minutes ahead of schedule. Somebody wanted to make a motion for a break. It's gonna take fifteen minutes.
Oh, right, I need a, I need a motion to recess. Second move by John, second by Catherine. Any discussion here?
All right.
Lots of.
John, John breaks the community, he's always like us.
It's breaking down, it's breaking down.
Yeah.
It's in Boulder, like a few months earlier, they last year wanted to check council, maybe for some reason.
No, I can put you up to ten, it's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something.
No.
But no, places are obstacle course of.
And Boulder, during the meeting.
Yes, they were, they were smoking during the.
Yeah, right, you're right.
Were you being smoked?
It's a lovely way.
Big bowl of gummies, but nobody knew what they were. Through the forehead. Hello, Mary.
That's funny, but also.
That was a welcome to the.
Yes.
I think we have to, I mean, that's a challenge, I'm still. And it's like, yes, or maybe it's like that. An apartment complex.
Well, if you're looking at all the comments and the thing you're actually smoking, it comes through your balls, that's a problem.
Yeah, they're not. So, I hope for years, if we have the same terms. I didn't, that was native, that was delicious. No, I think it was, I grabbed one, yeah. Don't know, do you have a gallon?
I don't, I just got a lot of mouth.
Okay. Well, I need a motion. I need a motion to go back into session, people.
Room should go move there.
Moved by John, second by Rob, all in favor, say aye. Suppose, let's go. All right.
Afternoon, um, on the agenda, we've got the topic of elevating Dunwoody. Uh, what do we need to stay relevant? And uh, Mayor Lynn, I think I'm gonna ask you if you might wanna comment, kind of kick that off in some of your thoughts, uh, so.
Yeah, so. The, the work we do, there's level, there's reasons for everything we do. And, you know, operating, public safety, whatever, but I'm interested, and I know as a council, we're interested in making Dunwoody as well placed for the future. And we want to be whatever I wrote earlier, the people's choice, like we want, so was the hospital the other day, it's just yesterday, the day before, but anyway, the number of, and you never get to be an husband, apparently, and the number of people who would gently stick their head in and say thank you for what y'all do, I mean, it was the anesthesiologist lives in the Dunwoody part of Sandy Springs, as she described it, and so, um, it's, yeah, there was a volunteer, God bless her, I knew who she was, St. Joe's volunteer, and she kept walking by my area when I was waiting to go back, you know, she never stuck her head in, but she kept. Um, but we get all this positive feedback, we have to make sure that we're defining not just downtown Dunwoody, but Dunwoody, so that people know that perimeter is Dunwoody. Right, cause most of perimeter, most of the off, central office, central perimeter office space, a great deal of it, we're not gonna put a percentage to it, is in Dunwoody. The mall is in Dunwoody, something like fourteen thousand Dunwoody residents, I don't know, I made up that number, but a lot. At least eight thousand live in central perimeter that are in Dunwoody, the city of Dunwoody. You know, how we make sure that people know, I mean, I get it, I don't even always know, like when I'm going down, Dunwoody close forest exactly where, you know, the edges are. Um, but how, you know, how do we make sure people know, the, interestingly, the people that talk to me that live in the Dunwoody part of Sandy Springs, they absolutely know. Like, they know that they're shopping in Dunwoody and they're eating in Dunwoody, you know, they know that. And we probably know too, that the Kroger at Jet Ferry is in Sandy Springs, but we do know that. But I think that um, I think that, you know, how we market ourselves, how we present ourselves to the community, you know, it, that kind of thing. So Michael's gonna kick us off, I think.
There will be signs.
There will be signs, right. Got that, and Sandy Springs tried to take Dunwoody property by putting one in the wrong place, put that out, they like us so much, they wanted to be us.
They signed our song.
And we didn't cheer.
Yeah.
Yeah, the North East Street.
Oh, shoot.
All right, so uh, I was asked to put together uh, a few slides to kickoff this conversation about funding downtown, what that might look like, do we have a downtown, do we need to use that term, whatever, so these are really slides just to sort of get us talking. Um, T S W came a few weeks ago and presented about the comp plan, and one of the issues that they had identified, it actually said residents would like to see a downtown Dunwoody walkable shops and restaurants. Uh, this is not the only time something like this shows up, all of our master plans for Dunwoody Village, L C I that we, the city did at the very beginning, all talk about the village as being a special place, the heart of the city, um, it's clear that, that Dunwoody didn't see the village as a little different. But we also have, Prim, uh, Primber is a massive office market, ten million plus per feet of office space. You know, almost five million per feet of retail, it's regional employment center, this is where the investment really happens, it really is the magnet that draws in new development. Um, so anyways, this is really our downtown, um, it, it certainly is where investment is drawn in and sort of towards metro area. Um, and then the village is, is, is more of, it's, it's more of the what most people I think would consider as downtown, um, like more neighborhood, um, and yeah, I guess that's pretty part of, of the city. So some of the things uh, Jay and I talked about last, that is together, you know, is downtown the right term? Um, think about Dunwoody if Primber Center didn't exist. If we just had the other commercial areas, would we look at the village differently and vice versa? Um, what if Primber was the only thing we had in the village and the other commercial areas didn't didn't exist, would we think about these places in a, in a different way? So if we don't have any answers, it was just sort of a kickoff, the conversation, um, and, and I guess I'll open it up and let everybody um have a say.
But image this to Mike, because this is really important, it's a little part, large part of the retreat, I think, maybe we, we, you and I spoke earlier about it, and uh, and Michael's right, we really wanna have a big discussion, and I'd ask Richard to, to be ready at this one, to have a help, the conversation goes on.
So does anyone, let's start with a big picture question, has anyone ever thought of it this way, like, has anyone had the thought besides me that we have these two, not competing, cause they're really not competition, but we have these two areas. One which in, if we were a standalone city of fifty thousand people, perimeter would be downtown. And um, and Dunwoody Village would be whatever it was, is, but we're not standalone. You know, we're not, we're part of a metro area.
So, and just help me understand, what, what do you maybe in different words, what, what are you trying to accomplish to characterize each area or to differentiate the areas? But what, what is the goal of the discussion, ladies and gentlemen? I know you wanna kind of differentiate Dunwoody as a city, but how does that come into play with the two areas?
And obviously this too, isn't part of our goal to make sure the areas thrive.
Yeah.
And continue to, they, they have to renew themselves, they can't just sit on, cook on auto product here. You know, these things have to continue to evolve, Primber Center has done a ton to evolve, and so has the village. And at one point, we talked about putting more and more public investment, this was, it goes back to a couple of years ago. You know, to put more and more public investment in the village, different things, and then the perimeter was very keen on business retention in the pattern, and still is, but, but what I wanted to really focus on was, look how Primber has evolved. And I think I told you this, but I, it was kind of funny, I almost said, I almost said, you know, I went to lunch with Denny back in November, I said, Denny, let's go over to Heist. So he met me over there, I said, Denny, welcome to Dunwoody. Because my point was, this wasn't even on radar years ago, and we went to uh, Velitak. I said, I want you to see, and I want you to tell your family, and everybody to come over here, please, we want to use and I'm huge on saying, hey, you gotta support your business, and we all want the stuff. But people have got to get out there and go to them, that's why it's a lot in, in the newsletters and stuff, I put out which are just to say, come over to this stuff, went to Pudge Shack again this past weekend, brought some people. So, you know, it's just part of it, you really wanna do that, so I think that's part of what we have to look at here, and the village is the same way, the village is taken on such a light too, but the way I'm kind of seeing is the village is so much of a, your uh, your, that's more Dunwoody residents, and it's probably a little bit overcrowded, don't you think, than the, than the perimeter market, but they're both very violent.
And so I.
Go ahead.
So, two, two thoughts on that, one is, if you wanna know where the downtown is to me, where is the capital? Right, and so our city government is, that is in the perimeter.
Right.
So to me, that's the downtown, but the interesting thing about the village, I think, is that you mentioned it skews older, it also skews younger. That's where middle schoolers walk to, to kind of have their little bit of freedom to hang out with.
They walk far.
And they walk, yeah, they walk, they will walk miles.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, so the perimeter might be the hip, young, you know, twenty, thirty year old crowd, and then grandpas and grandmas and kids are hanging out in the village.
And I don't think it's just grandma and grandfather, I think it's, right, I mean, I think in the village, it's.
What's locals, it's, it's.
I was at Barn on Tuesday night and there were a lot of twenty something.
Yeah, it was thirty something.
I think maybe.
I don't know where they live and we could probably look at Casey or Somheim, but you go to Bauer Coffee and very young, very young, like every one of them could be our children.
So that, that does get to the question of, are why do we have to call something a downtown, they both seem to be functioning.
Right, and I, that's, that's a good question.
Right, that's, you know, how do we market it? Because we want people to know that we have sort of the best of both worlds, I think, you know, we have access to all this expensive stuff at perimeter and then the more local stuff in the village, but there's really, I know people always like to make comments when a new business is announced for perimeter and it's never local, for the most part. Because it's not going to be at this point, the rents are too high.
Well, so.
And so you have both.
What about perimeter and then everything else, we have, the term we use all the time is neighborhood node.
Yeah.
But we could come up with some other euphemism, cause the village is the one everybody thinks of, but you know, Forty Eighth Street Deli over by Jeff.
And that's what I wanna make is.
This new play dome or whatever.
This character is, we don't have to have just, just a downtown, I mean, there, you know, all your best cities have different districts, right, you know, and, and each one has a little bit of a different vibe and and maybe you find your vibe and that's one that resonates with you and that's where you go all the time, or maybe you're just in a different mood sometimes, or maybe you just wanna go to your neighborhood uh, what place instead of driving across town to, to get to another one, and, and I think I think we can support that if it, if it were smart with it, um, and have i- if, and if we have a vision, and sometimes that happens organically, right, sometimes you can't force an area to be something your children wanna be. Sometimes you gotta let it evolve into what it, what it's gonna become, um, and I think that's important too, I don't think but I think, kind of letting each area, but we, we've got a, I think, support some of the areas.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Haven't traditionally had that support.
I think, and I don't know what it looks like, but I, but I kind of wonder how we so to your point, when I think about cities I visit, um, they often have signs or whatever, you're in a different quadrant of the city, it's, it's named, you know.
Soho or.
Soho, whatever, I'm just trying to.
Cur, C I D does that for us.
Yeah, but, but I'm talking about like.
Emin Park, Amber Park.
Yeah, we're not that big.
Fourth Ward, those are all neighborhoods.
Right, so how do we, what do we do, like, the, to me, the Edge City Plan, I'm not making war, but the Edge City Plan shows people interested in develop, redeveloping in perimeter, what our objectives are. You know, do we have that for Winter's Chapel, do we have that for, like, and we're not gonna pay anybody to do it, but, you know, are there pieces out? Can we pick stuff out of a new comp plan? That, is a comp plan gonna tell people, you know, I'm looking at property on Winter's Chapel, or I'm looking to put a business on Winter's Chapel? Is it gonna tell people like what our ambitions are for the area? Like, I don't, like, is there a way to be clear that if you choose to invest at Jet Ferry and Mount Vernon, this is the kind of community you're getting?
And it's, it's one of the things I, again, I summarized this in the uh, the last update, like, we, the, the comp plan is kind of breaking down some of our traditional character areas into different nodes, because like, for example, Winter's Chapel, there's a different, P I B versus down by uh, where Peeler is, it's a different trying to lump that into one area, it just didn't seem right, so.
Right.
Letting each ar- area have its own definition, uh.
I've been talking about Georgetown, I think every year is a good spot for redevelopment and creativity, so.
And some of that, we have some new landowners, so that might happen, but what are we, like, is our comp plan gonna be clear enough that if someone looks at it for the Georgetown area? Right, that's what we need to make sure we're doing.
They're defining them even more than they, the, the old comp plan just said, these are the character areas. This comp plan is gonna be named in the neighborhood for versus you know, on the, on the outside. Some of it should be marketing and placemaking too, John, I, I know we talked about placemaking. I mean, placemaking is the big picture of these investments, it's not just the hardscape, placemaking does take in art and things and signage, and we could do art in each one of these territories, it plays up the name Georgetown or Winter's Chapel or, or the village.
It feels like that it, it's a little bit of it. I mean, we know that sometimes private money follows public investment, but even before the public investment, we need the intent. Like, what is it, you know, what is it gonna take to make the peeler, I'm not not just missing what's already there, and, but how do we make it, or how do we play on the success of East Forty-Eighth Street, for example? At Mount Vernon, and like, how do we, how come the rest of the center struggles a little more than that, like? What is it that, you know, could you do, and then when you have successful commercial centers, sometimes their success begets more success for them, because then they put on events or whatever.
Could I enter a proposal here, I know Richard asked about the intent of defining Dunwoody.
Right.
And I think we got, I'm kind of like, blowing past that, and we're talking about these nodes and how we keep them healthy, vibrant, care and feeding, and I know the land use plan is gonna highlight all that. Um, and then zoning layer on top of that, but what can we do that's achievable now in the next five years, action from public support?
Right.
Um, you're talking about third spaces, is it called third space, that was called?
Third place.
Third place, sorry, I was close, third place, right, can you tell me, give, I, 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 what, what is the third place?
Third place is the coffee shop, it's, it's anywhere you go that's not home or work or school. So it's the village where kids are going to hang out, it's the Bauer Summit Coffee is as fame as valid, it's a bunch of young people hanging out at night, thing they have, like get togethers, and so if any, any place that's not home or, or school that you hang out.
So I'd like to just throw this out for consideration then, that we, we want to promote and encourage third places. We want to help linger longer.
Right.
Um, do we en- encourage a little public space so that it's a little green space, whether it's a third of an acre or a quarter of an acre or whatever it is in these areas where people can linger longer and, and, and that they just have that kind of air, and they make it walkable, the interior grid, like, we, we got the old sprouts, we had them redeveloped, right, we tried with Regency and it didn't happen in the village, but can we, can we make these nodes more walkable, can we encourage third places and have some place where people can just kind of hang out and enjoy their, themselves?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you can certainly see the effects that these pops have, uh, like these little small, and they don't have to be massive, like. Go over to the shops at Dunwoody and holy cow, the amount of young families with their kids running around in that little tiny piece of turf.
Even the one at, um, yeah, the shops at Dunwoody.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's amazing.
Even the one at the New Publix, which will forever be the New Publix. I can't remember the name of the center, but there, oh yeah, there are kids on it.
Yeah.
Jennifer was over the other day videoing in fact.
And obviously Asher Lane, much bigger, but.
Much bigger.
That's not being programmed or anything.
Well, but it doesn't have to be the people that are waiting to go into the restaurants or they come out, they can, you can eat outside at the chicken finger place and your kids go out there and play and that's all you need. You need.
Yeah, Rita and the kids are running there. Exactly. They're not paying a guy fifty dollars a month like a toddler.
But I don't think that's.
And they don't have to get a babysitter. Perimeter, our place is gonna have that as a lane.
Right. But how do we get it?
All have.
I'd love to see that at Jet Ferry or West Chapel now too.
But also, I don't disagree with that. I think green space is great. But the success, like when you, when you're in older communities, because that's what we are. And you go to a thriving strip center, which we have many strips. I mean, Georgetown is thriving. It's. Georgetown, no it is, it's full, but there's no room for that activation. But when you have these older strip centers, kind of like the one at Jet Ferry. Um, sometimes they even have less parking, like the one at, or the pizza places at Winter's Chapel and Peeler. You know, the centers themselves are investing in themselves because obviously their tenants are having enough success. And they feel like the community's expectations or that they maintain their property. And there, there may not be any public space, but they all have outdoor drinking areas and they're sort of community gathering spaces. Um, I, I think we finding a way to encourage some of that, um, it's tough.
It, it really works best when you, you have the commercial development.
Right.
It surrounds it.
Yes, that's true. Well, I know, I mean, Decatur has a development authority, a DDA.
A downtown development.
And they have just, you know, provided grants.
Right.
For businesses to improve their frontages and so on.
Another part of that is the messaging that we're sending not only to our residents and our public, but to. Potential landowners as well, because you have that self fulfilling prophecy. If, if people view a certain part of town as. This, that's all that we're gonna get there. And if we send a message that we wanted to evolve into something, you know, more.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, then, then we need to.
Are we talking about old land districts and zoning?
No, we don't.
I think, I think, I think it's, it's specific properties and working with them and finding ways, whether it's the development authority. Or, or somebody to say, how, how about you increase the space that invests in outdoor seating? Or maybe carve out a couple of parking spaces to turn into a little pop up, a little pop up park.
And it, and it can be, it doesn't have to be grand and, you know, it could be small. We've seen little small spaces where it's, it's working, so.
Yeah. And, and I think it is interesting to know that obviously in the comp plan, and I don't know what's behind this, but, but. The people have said they want to see, that doesn't mean I think they want to call it downtown, but. But this is one of the six things that kept appearing in the comp plan.
And.
I think that's an interesting thing to sort of dig into and figure out what, what were they really saying?
And I think too, I mean, obviously one of the concerns, I think now that's natural to have is. Are we going to be cannibalizing on ourselves if we're creating? But I don't think so. I think you're actually going to get a lot more because. And I'll just use the east side of Dunwoody. A lot of times, I mean, I get so much from, from my, from my neighbors and from people that live in that, in, in that area. They, they so badly want to have a spot in their neighborhood that they can go to. Now, am I gonna go down to Barn? Absolutely. I'm gonna do that anyway, right? I'm gonna go down to the village and, and patronize those places. But sometimes you just want to run up the, run up the street with, with your neighbor and. You know, have dinner or something like that and not go all the way across town. Um, I guess I know we're only thirteen square miles, but. But it, but it, but there, um, I, I think that, that is important to have.
Because if you look at the sec third one below it, it says residents love local centers like Dunwoody Village and want to see those places to grow and thrive. And so, for example, if I lived in perimeter, I would be talking about being able, if I lived on the, you know, I'm not very good at this, the. East side of Ashford Dunwoody Road and I wanted to go to the mall, you kind of take your life in your hands. We've made it better to cross Ashford Dunwoody Road and places, but then you get there and you have to get to the front of the mall. Like, how do we work with the mall? To make that more walkable? Like, how do we get to the point, you know, where, you know, I said it, I, I think it's getting better. But, you know, if you work in an office building in, in the perimeter, thank you for coming to the office. And, um, you, you want to go to lunch, there's a thousand and ten million restaurants. That you can walk to. We need to make sure that it feels walkable. And then if you're at, you know, if you're live. At Birmack and Mount Vernon and you're a big walker, you ought to feel like that you can walk safely to the village, you probably do. Um, and it's a little long, but I couldn't think of another example. But like my neighbors, we rarely walk to Georgetown.
Really?
Uh, really, but.
Can you get through the back way through the school advantage?
Well, kind of.
Well, how can we make them all walkable?
Well, they can. You have to walk stairs, but, but I will tell you that every one of my neighbors who don't walk to Georgetown, they were in, anticipating. The restaurant that would open in the property we own on Dunwoody Green, like they were so excited because they could walk the trail.
Right.
Now they might walk more because the, it feels a little safer with the trail to Georgetown. People don't like to, grocery shopping is tricky to walk to. We're not New York City. Um, and, and, but I do, I take that back. I have neighbors that walk to Vino Venue. Because they.
Cause then they walk home.
Cause they can.
Michael, what are we doing with Peachtree, uh, Corners in the sense of the Walmart?
Yeah.
How is that Walmart doing and what are we doing for redevelopment in and around that?
It, it'd be, it's very hard because there's, there's really very little property over there to redevelop. I mean, the centers are there, but. Easy thing would be to do that would be to help them improve their site. So Walmart is not in, in Dunwoody.
Dunwoody's not, but they're all the right of way, you know, thirty feet into the parking.
There's multiple property owners over there too, right? I know, but I'd like to talk about this tomorrow with somebody investments in, in our commercial areas. So maybe we can talk about it. But there are some projects coming with.
And there was one center, there's one center that isn't Dunwoody over there that they can, they occasionally pop up with an idea. And then it, no, right. I'm not saying they're ideas we want, but then they never seem to.
Yeah.
It, because even their piece is tricky because there's, I think there's stuff.
Yeah, multiple property owners.
Right.
Fun shopping centers.
Right.
It, I mean, it's, it's a tricky, hard place because of the ownership and, and there's just. It, it's not really a center.
But maybe we work with Peachtree Corner.
Yeah.
Maybe this is actually a task that our district council people that are, but maybe you and John, John and Phil can sit down together. So this would be a task, like to Peachtree Corners, to talk to them about what their plan is for that, their part of that area.
And we certainly got a city catalyst coming because based to Winter's Chapel and, and the Peeler Road. Uh, portion of that as well, we're, we're gonna, that's gonna be well connected and easily walkable to a lot of neighborhoods.
Yeah, and Peachtree Corners has expanded their staff some like any time, but.
So when you look at the different commercial nodes, I know Richard T S W has a contract or a tight contract. There's funding to do as area study for.
Georgetown.
Georgetown.
Right.
Um, I've been talking to the Urban Land Institute about doing one of their technical advisory panels on, they want to do one on Dunwoody Village. So really the, the Winter's Chapel is one that's sort of left with.
Could we, could we leverage that? Could we say, cause it would, I know a lot of words are bad words right now, but could we say. You're doing Dunwoody Village, could you do our other area? Like, would they be willing to, to tackle Winter's Chapel?
I think, yeah, I can throw that out.
I mean, it could be an interesting opportunity. I mean, the city, when the city started, y'all used Georgia Tech, right? Georgia Tech students helped when the city started.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the other possibility is looking, if we can get enough cohesive ideas behind what we ask them to do. Is looking at whether or not Georgia Tech could come in and, uh, look at Winter's Chapel. It, there's a lot of. I'm not even a hundred percent sure there's a lot of opportunity there. It just feels like there is.
So. I'm switching back to the perimeter.
Okay.
Since you mentioned Georgia Tech. It's one of the very first things I talked to PCID about right after I got elected was. How great it would be if there was some sort of circulator shuttle in the perimeter.
Yeah.
Something that, even if it didn't run all day, if it ran lunch hour or whatever in the evening. And I don't know if that's something we can start to investigate again, but.
We are.
It makes it, like, some of these office buildings are set really far away from. Where everything else is. And if you can just hop on a little shuttle at lunchtime, now you're over in Ashford Lane or Palton Road or over by Walmart or whatever. That gets that traffic congestion and accessibility in that little bit. And I, I don't really know what works elsewhere.
We talked about, right? I've talked to him a little bit. And we're so, we're, so this is where PCI, I can do this now because it's the retreat. So PCID, so. Y'all know that there are Cobb. Bus lines and Gwinnett bus lines that come into perimeter center. I don't know if everybody knew that, but they're cutting them back. Is it Greta? So I met, I had a call. And they're on some of these buses, so it never recovered from the pandemic, although. Not a hundred percent sure. I didn't ask, but I'm not sure all these routes existed before the pandemic, but they must have. It's never. Bus ridership in general, public transit ridership in metro Atlanta, it's not recovered since before the, from the pandemic or it's, the numbers have not increased. And so the CID, PCID, so. On some of these buses, there are very few people. There are some routes that they told me that they were ending, that apparently they're not going to end anymore because they got pushed back from the ridership. But in other cases, they're ending and, and first, and I think one of them wasn't. Someone from further away, Douglas or what, I can't remember, but anyway, dumbass. So the CID board has voted to fund ride share vans. For the people that were riding the buses into perimeter center. Because the, um, because they're losing their transportation into work.
From the marina station or something?
Well, from wherever, I don't know the routes, but.
They would be independently, you know, you gotta group a ten.
Right, you gotta get a ten people. They would be independent, so.
I thought, I thought we're talking, I thought, we're talking about a circle.
No, 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 I'm just, but I'm telling them, explaining a little bit about where they are with their priorities. So, but in the meantime, Anne, Hanlon and I have been talking about, uh, on demand transportation. Um, and she's, they're supposed to be talking about the circulator and on demand transportation. And we're supposed to have a meeting about on demand transportation, because if you live, say we're fifty-six perimeter center east right now. You might not want to walk all the way to the marina station.
Especially for.
But right now, all our shuttles are operated by the buildings. And so that's, she's navigating. CID has to navigate that too, because the idea is, is if Tom owns a building. It's a selling point that the shuttle picks you up at Marne and takes you directly to the building. The time is faster than, like in Buckhead, they have the buck. And I don't exactly know how it operates, but it's a circulator of some.
Somebody might know that.
Is it all a circulator?
Um, no, it's point to point. So you, it's just like, it's an app and you say, I'm here and I want to go here.
Right.
It's free if you go to Marne. You have to pay if, if it's anywhere else.
Right, but we, so we, hopefully we will evolve in perimeter. To that, because we want to encourage people.
Do we want to put as an aspirational goal for a retreat objective to keep.
Yes.
Circulator shuttle.
So we're, um, PCID, PIC transport, PCID transportation.
And of course, if you could come up to the village, that would be awesome too.
Yes, I agree.
Mm-hmm. To promote our businesses.
Right, and they're all our businesses, but yes.
Well, okay, oops.
It's like they're all our. Well, to give people options on both ends.
You gotta be up.
You know, I don't know in today's world if they would do it, but middle school kids, they can hop on a circulator. And go to the mall instead of hanging out in Walgreens.
Right, yes. The Walgreens. Also, also, uh.
Well, no, but when they're not sitting and eating and dreaming.
The, the, the tweeds.
Yeah.
The, the Starbucks too.
And so I think that, I think that that's, I think that the circulator is really important, I told Anne, that I think it's important as an attract. Like, it, it's not just. It also incents people that are in the, working in the buildings to explore more of Dunwoody.
It just supports even the, the last line connectivity.
Yes, it does.
The CID has, so.
Right.
You know.
I don't think we gave you any.
I'm, I'm not sure there's any answer.
And once we have a nice safe trail that working, that everybody's.
Well, what I did hear is that we're all in favor of making things better.
Yes.
In the location.
And all.
And I, and I, I like the.
Status quo isn't enough. We want to try to make them nicer and better. Yeah.
I do actually, like Tom and the email that you sent to us, like names for some of the character areas.
Yeah.
Like, we always call it like the Jet Ferry place. I don't know, the East Village? Like, I just feel like with.
Ooh, like that.
I know, thank you. I want, I want to noted that I said that first, but also because it's that new village. And that does like awaken it and we actually have a business that's gonna stay there and attract people. I mean, uh, the whole thing was, do we need to define downtown? We don't have a downtown. We have like five villages.
Well, I think there is a downtown, but anyway, sorry.
But I think we, but it's just the area and I think we need to embrace the fact that. That, you know, it's the perimeter, it's the village, it's the East Village, it's Winter's Chapel, it's Georgetown. That's fine. Everybody can walk somewhere. You can walk to Vino Venue, you can walk up to that. You can walk to the village. And we just need to make it more connected, so that all of our villages are connected. I mean, that's.
We can become.
Real saying it takes.
Perimeter's a giant village.
It's a giant village.
It's a downtown.
But it's, that's a good name.
City Hall is nowhere near.
No, I know, but it's still a downtown, but it's a sprawl. Okay, me. Okay, all right. So are we ready for the next thing? Wait, we ready?
Yeah, there's no other presentation.
Okay, are you ready for mine? Okay, so I have something I'm really excited about. That's enough to drag me up here.
Are you serious?
And he's not here. He's always really exciting, but this is not it. But I have been talking about this since twenty twenty. Um. And so I'm thrilled to introduce once Michael gets it up. Your holiday headquarters, destination Dunwoody, dazzling Dunwoody. And so in two thousand nineteen, I think, Discover Dunwoody. Put on an event called Your Holiday Haven. I think it was nineteen, it was, you know, five years ago, six years ago, whatever. Where each of the hotels sponsored holiday events and they, they did a big push because December is the slowest month for hotels. Especially the weeks as you get close to the holidays. And they had all kinds of activities that were open to the public. Um, they invite, we sent out stuff for the community. It was, I think it was a nice start. I don't, you know, it, like everything, it has to have a first year and then the pandemic happened. And it didn't happen again.
And, and note, if you're on your hard drive, go to the last file.
Okay.
Z, file in ZD.
Right, because they didn't, I'm unpredictable. They didn't know when I was gonna bring it up. And so in the ensuing years, you know, it just so happened that the first year of my term, we did the holiday lights because. Of the pandemic and it was a gift to the community. And, but in the meantime, I learned that Ravinia lights up their woods. And, uh, you know, we have light up Dunwoody, we have different things. And so. I've been talking, but not taking action on doing this for a lot of years. And thanks to some key members of our city staff. Who really put pen to paper and got it done, it's gonna happen. With a partnership. And the idea is, is that we would pull everything, somebody stop me if my vision is not right, but we will pull everything we do together. And market it to the community at large. To come, because one of the things, like for the village, like to thrive and all these other nodes eventually to thrive is they have. All the villages to thrive. They have to have visitors from outside of Dunwoody. It's not enough. It, we can't, we certainly cannot support all of perimeter by ourselves and we're not asked to, but, you know, it just, it makes a big difference. If people are coming to us and, um. And, and discovering everything we have to offer, because then they'll come back. It's also a lovely thing to, it's a lovely time of year to celebrate. Uh, and so we would pull all this together. We would dazzle our competition. Um. And because we have, there's all these pieces, like I anticipate that eventually there will be. Two to three Christmas trees lit outside in perimeter. Um, and then right now we have two at the village. I mean, I just think there's lots of ways that we can pull it all together. You know, build slowly, not too slowly, and make it a festive holiday season. That's my goal, marketing.
I love that idea. What's, uh, what's now today and what's, what do we need to get, get to and what do we? Get, get to and what do we need to fund uh, from a public dollar perspective?
Right now, we're meeting with partners, right?
Yeah, yeah. What are we looking at adding for doing more of?
I mean, thi- this is just the start, discovered Dunwoody, we've got a meeting coming up uh, pretty soon. Um, with partners to start talking about many other things, obviously this is not everything that we would do.
And one thing. One of those, the Christmas market?
D P T wants to do a Christmas market. They haven't gotten that great in order yet, but D P T wants to do Christmas market, there's a holiday market. The theater, just pulling it all together. Um, and, and this ties into something that I'm just gonna go ahead, I don't have an agenda, so. Okay, we're good, really good on time. Which is, it's somewhere else, I think, but it's, it's how, what, how do we look at publicly sponsoring things on private property? So we have these um. Pops, the publicly, public. Sorry, it's just gone. Asher Lane, so Asher Lane, for example, they gave Rosemary, they gave Create Dunwoody, they're giving Create Dunwoody some money to do programming. High Street is supposed to do all their own programming and they have a nice amount of stuff in the next week, by the way, if you're not following them on social media, you should. Like they're doing an electronics recycling and a yoga thing and something else, those two I think have a cost. The third thing, I can't remember what it was, but it's, it sounded good to like a nature celebrate. Look, there's a lot of information, it can't be retained, but how we get them to participate. Like we need them to do their ice skating rink, we're waiting on their ice skating rink.
And then this is gonna be rely, we're gonna be reliant on the private sector. To make this happen.
And how to weave it all together.
I didn't, they are planning a skating rink?
Well, they, they have historically had skating rinks at their other properties.
They built.
They built, they built that, that lawn is built to put a skating rink on top of it.
And they're planning to?
Yeah, they.
Well, they built the lawn to put the sk, I don't know, we've got to talk.
I remember that being part of the plan, yeah.
That was part of the plan. I think we'll get them to do it.
You got, and perimeter mall description says, and a perspect- spectacular street.
Yeah, we gotta.
That street game.
So, so understand, this is.
But the mall already does, I mean, they have Santa.
Right, but.
I, I understand that, but you know, a lot of this is, gosh, when you put it all on one piece of paper, it's just a lot of interweaving and.
Right, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Cause it was already here.
Was already here.
And then maybe, like with Ravinia, I always struggle how to, except for that opening night thing, I always struggle how to tell people to visit it. Because I don't exactly know where you park unless you eat at the hotel, so we've gotta work with Ravinia, right? But, but I think they would be into it because they like us. And so, but you know, how, maybe we can do caroling or some, I mean, I don't know, I don't have the details, but we have lots of partners. One of the advantages we have over other cities is, is maybe because of how we were created. We have really strong partnerships with Sprawl and Theater and we actually have a decent partnership with the schools even. You know, the schools in Dunwoody where, and I hope some of those teachers, we can set it up so they can have an opportunity to display their students talent. You know, something like that, but to, to give us something, you know, we have the Fourth of July parade, which is tremendous. And um. And, and that's awesome, and this would be the other, this could eventually be the other anchor. You know, we have this event, it's a series of events, we can um. Uh, we can, and, and it can, you know, obviously it's gonna start and then hopefully it'll grow. But how do we, you know, Dunwoody is, can be your holiday destination and there's lots to do. Your holiday headquarters and it's your holiday headquarters and when in two thousand whatever, in nineteen, I guess. Ravinia gave out these glasses, that when we look at the lights, it's a thing shows up. You know what I'm talking about? Well, you know, my idea way back when was that we would partner with the restaurants and discover Dunwoody and they could have them there. And we would use the map from what's up Dunwoody and people could drive around and look at all our gray holiday lights. I mean, I think we have real potential to, to develop. Pride and just set us apart.
Can I ask a quick tactical question to Eric? Would the city hall have any indication that we are in the holiday season? If you're arriving on city hall property?
Yes.
Is that, is that an aspiration?
That's not even an aspiration, we just, we.
I, we haven't ever done it.
No, we did it once and there was.
Well, you know, we were talking about, when, when I outlined the building, you know, the L E D lights, you have now you have different colors, you can do. Valentine's Day, you can make it red, you can do all kinds of, kinda like the King and Queen, but it's a miniature version. But there, that's a fairly simple project, that's something I want.
And, and just to show, have anybody been to Norcross during December or November downtown Norcross? So like, you know, they have the little, they just have little lights strung around the trees, they've got ornaments. Or, or Alpharetta Springs red ribbon around the lamp posts with, with, so there's other things that we can do that don't cost a. Those, those shouldn't cost a lot.
So for the purposes of this retreat, we have an actual item to further study this, is that already underway? You're coordinating it or?
Well, it might be how, how to market or promote it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we are gonna, well, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces, this is early, it's probably not as, I mean, it's March, we had time. Um, I just wanted to unveil it, where they take it to other boards and um.
Well, we can put it as a parking lot issue.
Yeah, well, I think Michael will present, I think we'll make a goal. Jennifer and Michael, do you wanna set a goal with?
We're meeting on um, the twenty four, with the mall and with uh, parks, communications, economic development, create Dunwoody, discover Dunwoody, the mall. Hopefully Asher Lane, we parts race, maybe even have three.
Sometime in early summer, you can share, whenever you're all ready, we can share publicly.
Well, the goal too is we're gonna try to get a uh, do a mailer.
Yeah.
Um, which will take some funding, so we've gotta figure that out. But ideally, we get all of this in a present version that we can send to our residents so that they can see everything in a organized way. Of what's happening, we just need the information from everyone early enough to do that.
Yeah.
So that's our goal.
I guess the, the one thing I have is. What I think is really important is, you know, schedule blocks, like this weekend, this, you can do this. This weekend, you can do this and then the brand all month long do these things, so if you're like, oh, you know. Relatives are coming in this weekend, what's going on, oh, we can go do the, the, whatever's at the stage door this fall, you can go ice skating, you can go. Just so you can, I, I don't know how you.
Wouldn't you have to go to print for the fall?
Uh, well, this, we're probably something separate from the decade, but for fall, we go to print, um, if it's October.
Cause that's a good calendar you have in there.
August, yeah, August is, end of August is.
You would have the dates released to.
Yeah, but we kind of feel like we might wanna do something separate just for this, so maybe it's just a, might be a one pager or about the, you know, just a. We don't know yet, it depends on how much information.
How much sponsorship.
A lot of their website, they're done, we'll even post um, a special page on their uh, site with all the information, kind of like we did for Arts and Ultra Month.
Okay.
Although we're scaling that back.
Okay.
That month back, October.
Especially if you. Being weekends, you might be able to use a, create a, you might be able to rope in hotels via, it's kind of a Dunwoody.
And that's what, you know, the whole purpose of that holiday haven was to get. No, this was in nineteen. Um, was to get Dunwoody residents in the hotels so that you would have your out of town company. Like, you know, every, it's okay to have ulterior motives and to have your own motives for participating. Um, somebody said something. Right to talk about this. So one of the things that triggered something we were just talking about is. In, is, is, uh, we have a growing amount of privately sponsored events happening in the city. And some cities include all that in their websites, but, but we haven't, and I'm okay with that. But I thought maybe, Jennifer, I'm totally putting you on the spot because I just thought of it, sorry. Is, is um, well, first, let me go back to this one, is Create Dunwoody part of all this? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause somebody said something over there. But how do we, like I struggle as mayor and I have a lot more leeway than y'all. Uh, like, like the High Street stuff that I saw today, I can't totally remember what it was, but there are three good things. Um, you know, I'll just share it eventually in a story or something, but how do we, because. The couple, the private sector takes up some of our need to do programming, like they offer stuff. So how are we best able to share that information? So that when someone says there's nothing to do, you'd say, oh, but there is, like how are we sharing that information? What should we be doing? Should we do something different, like community count? Yeah.
So I actually, um, so here's, here's our perspective on that. Is that if you put everything on our calendar, you will never see anything we need you to see.
Okay.
You'll never see our meetings, you'll never see our open houses, you'll never see our park events. Um, so we're very picky about what we put on, that's why we created, there's um, there's a city calendar, there's the parks calendar. And there's the parks program calendar, there's three separate calendars. And so that's, that's sort of our temporary solution, I will tell you though, I'm trying to find it, I'm. Didn't know that we were gonna talk about this, but Peachtree Corners. Um, recently came up and I had a phone call with their communications department, they have paid a vendor. To come up with a separate, and if I can, if you'll give me a few minutes, I can find it.
That's fine, we can.
They have now a calendar. That has e- everything that people populate themselves, that we could potentially do, it's expensive. So we have to figure out if we um, want to allocate the money for it. I have the amount, but I don't have it with me and I don't remember, but I do have notes from a conversation that I had. Um, so that's a way we could go that um, you would give access to High Street to put their stuff in and to. Um, you know, even churches, everybody could do it, it would be a little overwhelming, but there, there are some ways that they break it down like.
You can filter it by your interest, so if you wanted to just see music events, you could look at the box and. It is, it's pretty, uh, pretty good.
So Discover Dunwoody, that's. Right, so.
They, they don't have a C V B though, do they? Peachtree Corners doesn't have C V B, so they have to step in and take, do that. So I would expect our C V B to do that.
So Discover Dunwoody does do it, the question, so, so one question might be, is it, so they do, they do a really nice job. You can go onto their website and they're very inclusive of stuff that would be remotely attractive to tourists. You know, obviously they're not saying, you know, take the pottery class at Sprawl or whatever, but, but we have that because we do it with our partners. On the parks thing, but if there's an event that's kind of open to the public, it's, it can be on their webpage. Um, it's, it's, and it's somewhat clunky and they don't always get stuff right, but it's there. Question is, is then, should the city just link to that website? Like if somebody. Oh, you do, okay.
Well, on our, so as a result of that, on, at the top of our calendar, we have a link to Discover Dunwoody's calendar.
Okay.
And then on our newsletter now, uh, at the bottom, there's a little feature. Um, they are gonna have a feature event of the week and then it can also link to their calendar. But can I give you all a, you are, should I go up there, I found this.
I think if you type it into that, wait, I don't know, how will that work?
That way for her to share something.
Share a website?
You wanna just give it?
Probably be to do on that screen up there. The one that's, um, isn't a website you can just go to?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's on the bottom in the front. And then if you share a screen, it'll show up for any of you.
Next year, we gotta get a higher table and a chair for.
Two days.
So go, this is the site that's compared from their, their government site.
Okay.
So this is something, so um. It gets a little complicated, there's a way to link from your, from your government site to this. And you also have your own meetings on your government site. Um, but here's how you have subscribed or see notifications for. Peachtree City led events, government meetings, community led events, town green events. Um, and then. And then you have, you know, and then this looks a lot like, say, Discover Dunwoody.
Do they own the grain? They own the grain.
It's also new, they just unveiled it, so they're still developing it. Um, but again, I think it's uh. I think it's probably ten thousand a year.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's covered Dunwoody does it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I'm looking at Woodstocks, they've got a nice, Woodstock C V B has a nice website too for things to do and calendars, so.
They don't have, right.
Yeah, this was offered more than I've seen before. And that idea, this sort of subscription is nice. Um, and we would not have to, uh, at first it would take a lot of that time, but then I think if people would get good at it. Um, they can register to be um, I mean, to be a contributor.
Right.
So we have an action item coming out of this? So there's some other things on the agenda.
Did you mind, before the holiday stuff, do you mind to kinda just kinda? I'm uh, kinda, I didn't wanna bring it up at the retreat, cause I'm still working on some research behind the scenes before I'm ready to have a conversation. But I think it would dovetail with that. Um, so I guess I just don't even mention it, because I'm not even ready to talk about it.
Is it the lights for this? It falls into it, so yes, we're working. So I think it's, I don't think you had to bring it up because we're gonna figure it out.
See, see, thank you.
Just writing a C J.
I'm gonna hit these real quick and whoever's brought this up, can you respond? Uh, we have public art. Somebody gonna talk about public art. And here, we have about fifty minutes.
We have plenty of time.
And I'm not gonna stand in front of anybody between anybody and their cocktail or anything, so five o'clock.
Oh, that was me, um, I just like more, bring in more, 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 like thumbs up. Keep going, I mean, we talk, cause the, the topic was elevate Dunwoody and I, I truly believe that is one way that. That we have elevated ourselves and we will continue to elevate ourselves.
Well, isn't the art commission doing some sort of like rotating, aren't they doing rotating sculptures or something?
Yeah, we're working on a, a project with parks, because Parks Department is our favorite there. So we're doing a deal at Wildcat Park and we're gonna install, we don't know how many, but a number of sculptures.
And explain that they're leased.
Yeah, they're leased, so um, we'll see how many we get, um, but it will, they, they will be leased for a year, uh, to eighteen months. Um, and then at that time, we'll figure out if we wanna continue it, uh, but it's fairly inexpensive to lease art like that, sculptures who. You know, people who've created sculptures, they're, they're somewhere, they don't have, they, they wanna get them out in front of people, so. We're about to hide, we did an R F P for somebody to manage the process for, so we don't have to do it, and that's on the street right now. And once we get that person under contract, then we'll figure out, or we're hoping in the fall.
And there's a way to, like, if, if, like you ought to tie this, the sculptures into the village somehow, like a. You know, some marketing campaign where eat at the village and go, cause it's walkable, I think. And so, but even if it's not, it's right there, we could do some events that remind people to eat, you know, I'm saying. Take the opportunity to draw some connectivity.
Yeah.
Um, so.
One other thought, stealing this from Swani.
Right.
Is there any thought if we get generous sponsors or donors that say, hey, I really like that, whatever? I'd like to purchase that for the city to put someplace, do we have locations identified for future installations should?
Now, but the second part associated with this is, there, there's an idea of doing an art trail along that Dunwoody Road. Uh, along our art, uh, along our trail, and so the idea would be yes, to hook, hook those two together. Swani does a really good job of that, every year they actually.
Cause to me, that's how you start to get art.
Yeah.
Let people look at it and pick their favorite.
And this is, this is, i- it's very expensive, saving up the entire part budget for an entire year.
That, that they're committed and that's what they think they should do.
And so we're, we're piecing this together.
Right.
Um, so yes, d- d- doing fundraising or just so, finding other ways to.
To me, it also sounds like we need to have some sort of parks event out there, well, part of that there. Even if it's just like a movie or a.
Maybe we'd have to haul in and install. More bathrooms without it.
I don't like that install.
I really don't like it, there's, I do not think a part of that installation.
That true, I mean, to me, it's a way to. Yes, that part is.
Right.
People are not, and it's a way to get people.
And, and I, I think that, um, this is great. Because it's, will appeal to an age. A generation or two that don't think that they do, we do much for them in terms of this kind of stuff, so I think it's. I think it's a really good idea, thrilled. Can I pivot off of something you said, is that okay? Did you have something? Yeah, we're still on public art, finish yours and then I'll.
No.
Okay, public art, so. I, at my home on my computer, I scanned in the very, his business is based in Swami. And so he gets the newsletters, I drive Jennifer crazy sometimes, but I haven't done it in a long time, but I'll say, you know, very blah, blah, blah. So in this weeks, this month, it's not weekly, whatever it is quarter. They focused on, they started in two thousand nineteen, a fundraising campaign for art, for public art. They stopped because of the pandemic and they restarted it. And they raised one point seven eight million dollars from residents and businesses. For art, that's their shtick, that's their thing. We're gonna talk about some things tomorrow, then I think we ought to think about whether or not we have the ability. To do something similar, not, not necessarily for art, I think art in the corporate world, I think that's a great intertwined. Um, but, but I think that, you know, for other things, there may be an opportunity to look inward. Uh, and see if there's interest, it was a very strategic campaign, they started with the family, they started with a core group of donors. The, the person, the volunteer that led it went to people that were committed, in this case, to public art. And asked for a not insignificant contribution over a certain number of years, and that was the seed. And they far exceeded their expectations, and I'll have to email y'all the article from their newsletter about it. But I, but I, Sandy Springs just funded their veterans. Um, thing with a Veterans Memorial, partially with public, I mean, with donations, we saw what happened with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. So it's just, it, it'd be, but just simply because we're a city doesn't mean. That that's not an opportunity that could exist in some form, shape or facet, not just for a sponsorship for events, as obviously one thing, but. This would be for something capital, so anyhow, yes.
That's great, so I could leverage on that as well, so like. Can you level set, Michael, everybody knows what our Public Arts Commission, their, 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 their job is. Kind of, we'll level set everybody what the Art Commission does.
So basically they approved public art, this city council was very clear that they did not want that job, so we had to create the Art Commission. And, and that is their number one task, right, they do have a, a few other things under that.
Sure, so like if we think about moving forward and thinking about getting donations and doing other things out of the box, there's other types of organizations that could leverage.
I would certainly think that a, that a, a non-government organization should take those things on, like a five oh one T three.
Right.
Five oh one something.
So like Roswell had something, I know.
Well, I mean, we have created, we created Dunwoody was formed originally to do justice.
Yeah.
They have sort of pivoted to more of an activation, but that, they, that is, that was, that was why we formed. That organization to be the arts partner.
So they could be an arm to help, I know it's just Rosemary though, right? But that, that's an organization that, that could be the shell to arm.
Yes, absolutely, and I know that Swami used. I don't know what their shell was, but they used a consultant, so I'm assuming there was a shell.
And, uh, yeah, I'd love to do that, and even if we go back to the, removing the public art, I mean, you say the word public, but we have private property that we could put. Some great artwork on as well.
We call that public of the public.
So it's, it's just artwork in the community.
And Capes Two Four just did something really nice, which we could show you a picture, it's beautiful.
Oh, really? Where is it?
They did it on the Mardo, uh, Bridge.
That's great.
On both sides of it, so there's.
You talk, go back to our downtown nodes and stuff and these other things you could create, if we could stick, like over in, in Jet Ferry. At the end where the bank is at Mount Vernon and Mount, and Dunwoody Club Drive, there's a little, there's a little drainage there, you know, talk to the owner.
Right.
And we get some money and put a lovely.
Or they could put, I mean, part of what we can do is encourage private investment, sometimes I think people, the. Private entities don't know what their options are, like when you came here, I don't know where we were, but we were in Buena Estela, but there's some. Uh, it's a pool company or something in a building and they have a beautiful mural on the back of the building, just because, I guess. And so, I, you know, there, we can encourage private invest, we need to be encouraging private investment.
It's the only way we're gonna fill out.
Right. Not just art.
And that just, to me, like, all of that that we're talking about, just, it's easy to elevate.
Yes.
Well, well, how do we, I want to put all, I'm talking about the great Dunwoody, it would be great to have a little placeholder where we have. Enter the website, something like, yeah, so what's the next steps on this, what are, what are our takes?
Think, what I'm talking about in terms of fundraising. I want to talk about tomorrow with some of the stuff on the agenda, so I think there, to me, there's not necessarily art right now, there's some other stuff, so.
Little bit about public art, which I just mentioned, the intersection, anything happening with the water tower? Yeah, the water.
Yeah, can I give us an update?
I like the lives, bring it.
I spoke to the Public Works guy and it is funded and maybe this year, at the end of the year, they'll get to it. And it'll be that horrific blue that is on the, the water tank by the fire station. And I don't know if it'll say City of Dunwoody, because that's up to Lorraine.
Have you reached out to her?
I, not yet, okay.
You start, you started, let me, okay.
I, I'd like to make sure I get her right now, that was separate, separate subject. The pocket park in front of the water.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Okay, we, done with art or?
Yes, keep going.
Financial, Diane was on here.
That'll be tomorrow.
Uh, working with partners, uh, community events activation art, I think we've kind of already covered that. Mayor's state of city.
It's happening, check, check.
What is the state of city?
It's great.
Thank you.
So then we're done, it's a short speech, I know, I knew you did, I knew it was from you. And it, so the truth is, is five years ago today, we canceled today, today, I found my face, I was looking.
Oh, it is?
Five years today, because tomorrow is the day the world.
Today, just talk them up, tomorrow will be.
Well, it's a five years ago today, I canceled one and I'm never gone back to it, it's a long story, but I'm doing it next week.
Okay.
And then we'll get into, and then I'm gonna do it at D H A, I'm gonna do it at D H A, I've already talked to Tim Brown, and we haven't picked a date because he's needed. I know.
And so I'm gonna put that in, in town halls, but I think we've already talked about.
We have.
Leveraging nonprofits, I know. Uh, expanded stakeholder groups.
That's.
That was the whole, well, out to other people that we don't.
I think that we talked about it a little bit, but it's, that's actually really critical, and I just want to say for here. That we are all part of the solution, like we need to be expanding. Who we invite into the, the conversation and. To Joe's point about where we do these things and just, so again, I don't have nearly, I don't have much in anonymous. Whatever the word is, anonymity, even if I'm not wearing a name tag or a city of Dunwoody thing and people will say. And I don't, I want you to know, I don't mind this, because if I'm out, I expect it, especially if I'm in Dunwoody. Um, so they'll say, I don't want to bother you, but. I'm sure that happens to John too, because he's very recognizable, and I'm like. You know, I keep cards in my purse, and I'm like, honest, it's not personal, but I will not remember, you have to email me. Cause especially if they're asking me not a philosophical question, but a, like, my road is sinking question, I'm like, it's not personal. I might see seven other people in the grocery store and you have to email me, but, but I thi- I think that when Swami. And Swami does a lot of things right, but when Swami was doing their comp plan, they had me, they had some of their. Community input sessions at restaurants that families went to, like. Truthfully, we could learn a lot if we went to Los Ramones on a Friday night, it's all young families. Uh, used to be, you know, um, mad Italian, which is not exactly Dunwoody, but it's close enough, there's a lot of Dunwoody.
Only by Dunwoody.
It's owned by Dunwoody people and it's right there, I mean, there are certain restaurants that are populated by young families, I think we have to go to them. I think we have had a lot of success. At different events where we ask people for their opinions, you know, just throw a dot on a map, or throw a dot on something you want, or write a little sheet of paper, I think we've had. So we cannot ask people to give us a half hour of their time at lemonade days, they just don't have it, but. You know, I think being more at the events, I go to most of the events, and so, um, but I'm one person and you can, only one person can really talk to me at a time. But you know, going to the movie night, even if you don't stay for much of the movie. Um, yeah, because it gets dark pretty quickly, for a half hour gives you the chance for input, I think that's one way. You know, I'll say to people, you know, you can apply to be on a committee, and they have no idea, so teach, educating people, but also. You know, I just read this really interesting article, it was actually a Facebook post from somebody that's in this space. Who said, we should stop asking people to be on a committee because that's like a punishment, we should, we should ha- offer people opportunities to do something. So, you know, is it joining our volunteer group that actually does things, or is it? You know, knowing that D P T needs lemonade don't, or something that says, um, in this case, this person focuses on revitalizing. Revitalizing downtrodden communities, so a lot of that's really hands-on, like cleaning up downtown or sweeping up downtown, but anyway, it's something to think about. But, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um. I think we've talked about one of the other things, switching beautification, greenery.
Actually, I want to talk about, I want to talk about beautification in a really big picture way. So on Facebook the other day, someone posted the two eighty-five. Ramp on to Shambly Dunwoody headed east, that would be the Eastbound ramp, I'm not saying it right. Where, um, we had a tragic when the gentleman passed away and his, so it's a filthy mess. And I don't think it's our responsibility, looking for confirmation here, like who's responsible for cleaning up? The state, that's what I thought.
Wow, doesn't, C I, C I D still cleans up. But even though, uh, I've asked you.
Is that also this, the city of Shambly there though?
I think it is, and there's a woman living in the trees, so. Can we talk about that Eric at some point, like? Beautiful, first impressions matter a lot.
Yes.
And it is shambly, I think. I think it is Dunwoody, because the line.
Well, again.
Maybe.
It's inside, it's outside the fence line, so I don't know.
It's outside, so it's, no, so if you're coming up the ramp and you were turning right to go towards Shambly, that's the side that's messy.
It's, it's G Dot's responsibility to maintain it, but we did several years ago start mowing it, um. On the south side, the whole interchange, I think.
Where's the hotel? This is Georgetown.
We can mow it more frequently than they will.
That's Brookhaven there, on that corner.
That's Brookhaven, but it's.
The other corner is Shambly, right.
But I, I don't know what we do, but it looks. We know, because they don't, and they don't reimburse us of that.
No, uh, we mow because they mow very infrequently.
So what do we do about like getting it cleaned up trash wise?
We can, I mean, we can go out there and clean the ramp, that is a, uh, non-stop process.
Right.
Later and it, it just continually gets trash.
But it could, I bet we're not allowed to move the fence line to the road. Also, there's a woman living in the trees.
Right, right in here.
And so that's where some of the trash is coming from, I think. So that's in our partnership, I mean, that's also something that has to do with keeping our relevancy and being. Is the efforts we're making around the homeless and unhoused. And, uh, is that still going well with, uh, what's the partner called?
Uh, I'll say.
No.
I care.
Is it still going, okay, you know?
I, me, yes, mayor, uh, we, we're seeing less of this.
I know, it's not worn yet, I mean, yes, we're seeing less, so. Um. We want to help people connect to services. But they can't, yeah, we want to help people connect to services, and so we need, we have this partnership, it's working, they'll come, we need them, okay. That's good news, so we didn't have that a year ago. Um. And if we have, if you have other suggestions. So this is under DeKalb County's umbrella, so it says they're supposed to provide through the service delivery model. But if you, so if you have other suggestions, uh, let us know, um. Partnership wise. And we gave Summit some extra funds and we gave.
You'd see us.
C A C, which serves a space too.
That is the end of the topics for today. You related a lot of these action items.
I do. We might.
Thirty minutes ahead of schedule, so.
So Tom's gonna bring up, oh, we do need exact.
Yeah.
So how long is exact?
Uh, with no questions, less than ten minutes, because we have.
I don't have a gavel. So, so Rob is gonna bring up something, so we maybe don't have to deal.
Yeah, so this, I was gonna bring this up under, um, operating Dunwoody, which is our very last topic tomorrow, so I thought, well, I'll just move it to today since we have. And it falls under sustainability, and it's something I want to just throw out there. Um, a lot of cities have set carbon neutral date targets. Do we want to do something like that for the city? Uh, it would entail. More than just picking a date, because you have to think about what all of the cover, um, what a reasonable. Date is to assign, because you want it to be achievable, but. You know, meaningful, and then interim steps, um, for that, and so, I, you know, I think the first. Request for that would be for the Sustainability Committee to look at that question, um, but I think we need to also have in mind what we want and. To me, the plus of this is our capital dollars are a little bit more readily available than our operating dollar, so this would start to free up. Long-term some operating money, um, if we start putting solar on. Buildings so that we don't have electrical costs, for example, um, if we have. Notes here, um. If we, uh, you know, start redoing our municipal contracts, I know Joe has mentioned several times. Not having, um, gas-powered leaf blowers, but using, you know, an electric leaf blower.
Or our, on our.
On our, on our city own property. Property, so there are easy things that can be done, and then there are much more difficult things that could be done, and then there are. You know, some things that will require some investigation, like an all E V. City fleet or vehicle sounds great, but will they meet the needs of the police department? And so what's a reasonable target to investigate that question to see? Is that possible, so I, I'm just bringing it up, I, I've kind of touched on sustainability every year, but I. If you have a, a, an actual target and interim goals, then you can actually measure against that, and we've got. You know, our little checklist for the A R C and that's great, you know, we have all these policies and all this, but this would require some really. Meaningful, tangible steps. Um, and, and when I talk about what reasonably could be included, we talked about, um, streetlights earlier. Switching city streetlights to sustainable. Would be, that's a heavy lift. So there are not easy things on that goal, but I still think it's a valid goal. I mean, the earth's not getting any cooler. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it up and, and talk. And to me, a good next step would be, let's get the Sustainability Committee.
So speaking of the Sustainability Committee, since we're going for things tomorrow, I think. We desperately need a city councilperson to be the liaison to that body and attend their meetings.
I believe that, nobody's looking at me.
The truth is, is it was on my list for tomorrow and I probably wouldn't have looked at you, but since you spoke and reminded me.
Meetings are, cause they have their meetings on like really weird Thursday.
I think they moved them, but what, are they?
Why, why are they?
It was better than seven forty-five.
Patty Baker started it. She was a morning person.
And she went, well, she didn't.
So can I, any one of the questions?
Yes, that can be. Well, actually, we're gonna talk with committees tomorrow and you can talk about.
All right, well, we'll re-bring that.
But also we put students on it, so it's nice for them to be able to go to school. Um, I appreciate that, cause it was on the list for tomorrow. And so, because we're gonna talk more about it, but yeah. Okay.
All right, totally support, you know, like, coming back with interim steps. Yeah, there's the big picture, there's the smaller, while we're hanging through stuff, I'd love to just divide it up. And.
It means solar is the easiest.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, I know Jay, you sent a note about the solar thing, but there's a potential where we could look at lease options. There's other, there's a spectrum of possibilities, right? Of analyzing.
And besides the policies you might wanna implement, enforcing the policies that you already have in place, to me, I look at the Sustainability Commission to try to keep us as honest brokers.
Right, and we're just, we've lacked, that's why I think I need someone to get it back on force. It's a heavy lift.
And, and Nick's is really eager to go.
Well, there, there are some, I have had conversations, there are a lot of very.
Yeah.
So hopefully I can just, or marshal forces and not.
And we need to hear from them, because we talk about them, but we're out there. They should come. Well, we just haven't, we've lacked. They're starting, they're like, good job. That's it, that's what it is. All right. I think we're through, so we can go into executive session.
Legal.
For legal.
So moved.
Take a motion.
So moved, all in favor?
Uh, move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?